Good morning. I'd like to call the Board of Supervisors meeting for June 5, 2018, to order. Please take your seats and cease conversations. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, June 8, at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address the board may fill out a speaker slip and hand it to staff. When the Chair calls your name, please come to the podium. Also, please silence your electronic devices at this time.
Thank you. Would everyone rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible)
I'd like to say good morning to everyone. Welcome to the 2018-19 budget hearings. I wanted to give you a little lay of the land here, which is that we will be hearing from the county executive and various budget departments. Then we will have lunch, then more budget presentations if needed. Public comment will be in the afternoon after lunch, so that if you are here to do that, just so you are aware, I wanted you to know that you could come back after -- to the afternoon. Then, after public comment, we'll have board deliberations and then consideration of consent matters. So, our next speaker, our first speaker, is our county executive, Nav Gill.
Good morning, Board members. I am pleased to present to you the fiscal year 2018-19 budget. One of the main things in this budget, the highlight, is that we continue to honor the Board's priorities and investments that the Board's made in the previous fiscal years. Some of them, not a comprehensive list, but it's homeless work that we've done for the last couple of years, we -- that funding is maintained. We also have maintained funding for parkways, unincorporated community cleanup and safety, and also the work that we've been doing since 2015 on the mental health crisis system, implementation of the services plan, and mental health services for the homeless. All those--
I'm sorry, Nav. If you could just pause it. Could people that are talking in the back, please go outside and have your conversations? It's really hard to hear the Speaker, even if you're whispering. Thank you.
So, we've honored all the commitment that the Board has made, so the budget does take care of that. For the upcoming fiscal year, it's very limited growth that we're recommending to the Board. Primarily, the growth is in health services, and Britt's going to go over the nuts and bolts in the budget in a few minutes, but that does draw down state federal money, and it's in mental health, it's in our health services area, that's what we have put most of our money in. Also, we have added positions in our development services-related departments to expedite and assist with development processing. The other feature in this budget, which is different than last year, is that we have a different way we're budgeting and accounting for some special revenue, be it realignment, Prop 172, and MHSA. So, all those have a different accounting treatment, that Britt's going to go through it. That allows the Board, in one document, to be able to see all the different funds, where they're coming, what the reserves are behind it. So, in my closing, as I give this to Britt, it's that we believe the budget does -- is a balanced budget. It does take care of the priorities the Board has, that you've had in the last five years and going into next year. So, that's the essence, the summary of the budget. So, Britt?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gill. Madam Chair, members of the Board, Britt Ferguson, the county's chief fiscal officer. So, to begin with, a summary of the all-funds budget. It totals $4.29 billion. That's a $162.8 million, or 3.9 percent increase from the FY 2017-18 adopted budget. And that increases the actual net result of increases and decreases in a number of funds, but it's mainly due to a $115.7 million increase in general fund and restricted funds. And I'll talk more about, as Mr. Gill said, these new restricted funds and why they have to be combined with the general fund in a little bit to understand what's going on. A $73.5 million increase in the airport systems funds, mostly due to capital projects, and in particular, a major runway project. A $14.2 million increase in waste management recycling, or solid waste funds, due primarily to additional costs related to single-stream recycling and various capital projects, most significantly, the Kiefer landfill liner project. And a $9.2 million increase in capital project funds, due to the nature and timing of various capital projects, including projects to address Americans with Disabilities Act deficiencies in county facilities, funded by a 0.25 percent increase in the facilities' use allowance charged to departments that occupy county-owned buildings. As I mentioned, the total budget is $4.29 billion, and that's comprised essentially of approximately $1.7 billion in enterprise and special revenue funds, which includes things like solid waste, airport, transportation, the roads fund, transportation fund, water resources, and various internal service funds. These generally represent monies that are earmarked for certain things, either by federal or state government, or fee revenue money that the Board cannot spend on other types of activities.
Before you move on, Mr. Serna has a question.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you can go back to the previous slide, Britt, I appreciate it. I just want to underscore something that I think is very important for the public to understand, that I'm not sure you emphasized to the degree I think needs to be emphasized. When the public sees a chart or a slide like this, and it says a $1.62.8 million increase, the folks that, you know, are concerned about various -- the various conditions of different departments and programs, how should they be considering that statement, that we have a $1.62.8 million increase? How restricted is it, is my question? In other words, how much of that is discretionary, and so we can kind of set the stage appropriately, so everyone understands that we just don't have $162.8 million to do whatever we want with?
Right. So, let me, if I could, just move on a bit to these for a moment, because I think this will help set the tone. As I mentioned, out of the total $4.2 million, $1.7 million is related to enterprise and special revenue funds. That money is pretty much restricted, and it can't be spent for whatever the Board wants. It can be spent on roads, if it's in the roads fund, it can be spent on solid waste, the solid waste fund. Part of that increase is in some of those funds.
And that additional revenue, not all of it is coming from what some might just consider under the purview of Sacramento County, meaning property taxes, sales taxes?
Right. That's correct.
These are federal dollars, these are state dollars, and some general fund dollars.
I think you're going to get to that, aren't you?
Yeah. I will get to that in a general sense, and then I can provide more detail of the Board. The general fund is here, that's $1.7 billion, and that includes really three categories of funding. One is discretionary revenue, which I think is what you're alluding to, Supervisor Serna. This is the local tax dollars, primarily property tax, but some other tax dollars and some other revenues. That is the money the Board has the discretion over where to spend that money. And a part of that increase is related to an increase in discretionary revenues. And then state and federal money, and you can see that state and federal money is up, includes about $859 million. That's money that is earmarked for certain programs, so for example, CalWorks or Medi-Cal, programs that can only be spent on those programs. And then there's the remaining departmental revenue, which is other sources of funding that is also generally earmarked for certain things, could be fee revenue, could be grant revenue. It's revenue that, again, usually cannot be spent on any other program. Then we have these new restricted funds, and that totals $862 million. This is money that used to be reflected as revenue in the general fund, but are now reflected as restricted funds, and that's really comprised of two categories of funding. One is semi-discretionary revenue, what we call semi-discretionary revenue, which is the Prop 172 realignment money. This is money, we call it semi-discretionary revenue, because it is earmarked for certain things, but generally speaking, there's some flexibility within broad parameters of how this can be spent. So, for example, mental health realignment can only be spent on mental health programs, but there is some flexibility in which mental health programs that can be spent on. Prop 172 revenue, which is a statewide public safety sales tax that we get a share of, must be spent on public safety programs, but again, it doesn't specify which safety programs, whether it's the sheriff, or the DA, or probation, it can be spent flexibly within those areas. So, it's limited in what it can be spent on, but there's some flexibility. And then there's other revenue in the restricted funds, which is primarily the Mental Health Services Act, but also some clerk recorder fees. And so, the money that actually the Board has total control over is the discretionary revenue, which is discretionary resources, I'd say it's about $682 million. And that portion of that increase in $115 million in general fund and restricted funds is related to that, but only a portion of that. And a relatively small portion of that actually increase in discretionary revenues.
Britt, before you go on, this is a nit, but -- and you're an accountant, so I don't expect you would want us to change anything, but is there, I mean, Mrs. Serna has a point about the discretionary money. Is there a way for us to come up with a different title for these, for the state general fund and the county general fund? Is it, I mean, in the future, would there--
Pass-throughs versus county funds?
Word it so that the public can somehow understand, easier to understand?
We'll look into it.
I mean, you don't, not--
Yeah, we'll look into it.
The way we treat these restricted funds and the negative, yes, we are looking, trying to come up with a better way to lay that out.
Okay.
But let me explain a little bit about why we have these restricted funds, and why it really reduces expenditure, appears to reduce expenditures in the general fund. And that has to do with the way the county has historically received revenues from these sources, that's 172 and other sources. We've typically received these in unbudgeted funds that are sometimes called trust funds, but they're basically unbudgeted funds, they don't appear in the budget anywhere. And then the money from those funds is transferred to general fund operating departments as needed, and it's treated, it was treated, only budgeted as a revenue in the operating departments that received it. There was nothing in the budget that indicated how much money was retained, beginning balance in those so-called trust funds or unbudgeted funds, how much was left in those funds, that didn't appear anywhere in the budget. And this approach is actually not consistent with rules adopted by the Government Accounting Standards Board. So, we've moved to try and come into compliance with those rules. And so, to address that, our office and the Department of Finance has been systematically reviewing all the unbudgeted funds to determine which of those need to have, some of them are appropriately trust funds, truly, but most of it actually should be budgeted in one way or another, and we're still going through that. We're not complete, we haven't completed that process, but we have identified at least the five categories of revenue that I've talked about here, and that Mr. Gill talked about, that need to be included in these restricted funds. Again, that's the Prop 172 revenue, 91 and 2011 realignment revenue, Mental Health Services Act revenue, and micrographic, and certain other clerk recorder fee revenue. And with this change, the revenue from these sources will now be budgeted in the new funds as revenue, and the money will be transferred to the general fund operating departments, where it will be budgeted as an expenditure or appropriation in the restricted funds, and a reimbursement in the general fund. And a reimbursement is a negative appropriation, and that's done in accordance with accounting rules to avoid double counting, because otherwise, if you showed it as an expenditure in the restricted fund, and you showed it as an expenditure in the general fund, it would essentially double count your budget. So, that's the logic behind budgeting as a negative. So, the bottom line is, though, to compare this year's budget, general fund budget for the recommended budget for 1819, and the adopted budget for 1718, you have to add the restricted funds and the general fund together, and that's where you get the total that we talked about before. So, that's sort of how we got here.
Is that something that we'll see every year going forward, or is this a kind of a one-time shift to a different terminology?
Well, of course, each year now will be compared to the prior year, which will be in the new format, but as Mr. Gill said, we are trying to look at a different way to do this that will be easier to explain, and maybe we'll be able to do that in a way that doesn't show this negative appropriation. So, we're trying to figure out a way to do that to make it more clear.
It's a one-time shift, but what we're working on is how to explain this, that there's apples to apples when you start going back four or five years.
Right.
Madam Chair, yeah, let me just say, when you show a negative appropriation, if one doesn't have a point of reference, that ties them back, and you can say, well, if you look at what we did. So, I think it's really important for understanding--
But no.
Yeah.
Yeah. As I said, Mr. Gill has asked us to try and find a way to do this in a manner that is more transparent and more easy to follow--
Non-accountants can understand.
Exactly. Right.
Correct.
Right. Okay. So, that's a summary of where we are, and as Mr. Gill said, one of the, one of sort of the key components of this budget is that we have continued funding for all of the key initiatives that the Board began over the last five years. Over the FY 1819 budget includes over $100 million, and over $46 million in net county cost to continue funding for those initiatives that the Board has undertaken. And I'm going to just go through a number of them, but not all of those initiatives here. The first is the initiative to address homelessness, and these are the four initiatives, and your Board is aware of this, but for the purposes of the audience, these are the four initiatives adopted by the Board in 2017 to address the homelessness problem in the county. The fiscal year 1718 adopted budget included $8.6 million for these efforts. The recommended budget includes $12.3 million, funded in part with $4.9 million in redevelopment agency residual or boomerang revenue. Another is the parkways and unincorporated communities cleanup and safety initiative. This initiative was approved by the Board as part of the fiscal year 1718 budget, with the goal of reducing the incidents and mitigating the impact of illegal camping in the American River and Dry Creek parkways, and in the county's unincorporated communities. The recommended budget includes $6.7 million in funding to continue these efforts.
Could you pause for a moment, please?
Yes.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you. I just want to make sure I heard you correctly. So, are we maintaining the same appropriation for the boomerang funds for the same group of homeless services that we did in the prior year?
Essentially, yes. I mean, our cost for those services has increased, but our boomerang funds have not, except by a small amount, so--
But they're being appropriated to the same purpose?
Yes. That is correct.
Thank you.
One more question, Mr. Ferguson, Mr. Natoli?
Yes, just on that point, and I know in my briefing yesterday, we talked about that. I think it's important to note that, because, you know, folks, we may not refer to them as boomerang funds, but it's understood, obviously, by folks in the audience and others, as to what the source, at least you could tie that back to relating to the general fund allocation. And so, I think it's important, again, somehow to, you know, show that, so that in future years, obviously, we as look at this programming, and as funds grow, or other needs, I would just say that one of the things that's been brought to my attention is that with a housing bond that may be on the ballot, as I mentioned to you yesterday, in November, whatever the outcome of that is, is that, you know, the need for matching monies for housing, may very well, this might be something the Board want to consider in future years, obviously not for this year's budget. And so, I think it's important, Britt, however we disclose that, for those that follow this closely, and for this Board's information.
Right. Again, here we use the technical terminology of redevelopment agency residual, but we should probably include in the actual budget document, boomerang funds, so everybody understands what that is.
Okay.
Besides us.
That would help. Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Another initiative is the regional parks pilot visitor service to re-removal program. The 2017-18 budget included funding for this pilot program to provide for additional trash removal and seasonal staff in the parks, with the goal of proactively responding to problems or issues, and making users feel more comfortable using the regional park system. The recommended budget includes $410,000 in funding to continue this pilot program. Another is the rebalancing of the mental health crisis system and implementation of the three-year Mental Health Services Act plan to expedite mental health services to the homeless. Beginning in fiscal year 1516, the Board approved significant investments in the county's mental health system, designed to more effectively serve the increasing number of people in the county dealing with mental illness. Examples of investments included funding for mobile crisis teams, community care teams, and additional subacute beds. The recommended budget includes a total of $202 million in funding for various mental health services, including $34 million in new funding for the expansion of certain mental health programs, including those in the three-year MHSA plan to expedite services for the homeless, or those at risk of becoming homeless. Oops. Too quick. Another is the intelligence-led policing initiative. Over the last three years, the Board has approved funding to implement the sheriff's intelligence-led policing model. This is a model that combines the use of crime intelligence and data analysis with community-oriented policing. The goal is to use timely crime data to target resources at problems or potential problems more quickly and effectively. The recommended budget includes approximately $10 million in funding for this initiative. Another, Healthy Partners Healthcare Services for the Undocumented. The Board approved implementing this program as part of the fiscal year 1516 budget, with the goal of providing limited healthcare benefits to adult, low-income undocumented county residents. Enrollment was initially limited to 3,000 people, with an age limitation of 19 to 64 years. The program reached full enrollment in August of 2016. In February of 2018, just recently, your Board approved increasing the enrollment cap to 4,000, and eliminating the upper age limit. The recommended budget includes approximately $8 million in funding to continue this program. The Plan to Reduce Disproportionate African-American Child Deaths. In 2015, your Board approved a strategic plan to reduce disproportionate African-American child deaths that focused on addressing the four leading causes of this problem: homicides related to child abuse and neglect, third-party homicides, deaths related to perinatal conditions, and infant sleep-related deaths. Plan implementation has included investment and involvement from many county departments, including probation, child, family, and adult services, health services, and human assistance. The recommended budget includes continued funding for this initiative in multiple department budgets. The New Adult Supervision Model and Probation. In fiscal year 1718, the Board authorized and funded the implementation of a new adult supervision model and probation, designed to establish a risk-based supervision system that will target resources on those who pose the greatest risk to public safety, and reduce offender recidivism. The recommended budget includes $4.7 million to continue funding for this program. The Sheriff's Shot Spotter Initiative. The FY 2017-18 budget included funding for the Sheriff's Shot Spotter Initiative. This initiative uses sophisticated sensors to detect, locate, and alert law enforcement of illegal gunfire incidents in real time, and funds additional deputies to be assigned to designated areas to respond quickly when a shooting takes place. The recommended budget includes approximately $1 million to continue this program. And finally, just of the ones that I'm listing here, animal care initiatives. Over the last five years, the Board has made significant investments in staffing and program enhancements in animal care, as part of a proactive effort to reduce shelter intake, increase community options to spay and neuter pets, and increase the shelter's live release rate. During this period, the Board has approved adding 26 positions, almost 100 percent increase, and invested in various departmental programs. All told, the recommended budget for animal care totals $11.6 million, up from $4.3 million in FY 2012-13. So, now to the general fund. As I indicated previously, the total general fund budget, $1.719 million, that's a 30.3 percent decrease, but that's due to the change in accounting and budgeting practices. When you factor that out, and really look at the real increase, when you add together both the general fund and the restricted funds, we're looking at a total of $2.581 billion, which would be an increase of $115.7 million, or 4.7 percent. And some of the major changes, I won't go through every change, but some of the major changes in the budget. Base salary and benefit increase, $54.4 million, 4.3 percent, includes things like cost of living adjustment and so forth. But $31 million of that increase is an employer's share of retirement costs, a 19 percent increase compared to the FY 1718 adopted budget, and that's driven in large part by the Sacramento County Employee Retirement Systems, or SCURS, decision to reduce their discount rate from 7.5 to 7 percent, and phase that in over a three-year period. Unfortunately, we probably expect to see roughly equivalent increases in each of the next two years in order to implement that discount rate reduction.
Madam Chair, just a question. So, you're going to see $54 million increase over the next--
$54 million is total. That includes positions that were added during the year, that includes COLAs, that includes--
So, what's the portion attributable to the SCURS?
$31 million. That includes both the discount rate decrease and just the general changes for our, based on their--
So, we'll see $31 million compounded next year--
Not exactly, but yes, in that range, yes.
And now employees are paying a proportionate share as well, right?
They do also have an increase. That's not phased in, that's a one-time increase.
That goes in force in July, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But so, we will see roughly $90 million in increases, just on the retirement side?
It's not exactly, because there's other factors, but, you know, it'll be another probably at least 20 or so million each year.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
Before you start again, Mr. Ferguson, Supervisor Frost has a question.
Are we anticipating further adjustments on SCURS?
Well, we have heard that there's a possibility. We don't know for certain. PERS and some of the other agencies are looking at further reductions. We're not the only one. PERS went through a similar adjustment, and other 37 county counties have gone through some of these adjustments. We don't know yet, there's been no further action by the SCURS Board at this time. Next one is IHSS provider payments, a $15.1 million increase, and that's due to the new IHSS or in-home support services, Maintenance of Effort, or MOE, which was approved by the legislature as part of the 1718 budget. That's a phase-in of a new MOE over the next few years, and that does not reflect the cost of any supplemental wage increases for providers the Board might agree to in negotiations. We're able to cover this increase this year, due to increases in social services realignment and the carryover of prior year's social services realignment, but if there's no change in the IHSS formula, and there is a re-opener in the legislation, it doesn't guarantee a change, but it allows for there at least to be a discussion between the Governor's office and CSAC about changes in 1920. But if there's no change, we expect that the MOE will increase significantly in FY 1819, and we will not be able to cover that increase with realignment revenue. So, that will impact net county cost. We've got the UC Davis lawsuit settlement payment, $7.8 million. We'll spend at least this much. This is our first year of payment under the settlement of the UC Davis indigent healthcare litigation. This will be the first year of that, but we expect a similar amount or more in each of the next 15 years. Mental health, new facility and hospital caseload increases. That's a $5.7 million increase. $3.4 million is due to increased demand for services at inpatient mental health hospitals, and as we know, that demand has been increasing, partly because of outreach that we're doing, which is a positive thing in that sense, that we're able to identify more people that need assistance, but it does have a cost. And then there's a $2.2 million related to the cost for a new psychiatric hospital or PUFF facility, Heritage Jokes, that's scheduled to open in January of 2019. That is not a net county cost cost, that is funded with state and federal money, but it is reflected in the budget, the last one. Then, of course, we have new and enhanced programs, we'll be talking about in a little bit, the so-called growth request, that's $45.7 million. And then, we have an offsetting reduction here in the Human Assistance Aid Payments budget of $9.8 million, and that's due to caseload and cost trends and certain policy changes. Caseload declines are anticipated in CalWorks, foster care, and adoptions programs, but those declines are partially offset by increases in caseload in some programs, the CNI, or cost of living increase for certain programs in the Governor's budget, and the increase in the general assistance grant approved by the Board that's going to phase in again over the next three years, starting in 1819.
Before you move on, Mr. Natoli has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. But just back a moment to the mental health facility and caseload increase, so recognizing, I think, important that you pointed out, that obviously with the additional work with mobile outreach, with certainly some of the programming with our providers and so forth, that we're hopefully helping more people get well and address their issues. I guess my question is here, though, in previous years, we've had this calculation that if we brought a facility on with 15 beds-- we brought a facility on with 15 beds, and I think we're looking, this is the third one, if I'm not mistaken, that you referenced, that somehow that would relate to reduced hospital bed days. That hasn't been the case, and it may be because of what you said a moment ago and we're talking about apparently a rate increase as relates to that. But that's like $27 million a year, if I recall correctly, for those inpatient bed days. Do we anticipate that there will be any net...
We do, and I think Dr. Damiano and Uma can speak to that during their presentation. But yes, our numbers do assume that there will be a reduction related to the opening of the new facility. It's just that it's offset by, you know, additional demand. Yes, it would be higher if it wasn't for that, basically.
So our offsets aren't as rosy as we've seen in some previous years, where somehow we were going to see a $10 million reduction. And that wasn't Sandy's presentation this year, but in previous years, we've seen that calculation that...
I'm looking over there, but I don't think...
I don't believe that's high.
Okay. All right. So we'll get into more of that. But again, that was some of the budget premises that we saw going back probably three years ago, and in years subsequent to that, we were going to see these...
And as you know, there's been significant delays in opening some of these facilities, which also have, you know, not allowed...
Right. You don't get the net benefit from both the people we're serving, but also maybe some of the trade-offs versus inpatient versus some of the people that were able to be treated in those settings. Okay. Thanks.
Yeah. Okay. And then just a final, just not a lot of money, but just to highlight it, there is a $600,000 transfer directly from the 1991 Realignment Restricted Fund to the IHSS Public Authority. In prior years, there was no county support for the Public Authority. It was funded entirely with state and federal revenue. But with the change in the MOE, that funding is not sufficient to cover their costs, and so this is a first-year allocation of $600,000. There is money identified, and the Governors may revise, because this is a statewide problem to help alleviate that. We're still analyzing that. We don't know what that means for us. It may be that if that covers the entirety of the $600,000, we'll be able to take back that realignment money and set it aside for additional IHSS costs in future years perhaps, or for, you know, other related increases in IHSS. But right now, it's in here until we figure out what that means for us. So that talked about sort of the general categories of increases, and now I'm going to turn to some of the major increases in specific budget units. And these are not all of the budget units with increases or decreases. The truth is, there's both increases and decreases, but these are just the budget units with the largest increases. So first of all, just to remind the Board, during fiscal year 1718, you approved a reorganization of the old Health and Human Services Department, splitting that into two new departments, one the Health Services Department and one the Child, Family, and Adult Services Department. So really, to realistically compare the budget, there is no old budget for Child, Family, and Adult Services, or old budget for Health Services. So you really have to compare the combined budget for those two departments with the old budget for Health and Human Services. And when you do that, you'll see that there is a $56.7 million, or 10.1% increase in appropriations in those two budgets compared to the old Health and Human Services budget. And that's due primarily, as Mr. Gill mentioned, to the inclusion of, in this case, funding for 17 growth requests totaling $42.3 million. And we'll talk more about those later, and I know both Dr. Damiano and Shokaios will talk about those as well. The remaining increase beyond that amount is due to a variety of factors, including salary and benefit cost increases for existing staff, a $3.4 million dollar increase in inpatient hospital costs that we just talked about due to increased demand for services, the new PUFF, and a variety of other lesser cost drivers. The next largest budget unit increase is the Sheriff with a $19.1 million, or 4% increase, and that's due primarily... Again, these are all adjusted for the... We took out the reductions due to the change in the way we budget for restricted money. So $19.1 million, or 4% increase, and that's due primarily to increased salary and benefit costs for existing staff. Then IHSS Provider Payments, already talked about that, a $15.1 million, 17% increase. And then non-departmental costs, $11.1 million increase, or $56.6 million. That's due primarily to the first-year UC Davis settlement payment of $7.8 million. A new $1.8 million General Fund share of Fixed Asset Acquisition Fund, or FAF, debt service. The FAF was funded with bond proceeds that were set aside to loan to departments to purchase capital items, and the funds that were in that fund to pay debt service that were repaid have reached a point now where they're insufficient to cover the costs, so that requires a General Fund contribution of about $1.4 million. And then to the amount of repayment of money transferred to the General Fund during the Great Recession, that's $6.7 million, and that's in accordance with the six-year repayment schedule presented to your Board. That's the total amount. There's a slight, about a million-dollar increase from last year, because that was the schedule that we presented to your Board.
Mr. Natoli has a question.
Yeah. Just, thank you, Mentor. So on the repayment schedule, what is... Again, I think it's an important point of reference, because for those certainly here in the audience that recall, and this community recalls very well, that, you know, what decisions we had to make when the Great Recession hit, and that we borrowed internally. And so it's taken us a number of years to continue to pay that back, to, you know, to build up at least a few million dollars in reserves and to obviously take on some initiatives you've described. What is the outstanding amount that we still have as it relates to repayment? Because we borrowed upwards of nearly $80 million internally, if I recall correctly.
Correct. And I'm going to get to that later, but I'll just summarize. We borrowed $77.65 million, starting in fiscal year 809. The amount repaid so far through the end of this fiscal year will be $44.2 million, and will continue to owe $33.5 million. So...
Yep. Again, and I appreciate you pointing that. I didn't know you had it later in your presentation, but it's an important point of reference, because again, we borrowed internally from funds that had been set aside for either designated purposes, and again, I think making good on our debt, as we have done in many different cases, continue to repay that. Obviously, it'd be nice if we could pay it all off at one time, but when you see some of the hits we take, and I just, when I look at the IHHS, again, there's a whole reference point going back to the early 2000s about that and what the state was going to do and legislature, and then-governor, and even, you know, subsequent governors, and ultimately ends up, we take on that responsibility. These are, you know, Sacramento County, you know, residents, as well as obviously the folks that are providing those services in large part. But the deal changes. And so who ends up holding it? It's this county and our community, and we do that, you know, again, because it's, you know, we have the obligation, even though I think that, you know, it's a moving target. And I think it's important that in the context of this budget, oftentimes, when we contemplate based upon the then-law, the then-policy, you know, state direction in a number of cases, and so we move forward and do our part, and then end up in, oftentimes, and I think it's historically, you can, you know, the accuracy that can be identified and pinpointed, that we end up making good on that for the people of this county. And it's, but it's a strain on the budget. It's not just your presentation and dollar amounts. When we look at many multiples of millions, it's tens of millions of dollars, and it does absorb capacity that we might have to do some of the initiatives certainly we've embarked on, but to support those in a greater amount. And so I just wanted to make that point, so...
It's all true.
Thanks.
Mr. Ferguson, as long as you're pausing, I'll take this opportunity. A lot of people have entered the chambers since we started the meeting and made announcements. Public comment on any issues will not be heard until this afternoon, well after 2:00. So you're welcome to stay and listen to the whole budget presentation, but if you came just for public comment, then know that it will be after 2:00 sometime. Thank you. Go ahead.
Sure. So the next budget unit with a significant increase is Human Assistance Administration, a $6.2 million, or 2% increase, and that's due primarily to increased salary and benefit costs for existing staff, partially offset by the elimination of 65.1 vacant positions due to declining caseloads in multiple programs. As you know, funding for staffing for these eligibility programs waxes and wanes based on both caseloads and other factors in terms of federal and state funding. We typically can increase by a significant amount in a year or decrease by a significant amount. And then also a $3.5 million increase due to the full-year implementation of the homeless initiatives that were only funded for part of the year in FY 2017-18. So... And then Correctional Health Services, a $4.7 million, or 9.7% increase. That's due primarily to increased salary and benefit costs for existing staff, a $600,000 increase in pharmaceutical costs, a $900,000 increase in contract psychiatric services costs, that's the contract with UC Davis, and a $1.4 million increase in allocated costs due mostly to the allocation of Health Services Department overhead to this budget unit. And I think the thing to understand there is, the Sheriff did not allocate overhead to, when this was under the Sheriff's Department. This was moved under Health Services as part of the reorganization. It doesn't change the total cost across all budget units, because of course, this allocation of cost means that some of the money goes back to Health Services, but it just does spread that cost out differently. And it's one reason for the cost increase in Correctional Health.
Could you pause for a moment, please, Mr. Natoli?
Yeah. Just on the, actually, the item above, though, but so with the human assistance reduction, Britt, you said reduce caseloads, and so I don't think there's anything in our charts here that show numbers of folks, and whether they be on CalWorks or otherwise. Is that attributable to improving economy, at least in some respects, that relates to the job market? Or what, you say you eliminate 66 positions in human assistance?
Well, you know, I can't speak to what's causing this, and maybe Ann Edwards could speak to that. We are seeing in some areas caseload declines and cost declines, in some areas increases. I think I mentioned that earlier on the aid payment side. And what the cause of that is, I...
Okay. Well, we don't... But those are dollars, I guess, to another point being that flow down through, so typically...
It's mostly federal and state money. It's really not our money.
Yeah, there's very little General Fund, if any, part of that.
Very little, yeah.
Okay. And then on Correctional Health Services, is that largely General Fund?
Correctional Health Services is largely General Fund. There is some other, some realignment funding in there as well, but largely General.
Correctionary realignment, though, so that would otherwise be available to us.
Yeah.
And just let me ask you then, on the fixed asset, the way that's being calculated, or the allocated costs, the allocated costs, those allocated costs were being borne by other departments?
Those are the overhead costs essentially, the administrative and overhead costs in the Health Services Department that are, that they allocate among all their units, all the units that are part of the Health Services Department. Many departments do that, but the Sheriff historically did not allocate their administrative overhead to Correctional Health Services. If they had, then their budget would have been lower and Health Services would have been higher. And right now, what's happening is, when Health Services is allocating their costs, so Correctional Health's budget is higher and their budget would be somewhat lower, and that's sort of what...
You mean the Sheriff's budget?
No, correction, the Health Services budget.
Right. So, but the Sheriff, you said, did not...
Allocate.
Allocate.
Right.
Obviously, the costs were covered somewhere.
Yeah, they just covered it probably out of net county costs.
Out of net county costs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So does that money that then still remains in net county costs in the Sheriff's Department, that's available for other use within their department or no?
No, because their overhead didn't go down. So overhead is pretty much fixed. It's like the cost of, you know, accountants and management and stuff like that. It doesn't change as a result of this.
So the Sheriff's Department, there was no net gain because their budget didn't change. It wasn't offset by a like amount, but even though it was allocated, you couldn't pinpoint it. So the Sheriff's budget stayed the same.
So for example, you still have the Sheriff, and he's still going to be paid the same...
Right.
Just because they didn't allocate that cost doesn't change the fact that you have that cost. So what's happening now is you're taking the overhead for the Health Services Department, which includes the Director and all those people, and you're allocating it out to the various divisions and programs in the department, which now includes Correctional Health. So if that did not happen, then the budget in Health Services would be higher.
Budget in Health Services would be higher.
Would be higher, correct.
Because that's where the costs would be allocated?
Because, yeah, it'd have to go someplace else, because those costs aren't going to change.
But, so I still understand with the Sheriff, so we shift this out under Sheriff, under Health Services. They didn't allocate it, but the costs were still covered, as you said, through net county costs. So how do you track those dollars then? Did they, were they retained in the Sheriff's Department overall budget? Or did they, they didn't follow the dollars, or did the dollars follow to the Health Department?
No, because they were never allocated. So the Sheriff's costs haven't changed a bit from the fact that we moved Correctional Health over to Health Services.
So is that a net game for the Sheriff?
No, because they haven't changed their overhead costs. They still have a Sheriff and an undersheriff.
Yeah, right. I get, yeah.
Captains and all the things they have.
It's a zero-sum game. The Sheriff didn't allocate it, but that cost that he has, that Sheriff's Office has, they're allocating it. There's no change to that. Just because Health Services moved out didn't mean that their costs went down.
Right.
I mean, that's the point that Britt's trying to get at.
Right.
And so, and why is Health Services have to, it's a fairly large department, again, and we were largely using General Fund or realignment discretionary dollars here, so why wouldn't it be absorbed there?
Health Services has a variety, no, has a much more disparate and complex set of funding sources for all the various programs they have. So presumably, that's why they allocate. And a lot of departments do allocate all their costs, and that's presumably why they allocate their costs. They've got Medi-Cal money, they've got all sorts of money that goes into their program.
We can get reimbursement from state, federal money. It's a different formula than what the Sheriff had.
So did this, I guess my final question is, is so does this tie up any more discretionary dollars by virtue of what we did? I mean, did it basically rope off those monies that would not be available for other things by virtue of moving the department?
I'm not sure we could say that, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because we drug some costs that weren't, were just blanketed in. And I just want to be clear.
No, I don't...
Okay, you don't think so? Okay. All right. Thank you.
You bet. Please continue.
And then, and then lastly, the District Attorney with a $3.4 million, or $3.8 million increase, due primarily to increased salary and benefit costs for existing staff. Now, turning to newer enhanced programs, the recommended budget includes a total of $12.4 million, or $8.6 million in net county costs in newer enhanced programs that are funded in whole or in part with net county costs. So we typically divide our description of newer enhanced programs, those programs funded in whole or in part with net county costs, and those that are funded without any net county costs, that is discretionary resources. And so I'm going to just briefly go through all of these. I think Dr. Damiano and Maskeos will talk about it with regard to their departments later. First of all, CPS placement costs, $200,000 in net county cost, and that's additional contracts for group homes and other services aimed at trying to place hard-to-place foster care kids, place, well, to place hard-to-care foster care kids. The Department actually asked for $700,000, and given the resources that we had, we were only able to fund $200,000. It's a critical need. The Department believes they can make pretty effective use of that $200,000, but they, just to let you know, they did ask for an additional $500,000. Mental Health Treatment Center nursing staff, that's $392,000, all net county cost. What we're seeing is with increasing caseloads in the Mental Health Treatment Center, we're having difficulty meeting state standards for nurse-to-patient ratios, and that, in addition to being a legal requirement, also has an impact in terms of the health and safety of patients in the facility. So we're adding three nurses to the, the Department has been sort of scrambling and working hard to try and cover that, but it's proving difficult, and so we're adding three nurses to address that issue, recommending the addition of three nurses to address that issue. Behavioral Health Contractor COLAs, $1.7 million, 900,000 net county cost. These are not increases for the employees of these contractors, these are actual increases in the contract amount. That's a 3% COLA for Questwood, a 2% COLA for the subacute bed contractors, and then for children's mental health providers, an additional, also a 2% COLA, partly in order to keep us competitive in terms of being able to compete with other potential users of these facilities and to make sure that they're able to adequately staff and provide services. A mental health, inpatient mental health hospital rate increase, that's $3 million. That's all net county cost. The budget reflects a 2.5% increase in the bed day rate and certain other contract changes for three contracted inpatient mental health hospitals. Again, this is really critical if we're going to continue to receive those services and meet the increasing demand that we've been seeing in these areas. This next one is obviously an issue that your Board is very familiar with, and is an issue that I'm sure that Dr. Damiano will be talking about at some length, but that's the Drug Medi-Cal waiver, and this is for six months of funding, just for this year, because it'll take about six months to get the... because it'll take about six months to get it up and running, it's $5.9 million in total, $2.95 million in net county costs, and because it's half a year funding, the costs will double in fiscal year 1920. This is to provide additional alcohol and drug treatment services and serve additional beneficiaries, it allows for a waiver of certain rules that allow for better Medi-Cal coverage for certain drugs and other, other treatment services, so it's a significant investment, and one, as I said, that will be talked about at length, I think, in Dr. Damiano's presentation. A consultant to review health system needs, only $100,000, but it's a critical component, that's all net county cost, we have a number of county programs, primary health, juvenile medical services, correctional health, that utilize a system called AS400 that provides Medi-Cal claiming and payable services, the system is 33 years old, and the vendor has discontinued support. This growth request would allow for contracting with a consultant to help identify the most cost-effective way to replace this system. Currently, our cost estimate for replacing it is upwards of $1.4 million, and we're hoping to find a way to do this at significantly less cost than that in a more efficient way, so that's the reason for this, rather than just going and spend the money, we want to go ahead and take the time to really look at it thoroughly and see how we can do that. Sheriff, $100,000 heavy-duty towing contract, that's all net county costs, and this is for the towing of heavy-duty vehicles, large trucks, boats, recreational vehicles that are essentially banned and parked illegally along county roads, and this will augment $310,000 included in the code enforcement budget to cover the cost of towing abandoned vehicles, and your board may remember that in February of this year, you added $100,000 to the original $210,000 in the adopted budget, so even though these are in separate budgets, we look at this as really a total of now $410,000 available to address this issue, which we know is an issue of sort of growing concern in the community.
Could you pause there a moment, please, Supervisor Frost?
This was really important in my district, and I think also Supervisor Serna, actually all of us were struggling with this, so we've been working on this over time, and do we anticipate that this is going to clean up the existing backlog of RVs, and then, if, totally clean it up, and then moving forward, manage it, and if we need more funds there, will there be more funds to just really put this problem to rest?
Supervisor, we do believe this will address the issues, just as you outlined, get us, get the backlog taken care of, as well as provide ongoing funding to be able to address kind of a continuing condition, and we've coordinated that with the sheriff's department and our code office, looking at trends historically of what, you know, what the demand is that we're seeing, projecting forward, and then having enough capacity to address that.
Is it going to be like a clean sweep, and all of a sudden they're gone within a month, or is it going to take six to eight months?
Well, I think it will be a clean sweep, but it won't be as quick as July 1, because we have to get the contracts in place with the sheriff's department, so we actually kind of think it's the fall timeframe for the big sweep.
Okay.
We have ongoing efforts right now, but...
I know everyone's going to be excited, so thank you for working so hard on that.
The next is $942,000 for personal computer replacement software upgrades, that's $842,000 in net county costs, and what this relates to is, by 2020, Microsoft will discontinue support for any personal computer systems, other than Windows 10 and Office 2016, and most of our computers are not using those systems.
Those are the lucky people.
Yeah.
Could I interrupt for just a second, I'm sorry, Mr. Natale had a question on your last item, so...
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm back on the heavy-duty vehicle towing contract, certainly just a comment to Supervisor Frost's comment, that you may get a clean sweep, but they're going to magically reappear, maybe the different, different vehicles, but what I wanted to ask about here, is there any ability, most times, obviously, the ability to track down the last registered owner is not great, but I think now that we're approaching half a million dollars annually in this county, just for towing vehicles, and, you know, some of the boats and so forth, they've taken any markings and identifying information off, but in some of those RVs and so forth, there might be other information available, it would seem to me, again, without spending more time and money than it's worth, to try to seek some recovery on, on some of these, because otherwise, I think, you know, certainly the word gets out there that, you know, easy, easy to dispose of, you just, you know, park it beside the road and, and folks will pick it up, and so I guess I'm curious as to whether, with enforced enhancement, I mean, enhanced enforcement and, you know, quicker attention to the, to the problem, which I concur, it needs to be dealt with, it's all, it's throughout the county, is there any ability to do, you know, do some follow-on, to actually try to get some of these folks held accountable?
Supervisor, we can investigate that element of it, I can't today, as I sit here, define what's allowed under the law, my green light's on, but nothing's happening.
Okay, all right. You're talking, though.
We've said that many times, Mike. I think to Mike's point, we will absolutely investigate that, I don't think we have that information in front of us, we'll continue working on it, work with county council's office, see what kind of legal remedy we have on it.
Yeah, and maybe seeking some civil enforcement, again, you know, it may not be in every case, but, you know, if you can recover on some of these, because disposal costs, I mean, you can run, as you were telling us, I mean, it can be, you know, $8,000 or $10,000, depending upon the size of the unit, what's involved in disposing of it properly, and so, okay, I just, I was curious whether, because we have stepped it up to the point being made here, and I'd like to see us try to recover some of those costs if at all possible, thanks.
So just to finish up on the computer replacement, so as I said, departments are transitioning to the new systems over three years, starting in, actually this year, fiscal year 1718, and this represents, the money in this request represents the net county cost of those upgrades for a number of departments, and we're making it available by the cancellation of part of the general fund reserve for technology upgrades. And then the last one here is the business license, 50% fee reduction for veterans, that's $24,000, all net county cost. Currently, veterans receive 100% exemption for business license fees for businesses that sell tangible goods, and pay the full license fee for businesses that provide services. The recommended budget would provide a 50% reduction in fee veterans pay for those businesses that provide services, and we're currently looking, that's, that's a maximum allowed under our current ordinance, we're currently reviewing the ordinance, and with a view to trying to bring an amendment to the board that would allow for 100% waiver of the fees for veterans.
Good.
Then, in terms of non-net county cost programs, there's approximately $40 million in not, non-net county cost funded newer enhanced programs that are included in the recommended budget, and I'm not going to go through them all here, obviously, your board has had a chance to review them, I'll just highlight just, just, just a few of them. One of them is the mental health services for youth, MHSA $4 million funding in prevention and early intervention funds to focus on foster use, that's part of the Mental Health Services Act plan that your board approved. Another, also related to the Mental Health Services Act, but other funding as well, and I mentioned this earlier, and it'll be talked about later, is Mental Health Services Act for the homeless, that's $24.25 million, and as I mentioned earlier, that funds the expansion of mental health programs included in the three-year MHSA plan, and that particularly focuses on related, those either at-risk or, or subject to homelessness, and that includes both the county's various homeless initiatives, and the city of Sacramento's Homeless and Care Program, that's funded with $17.2 million in MHSA funds, and $7 million in federal revenue. There, also under mental health, there's increased support for Turning Point Crisis Residential Program, $506,000, that's a contract increase to support costs associated with staff recruitment and retention, a critical issue that they're having, and that's funding from state grants, we've been able to fund that with state grant money. In the sheriff, there's $684,000 to add two deputies to serve the Rancho Cordova, City of Rancho Cordova, under our contract with them, that's funded with revenue from the city of Rancho Cordova. Mr. Gill mentioned significant need in the area of development review, in terms of the workload there, total of $942,000 in a number of budgets, planning, development and code services, and water to address workload increases, including adding an assistant planner and design review, two building inspectors, an associate engineer in development and code services, and an associate engineer and assistant engineer in water resources, it's all focused on making sure we can process, try and process permits and development issues as quickly and efficiently as possible. And finally, just mentioned here, solid waste, there are $282,000 to add four sanitation workers to facilitate the single-stream recycling program, and again, that's just a sampling of some of the growth requests out there. Unfunded requests, departments submitted over 80 growth requests that we were not recommended funding, primarily due to lack of available resources, the total cost of these requests is approximately $40 million, $31 million in net county costs. Many of these requests address critical needs in a variety of program areas, including CPS, adult protective services, corrections, the sheriff, health services, and regional parks. This slide shows just a sampling of those requests, and I won't go through them, but they're, they're noted in the budget document, as your board is aware.
Pause right there, Mr. Natale?
Yes, could I just ask you about the third bullet, the emergency housing for older adults? I know that in last year's budget hearings, and I think in a report from our Adult and Aging Commission, that we, you know, heard about the need for safe houses, just we have for, you know, domestic violence, for children that are, you know, vulnerable and such, what was the nature of the request here, and what was the cost associated with that?
I think Michelle's going to be making a presentation, she has this information.
All right.
I don't have it on...
Again, for purposes of discussion, as we get into any further budget discussion today or tomorrow, deliberation, I guess I'd like to know what the...
Yeah, we'll make...
I know we go into the budget document, but I, again, we had conversation about this last year.
We'll make sure Michelle covers, though, she got it.
All right, very good, thank you.
And I, she could go into the details, which I can't here, but I can tell you it was a $500,000 request, $250,000 net county cost.
So we actually had matching money, so we, so we had $250,000 from a grant...
Why don't we let her cover that, so she knows the details?
Okay, all right.
There is one point that I wanted to pause on, the unfunded requests, the sheriff approached, Britt and myself, last week about a proposal on looking at body cameras, it came after the budget request, it's not up on the slide, we are going to be working with the sheriff's office, what that proposal looks like, there's three different options, work with the district attorney's office, public defender's office, county council, because there's a much broader look at it, and what I will propose is that once we've done our work, is to come to you in a workshop setting, let you know what the proposal looks like, what are your options, funding, impact on the different departments, so I just wanted to make sure that it was in front of the board, that we do have that proposal to look at.
Thank you. Britt?
Okay, so, just to summarize briefly, a few other issues in the budget, one-time revenue, first of all, 1718 budget at $82 million in one-time revenue, the recommended budget, 17.7 million, that's a $4.4 million decrease, and significantly reliance on one-time discretionary and realignment revenues decreased, so that's a, so that's a positive General fund contingency, basically $2 million, that's a $2.3 million decrease from the 2017-18 adopted contingency, as you know, in the 2017 budget, we included some, some essentially one-time money in the contingency to address some issues we knew were coming, but still, that's not quite as positive thing, that's less than 1% of general fund appropriations, which is a relatively small contingency. Inter-fund transfer repayment, Supervisor Natale already asked about this, and you, I won't go through it again, but you can sort of see...
Before you move on?
Yeah.
Supervisor Frost?
I have a question about contingency, if we, I think we allocated a little over $4 million last year, and we utilized all the contingency last year, and so, what will we, how will we manage that if we're allocating so much less this year?
So the amount of the contingency we use in any one year varies pretty significantly depending on need, last year, we did use the full $4 million, in the prior year, I think we had $2 million, and we used pretty much all of that, but we didn't need more than that, it just depends, you know, it depends on the year, depends on what comes up, so it's really hard to say in advance. Obviously, the other thing that we look to is, during the year, some departments have budget savings, and so if we don't have enough contingency, we can always look to transfer appropriation from one department to another, if they, if it looks like they're not going to need that, but that's the sort of thing we have to do, as I say, it's a pretty, it's a relatively small contingency for a, you know, two-plus-billion-dollar budget.
Thank you.
So I won't do that. Every year, we just, we just recap for your board, general information about transient occupancy tax revenue, basically $6.7 million in revenue this year, not much change from the prior year, it's pretty similar, includes funding for the usual things that we funded, the legacy organizations, like the Convention and Visitors Bureau, Center for Sacramento History, Metropolitan Arts Commission, the $1 million annual community grant program that your board started last year, the board district funds that you, that you have used each year, support, ongoing support for the property and business improvement districts, economic development programs, and TOT program administration, basically same level as before, and then general fund, just support generally for general fund net county cost, no, no major changes here.
Just a second, I'm sorry, Ms. Frost, I just took you off the board, are you back on, or did I screw up here?
I'm back on, thank you. I have a question relating to legacy funding, and I know...
Legacy, oh, yes.
The legacy funding, I noticed each year, we have a set number of organizations that receive what we call legacy funding on an annual basis over and over, it's like we just give it to them every year.
Correct.
But we have a growing county with other amazing resources, one of them is in Folsom, Harris Center, it's $50 million, 80,000 square foot regional arts center, it's estimated to have $45 million yearly impact on our local economy, and they produce vibrant programs for children and for everyone of all ages, and it's, I'm trying, I've been, over the past year, trying to find a way to get some of this funding for Harris Center, and for other areas in the county, most of the, I noticed most of the organizations that are listed here, they're, they're all amazing, most of them are in Sacramento, so they don't necessarily represent geographically, you know, what's going on throughout the county, and so, I guess I'm asking if we can take a look at this, and either find a way to update it, or make it equitable for all parties in the county to be able to participate in funding such as this, or maybe, you know, put more people in there with a little bit less, so that everybody gets a little bit, I'm not sure how that works.
So Supervisor Frost, our plan on this is, in January, when we come in, to get board policy on TO, we plan on bringing this item up, a couple of years ago, we did ask the board, do you want to continue with the legacy funding, and we got a nod to continue the funding, put it in the budget, so we'll work with your office, see what else items you have, in January, when we come back, we'll pose that question to the whole body.
There's other areas, like Rio Linda has a wonderful theater company, and they'd love to have a stage, or, you know, there's all kinds of things going on in the unincorporated county as well, that we could be giving them a leg up, so thank you very much.
So, this, you'll remember, is a, is a updated version now of the, of the table that we presented last year for the first time, and it looks at the 12 large, well, 11 large counties plus us, that we, that we typically compare ourselves to, and in terms of discretionary reserves, which is essentially reserves that the board has control over, in accounting terms, it would be like assigned, unassigned committed fund balance, as opposed to the restricted balance that is legally restricted, and that's, so what you want to focus on is the red column, because that's a combination of all those, of all those things. And the thing to keep in mind, really, in advance of sort of talking about this, is each of these, each of, each of us is unique, those counties are unique, we're unique, we all have different circumstances, good and bad, in our case, we have a significant unincorporated area population, some of the other counties also have significant unincorporated area populations, not probably as much as us on a percentage basis for the most part, but significant, some of these counties run county hospitals, which historically were a big-money loser, we do not, and some counties don't, most of them do, and counties have different levels of tax base, particularly property tax, the assessed value per capita varies significantly, some are relatively wealthy in terms of their property tax base, and some are not, so there's a variety of different factors that we all have to deal with, that having been said, the real issue is, how do we deal with those, and you can And you can see here, or you could see, it's pretty small there, but there's both some good news and maybe some not-so-good news. So the good news is, our fund balance continues to be positive. The official balance in the 1617 CAFR, at the end of fiscal year 1617, was $37.7 million, and that's an increase from the amount at the end of 1516. And before that, as you probably recall, for many years since 2010, that balance was actually negative. And in fact, at one point, it was as low as a negative $57 million. So the positive thing is it's been increasing, and that's been noticed by our rating agencies and others, and so that's a positive sign. The bad news is, if you look at how we compare to the other jurisdictions, we only have about 1.6% of general fund revenue in unrestricted fund balance. And the next closest county to us, to us that's similar in terms of overall budget, is Riverside. That has 8.7% of the general fund revenue in unrestricted balance. That's about $250 million compared to our $37.3 million. And others range from San Mateo, which is a frankly very wealthy county, and that has 63.4% of revenue in unrestricted balance, to Orange County with 11.9% in unrestricted balance. The county closest to us in budget size is San Bernardino. They have 21.4% of general fund revenue, or $561.4 million in unrestricted fund balance. So we still have a ways to go, but we are at least heading in a generally positive direction.
I have several people who wish to speak. Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So this chart, Britt, shows only 12 of the 58 counties in the state of California. If you were to show all 58, would you show...would you have counties that have a negative? Show a negative condition?
I don't know. I haven't gone back and looked at all 58. I mean, obviously, you have counties like Alpine that are, you know, a few thousand people, and I just don't know what they are.
I just want to point out, for the public's sake, that these are select counties for, you know, comparative purposes on the positive side, and it doesn't tell the whole story necessarily in terms of where we lie on the spectrum of fiscal health, because we don't see the balance of the majority of counties in the state of California.
Supervisor Serna, I think that's a good point. The reason we look at it that way, when the rating agencies look at us, these are the counties that they compare us to, so when we make our presentation. But they have given us positive, they've upgraded us, so we are not in a negative position with them. But you're right, some of the smaller counties, it'll look different, but this is who they compare us to.
Or there might be other counties that are, you know, maybe even have a slimmer positive condition, too. I mean, again, all we can ascertain from this chart is how it compared to 11 other similar counties.
Correct.
True.
Thank you. Ms. Frost?
I wanted to...my understanding is that these are the medium-sized metropolitan cities. Is that why they're comparing us by population and budget, et cetera?
These are the counties that are...our population are higher.
Yes.
Couple of them might be...I mean, two are smaller than us in population.
So it's, in theory, apples to apples, and what...well, that's what they're comparing us to.
What they're looking at is major urban counties, and what is the financial situation with them?
So my understanding, based on my experience, is that because we don't have the reserves, and because we still owe on funds that we borrowed from, we have a lower credit rating, which means we pay more for the credit that we do have. And so it's actually costing us money to not have reserves and to have debt to ourselves and so forth.
That is...
Costing us considerably...a considerable amount of money.
If we went into the bond market at this point, it will be, but we are not in the market. So we haven't been in the bond market for about 10 years because of the constraint we've had. So the debt that we have that we're paying on has the ratings that it had back 10 years ago, and we're paying on that. If we went to the bond market now, you're absolutely correct, we will end up paying more in interest because our ratings have come down. But on the positive side, as we reported in the spring, one of the rating agencies has brought our credit rating back to what it used to be 10 years ago because of the work that the board's done on the fund balance, the repayment that we talked about, half of that's gone back, and the economy that's improved. So they've given us some...
Encouragement.
Encouragement.
But we still have a ways to go, and I just...I want to continue to go on record as saying that's important to me, to improve our credit rating and to build our reserves and reduce our debt that still exists from the downturn, so that we can, in the event we do have to go looking for credit, that we can pay less for the money that we get. So I just wanted to make that statement. Thank you.
We share that goal.
Thank you, Mr. Natale.
Yeah, just briefly, because I think it's...again, this chart's important to show, and, you know, however one draws a comparison or whatever you deduce from this chart, I think that when I...you know, looking at Sacramento County, though, what that does reflect, obviously reflects good work over the last several years to restore some ability, have flexibility, certainly if you need to go out for bonded indebtedness, and to have credit ratings that reflect good rates, but also, I think it reflects in two bars, the choices that this board, on behalf of the community we represent, have made over the years. And in recession, you could go to take this chart and run it back and see what we had in reserves going into the recession, and how, again, decisions that were made in a very public way, we made choices about what we were going to do in order to preserve services to some of the most frail, most vulnerable people, but to the general population of Sacramento County. And again, I don't think this needs to have...certainly to have any excuses behind it. I think that what it does reflect, though, is choices we made. And I guess if I live in some of these counties where I saw these large fund reserves, I'd be asking about, what did you do for me lately? Because when I think about the needs in this county, the diversity of its population, diversity of its geography, certainly the large unincorporated area population, in addition to the entirety of population of a million and a half people, that, and just as you've outlined in the last hour, Britt, this, you know, the context of requests, but also of things that we funded, both initiatives, but things we do as a matter of course, you know, it's nice to have a rainy day fund, but I can tell you, certainly two of us, and I know Mr. Serna got here on the tail end of a lot of it, we know, having those reserves, and what happens, it bought you some more months of service, but ultimately, we made tough decisions, and again, those times could come. And reserve may give you a little buffer towards it, but you could have $100 million in the bank, and you can get wiped out very quickly through state actions, through economic conditions and so forth. And so I'm not arguing that we shouldn't have some, obviously, reserve that's prudent from the standpoint of finances. But in county finance world, it's so unpredictable, you don't know. And you've outlined some of the things, and again, the state giveth and the state taketh away. And again, we control our destiny to some degree, but I would just say, and again, I just wanted to make this point, Madam Chair, because this chart's important, that this reflects choices in providing services to real people of all walks of life, of all ages in this county. And again, I think that, you know, in a chart, it may pale by comparison to some other counties, but our responsibility is to people of this county, and I think that we do our best, you know, each and every year in budget deliberations, but certainly throughout the course of the year, to make sure we have a balanced approach, and that we prioritize appropriately, and that's what this reflects, so.
And Supervisor Natale, those are the comments we echo to the rating agencies when they pull some comparison. That's their job to be the analyst on it. But we do bring those points up, that this is how we got to...there's a story behind it.
Sure.
But they have acknowledged that the county has done good work, we are getting our credit straight, so that does position us. When the time comes for us to ask or borrow money, we'll have a better rate than where we've been in the past.
Thanks.
Thank you. Go ahead, Britt. Conclusion, I believe.
It is.
Yes.
So just to...
Part one.
Just to recap, I think the points that Mr. Gill made at the beginning of the presentation, it is a balanced budget as required by law. There are limited newer enhanced programs, particularly net county cost-funded programs. We do generally maintain current services, and in particular, those initiatives that were of a top priority to your board over the last five years. We have continued funding for all of those, in some cases, and enhanced costs. And we will be working on strategies to address priorities, board priorities, in a sustainable way over the future that we'll be bringing back to the board in the future to make sure that we're able to do that. So then, our recommended action following your taking of public comment and deliberations eventually will be to approve the budget resolution, and then take action to direct the Department of Personnel Services as indicated on this slide.
Okay. And are there any further questions for Britt? Thank you very much for a comprehensive discussion.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is, to discuss the district attorney's budget, is Anne Marie Schubert, our district attorney.
Okay. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Suffice it to say, first of all, Madam Chair and members of the board, thank you for letting me come in and speak, but suffice it to say, I have a few things on my mind this morning, not the least of which is the importance of this budget presentation. I realize this morning that this was my fourth official budget presentation. But before I was elected, I recall very distinctly Mr. Grippi from our office doing the last presentation for then-District Attorney Jan Scully, and making a very memorable point to me, which was that we are supposed to be good stewards of public funds. And I believe in that very strongly. And so when I come here today, I do not say this lightly, that is, that every year that I've come to do a presentation, if there are needs, it is only because I feel strongly that those needs are very much needed. We do not over-ask for things that we want, but we simply ask for what we need. And so in this particular year, there's a few things that we've asked for, one of which we're going to agree that we can forego this year. But I want to go through the things that I do believe very strongly that our office needs. They are not significant, in my opinion, in terms of cost. So we had four growth requests this year. All four of those growth requests were denied, but I want to go through those and explain to you, as I say, in the trenches, why we feel strongly that these are needed. First of all, so there's four positions...I'm sorry, four categories of requests that we made. The first one was to reallocate two of our full-time supervising IT analysts to full-time IT managers, net county cost of $37,000. Add two additional full-time audiovisual specialists that, right now, are currently temporary help. Upgrade one of our vehicles to a Class 154. And then the last one, which we are willing to forego in terms of requesting, is adding a full-time attorney for elder abuse financial crimes. So the initial growth request was for a total of $284,575, but with the elimination of the attorney position, the total net county cost of what we're requesting is really $101,000. I would remind the board that our total budget for the district attorney's office is $95.7 million. This growth request of $101,000 represents 0.1% of our total budget. The IT managers, I just want to kind of go through some of the reasons why we feel very strongly that this is critically necessary for our office. Again, we're asking to reallocate two full-time supervising IT analysts to full-time IT managers. These managers, one of which is here today, Mr. Ishi, has been...they have been in temporary upgrades since November of 2017. DPS had initially approved the class appropriateness for these in January of 2018. I would remind the board that it's...the net county cost for this reallocation is $37,000. A few things that are important for the board to understand, I think the board understands that our IT division stands alone. They manage our IT for a total of 400-plus employees. Some of the programs that they...and projects that they have worked on, the most significant of which is they have internally developed our own case management system, which is called Diamond. It has really become a statewide model for other district attorney's offices on how to manage their information internally. Some of the other projects that we have underway, that's some of which have been underway for several years, but because of the lack of resources and the volume of work, have not been able to be fully implemented. Couple types of projects that are in addition to our case management system. They are responsible for implementing how we manage our body-worn camera practices. They are responsible for our crime laboratory, which is one of the few district attorney's offices in the state that has its own crime lab. They are responsible for trying to integrate our juvenile court system and our DA's office into our Diamond system, so that we can have an integration of our case management. Much of our juvenile court records are confidential. That has been a massive undertaking to make sure that we comply with the law. We have been trying for several years to move this county into, I guess, the 21st century, and get us on board with electronic discovery. That has been on the list for many years. Moving to electronic discovery within our office will ultimately save the county money in terms of costs of discovery. We have been...our IT division has been responsible for maintaining our IT security, and because we are a law enforcement agency, it's critically important that we maintain that every day. We have been probably inundated with Public Records Act requests, many of which have to do with IT and how many cases do we file, what types of cases do we file. We ask our IT division to help us with those. And recently, with the passage of Prop 64, our office is trying to collaborate with other officials to make sure that we are capable of doing the expungements that are allowed for under Prop 64. We relied upon our IT division to help us with that. So with respect to all of these requests on the IT reallocation, we believe very strongly that this is critically important, and the net county cost is not significant. And then just one last project to give you an example of other things we asked them to do. Several months ago, prior to the arrest of Mr. D'Angelo on the East Area Rapist case, I asked our IT division to help us develop a case management, clue management system, so that we could manage the information. That system that they wrote, of which they do for many types of applications, is now being utilized by several counties, so that we can manage the massive volume of information related to that case. This is just another example of over and above what we asked them to do. These two IT managers currently supervise 25 individuals, with two more coming online soon. They are not just managers, they are working managers. So I would again urge the board to consider this. Again, it's something that we not only need, but we need it desperately. The second request that we made...
I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry. Slow down.
I have a couple of questions for you.
Sure.
First is Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just so I'm clear, District Attorney, so what exactly are you asking for here? I mean, this is the reallocation, so you already have these two positions.
Well, we...our Division Chief, IT Division Chief position was frozen when our chief left. We then asked for the IT, supervising IT analyst, to be reallocated to managers. That was agreed by DPS back in 2017, November of 2017. And then we put through the process, and I'm starting to learn all these little forms and things, in January of 2018, that they would be class appropriate. That was approved. But ultimately, when we did the long form, that was denied. So what we're asking for is to reallocate those senior IT analysts to two full-time IT managers. They're currently already in that temporary position, but that request was...
But what's the difference?
What do you mean?
Temporary versus permanent?
Yeah. I mean, what...
Yes. Yes. It's essentially to make them permanent positions. We've frozen our IT chief position, we don't have that filled, and so we've asked to reallocate the senior analysts to managers. So yes, to create them as being full-time positions.
Can I have a response from the...
Yes. Board, we have been in discussion with the district attorney's office, and also this morning, we...executive staff has been in conversation with Department of Personnel Services. I think we can look at a way to restructure the positions as far as perhaps not filling a chief position, and then classifying those as department managers.
So this sounds to me to be less of a budgetary issue than a personnel matter.
It's a structural issue within personnel, yes, that's correct.
And we're going to work through it?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
We'd like that. Thank you.
And do you actually need the budget money? And do you actually need the budget money?
Thirty-seven thousand?
Uh. We're, sadly, we're spending it, that was my question.
Right.
We're already spending the money.
My understanding from my briefing yesterday was, I mean, I realize you were unable to make the briefing, but that maybe you didn't need the $37,000, that it was already in your budget.
Well, I'd have to ask, is that, okay, they're shaking their heads, yes.
Okay.
We just, we want the positions, that's the most important thing, and that's the most important thing.
Mr. Natoli, do you have another question?
Well, yeah, I just want to confirm. I mean, I deduced from what you just said, and I was going to ask you if there, you know, you want a full-time equivalent allocated with that particular, but we're spending the money. So I mean, if it's not, you know, right? We're already spending the money?
Within those positions, they're temporary status, so that's correct, the money is being spent right now, and it's just a matter of-
And we would spend $37,000 next year if that temporary status held over all the way through next fiscal year.
If it was held, yes.
Okay. And you're asking that we'd have a question mark around that? So we'll know when, how soon will we know this has been worked out?
I can, we can get a report back to you by-
I heard her say she was going to work it out.
Yes.
Obviously, I mean, the temporary positions, the temporary position status, I think, had been extended, but I think it ran out at the end of May. So we want this sooner than later, obviously.
Okay.
Okay.
We appreciate the work with the CEO's office on this. Okay, so then the two other, the requests related to what we call audiovisual specialists in our office, I want to just give a little history. So we have in our office, under our IT division, we have staff that helps us with audiovisual requests. And just a little bit of history on that, and we're asking specifically here that two full-time specialists be added because right now they've been in temporary help positions since May of 2017. So our audiovisual specialist started as employees in 2005. So we've, for 13 years, had folks helping us. We only had two employees in 2005 that were allocated for those positions. In 2007, we were given one more position. So we have, since 2005, three. In 13 years, we have three employees that are in full-time positions. In 2017, we filled two temporary positions. So we have a total of three full-time, and we have two temporary positions for overseeing and assisting with 189 attorneys, 76 investigative staff requests. The temporary employees, even though they're being paid as temporary employees, must go through what we call LEVA training, which is, has to do with their ability to testify in court with respect to what they've done on audiovisuals. And they are required to be certified. So what happens is if we don't pick up those employees and we don't have these requests, then we've really essentially wasted all that training and special attention we've played to those employees. In terms of our AV specialists, they process 18,000 individual pieces of evidence in 2017, 18,000. They produce 175 discs per day on average. And to get down to the minutes, it's one disc for every 2.7 minutes. The net county cost of all of this is $43,016. To give you some examples of what they have to do to help our attorneys get ready for trial, they forensically process evidence according to state and federal law, examine, convert, edit, redact, and reproduce evidence. It is very labor-intensive. They perform forensic video/audio analysis. Again, they examine, they compare, and they evaluate either video or audio. They recover corrupt and malformed data from devices and media. They receive media from all sources that must be converted to consistent format to allow for viewing, discovery, archiving, and court presentation. To give you an idea of the increase in work, and I again remind you that since 2005, we've only had initially two full-time, and then in 2007, an additional. So we've only had three full-time employees doing this in 11 years. So to give you an idea of what they have to do on a daily basis, duplication, transcription, conversion, media editing, and forensic digital multimedia analysis, user support and technical assistance. I would direct this, the Board, to the two items, transcription and editing, which for transcription conversion, it's increased 63% since 2015, and 226% as it relates to editing and digital multimedia analysis. So very significant increases in just the last two years. To give you an idea of the volume of work currently, we receive 200, I'm sorry, 20 terabytes of SACPD body-worn camera. I think the Board is well-aware that in the last couple of years, we've come to you saying body-worn camera's coming, we support it, but we also recognize there will be significant impact on the DA's office. And that has already arrived with SACPD. We fully expect that that will be happening soon with the Sheriff's Department. SSC obviously is equipping their officers with body-worn cameras. So remember that it's our responsibility ethically to make sure that we have it all, we provide it. Sometimes it may require redactions or editing, but again, it's very significant impact, and we put upon our AV specialist. 26,000-plus video files ranging from seconds to hours per file. And just to give you an example, again, 2017, we filed 23,000 cases in our office. Now, not all of them have audiovisual requests, but many, most of the major units within our office obviously have them. To give you an idea of the volume of work on specific cases, on the Brocchamontes case, we had 357 DVDs, 100 witness statements, 30-plus surveillance videos that all of which had to be not only discovered, but formatted, edited, prepared for prosecution in court. We anticipate that with respect to the East Area Rapist case, we will have 10 times the amount of that case. We have three pending death penalty cases. All of those have the similar volume of audiovisual in the Brocchamontes case. We currently have 91 pending homicide cases. It's not uncommon to have dozens, if not hundreds, of videos related to each of those cases. It could be anything from body-worn camera, cell phone information, surveillance cameras, interviews. We have one misdemeanor case I thought was an important example to represent the volume. We have a domestic violence case where we had simply, one case was 70 hours of video that oftentimes has to be reviewed, obviously copied, and provided to the defense. So the third request that we've asked for is to upgrade our current, and this may seem insignificant, but we have currently a sedan that we've asked for a replacement car of an SUV. These SUV, we're asking, is partly because of increased security, and it increases safety in terms of, we know from looking at other counties, I asked my chief investigator who's here today to do a survey of other District Attorney's Offices, particularly when it comes to security details and things of that nature. And he surveyed, I believe, five different offices, Orange County, San Bernardino, San Francisco, Fresno, and even Butte County, all of which are using SUVs in their, in their division. So we're asking for that upgrade. $20,000 one-time cost and $780 on annual net county cost.
Could you pause for just a moment?
Yes.
Mr. Natoli has a question.
Yeah, Marie, just with all due respect, in a $90,000 budget, to upgrade a vehicle, there wasn't capacity in your budget to actually do that. I understand growth requests and-
Right.
And I understand the legitimacy of your request, but I guess, in all honesty, without putting you on the spot, I mean, if you need that vehicle for safety purposes, I would trust there'd be some capacity throughout the course of the year to actually make that-
Right. I think that, my understanding is that we have to go through the Board to get that agreement to upgrade it.
Oh, okay.
And we're willing to absorb the cost. That's the only reason why I'm presenting it.
Okay, all right. So again, if we grant to the request without the funding, that would, okay.
Right.
Thank you.
So I appreciate that, thank you. And then the last one, which I have agreed that we're willing to forego this year, but we do want to just put it on the radar for the Board, is an attorney five-year-old abuse and financial crimes. We know that we've seen an increase in financial crimes. They have special laws and evidence codes that relate to that, which require special training. The increase that we've seen in just the last year or so has been from 67 to 97 cases. Currently, there are 24 cases of financial elder abuse within our office, and the net county cost would be approximately $180,437. So just to summarize again, I'm hopeful that we can get to these three. I again believe very strongly that they are necessary, and if the Board's willing to support us, I appreciate it very much on this. So thank you again. Any other questions?
Any further questions, District Attorney? Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just on the elder abuse, so are you going to be able to cover, again, seeing the rise in the case, I recognize that's an area obviously of growing concern, and I know in our briefings, we've certainly talked about that, and we're seeing more evidence of that, so the prosecution of those cases with vulnerable adults and so forth. So how is it you would cover that? You've withdrawn requests for this year, but then-
We have to just look at all of our, look at the budget. We've got many other additional duties that we're asking our lawyers to do of additional things, so we can look at it and see if there's some way that we can find a position for that.
Sure.
And so we obviously think it's a need.
So you have one position assigned to that now, and you'd be looking for a second position?
Yes, yes. We have a full-time elder abuse prosecutor.
Right, right.
But the volume is so high that it ends up having to go to, not that we're not capable of handling it within other units, but it is specialized area that we prefer to have within one unit.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Schubert. Our next presentation is from Sandy Damiano, the interim director. Morning, Sandy.
I have a PowerPoint. I'm Sandy Damiano, I'm the interim Health Director, Department of Health Services. I'm very happy to be here today. I want to highlight some of our behavioral health program investments for the Board that have been included in the CEO's recommended budget today. The short PowerPoint's going to cover three key areas of investments. The mental health services expansion, that's consistent with Board direction, provider rate increases and supports to ensure the stability of our mental health crisis system, and a brand-new proposed initiative, the Drug Metacall Organized System of Care. The first slide is on the mental health services expansion. This is a major expansion. This direction is consistent with the November 7th Board's direction to use available Mental Health Service Act funds to provide services to individuals who are homeless with a mental health co-occurring disorders. Clients may be participating in the county's homeless initiatives or in the city initiative. This is a major service expansion. It will increase capacity by about 1,400 members in all the services, outpatient services as well as full-service partnerships. It also offers housing supports, over 1,500 housing subsidies for individuals who are homeless. In addition to those outpatient services that are available, there will also be increased capacity within our key access points, which includes the guest house and the triage navigator program. The Board approved these programs at the April budget, or Board hearing on the Mental Health Services Act expansion, and these are in your budget today. The next item is the AB 1114 Mental Health Services Act Prevention and Early Intervention for Foster Youth. This was a service that was also consistent with the Board direction to use available Mental Health Services Act funds that were subject to possible reversion for children and youth in the foster care system. Services worked on trauma-informed mental health services and supports with an emphasis on placement stability for these youth and their resource families. The, sure.
Mr. Serna has a question.
Thank you. Just before you move off of the homeless services, and I, you may go into greater detail, I'm aware of that, but when you say housing support services, I want to make sure I understand that that is exclusive and complimentary to the Board's action as well as the city's action last January, January 2017, relative to the resource priority adjustment for the vouchers?
These are housing subsidies.
Okay, so they're complement-
They're complimentary to help house people.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the AB 111, as we said, is to help with placement stability for foster youth and their families. It will help through use of mobile teams, use of peer supports and other features for this vulnerable population that's at risk. It was also in the April 10th Board item on the Mental Health Services Act funds. The third one is the SB 82 Triage Transition Age Youth Grant. This is a grant for the transitional age youth population, age 16 to 25, and the focus will be on homeless transition age youth. There's a gap in the current crisis continuum in terms of how to reach this target population, which has specialized needs, and they will work to engage them, to link them to other services, and to stabilize their immediate crisis. The goal is to reduce any unnecessary psychiatric hospitalization, emergency department utilization, and to make sure that they're at services at the appropriate services level. This is a three-year grant that the county's engaged in. Those are all the mental health services expansion programs. It's a very large investment of services for these populations, for the homeless and for transition age youth. The next slide is on the mental health operational needs, and you heard earlier about the long-term investment the county has been doing in the crisis stabilization continuum of care and the subacute level of care. These growth requests really focus on trying to maintain those services. These services are a major priority of county mental health specialty plan services. All of them, with the exception of one, have to do with our crisis continuum of care. The inpatient hospital rate increase was put into the budget as a 2.5% increase. It's actually a 3% increase. It was negotiated at the time this budget was printed. The Crestwood psychiatric health facility is also a 3% increase, and the subacute is a 2% increase. Most of these are having issues in terms of increased costs for staffing to run those facilities. All of us are experiencing difficulties with recruitment and retention of qualified mental health professionals or health professionals. The crisis residential program needs an augmentation. This one is not a rate increase. This one is bringing, using federal financial participation. It's to help with the high turnover and vacancy rate that's going on this fiscal year and make sure they can meet their staffing ratios and be in line and in alignment with the other crisis residential programs that are coming online.
Could you pause for a moment?
Sure.
Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, sure. So with this augmentation with the inpatient hospitals and the Crestwood facility, is this going to hopefully negate the need to come back and continually augment as we have the last several years?
It's been difficult, let's say that.
I mean, it's a guessing game.
Yes, it is. But we are budgeting less in this particular budget this year. I believe it's about $6 million less than last year. We have a psychiatric health facility, a six-bed facility, that is supposed to come online in January. They should have two crisis residential programs that are going to be fully operational this year.
That's Henrietta and Riolinda, or which ones are those?
I'm going to have Uma Zakowski tell you about those.
Okay.
Hi, Uma.
Yes, good morning. Yes, it's Henrietta and Marconi. So one is in the South area, the other one is focusing on more of a younger adult.
So we'll have three of the four that we-
That would be correct. We're anticipating we'll have by this fall, three of the four that we had considered. That would give us 45 of those crisis residential beds in those facilities. In addition, the psychiatric health facility, the 16-bed, is also going through some of the work right now, and that would bring us, we're thinking about a January 1 date approximately for that, you know, building and all that.
But we continue to search for that fourth elusive site that's funded?
Yes, yes. We are still working on that last one.
That was the one that- That was the one that, at one point, we had looked at Orange Vale? That's the one?
Correct, correct. That's the one where we're trying to, you know, close that place and find another location, but it's been more complicated to get that going. But between those different things to respond to Supervisor Nattoli's earlier question, we are considering that these expansions, which has taken two and a half years to get on the ground, once they start seeing people, will actually reduce the number of people who might be using inpatient beds by a tune of about 8,000, give or take. So we will have more capacity. The hesitation is really that we're also increasing our work in, for some of these populations.
So in essence, the lack of that fourth facility is not only hurting us as far as serving people, it's costing the county probably more money?
Correct, correct. Because that was our intention, to have the 60 crisis residential beds in our community to be able to have that outflow for everybody.
Thank you.
A couple more questions. I'm not sure whether it's for you or Sandy, but Supervisor Nattoli?
Yeah, for Uma or Sandy. So as I heard, Sandy, you said you were going to reduce by about $6 million on the inpatient side, and you gave the number of about 8,000 bed days, which at $1,000 plus a day is $8 million. So what is the total amount? Because we were at $23 million, and I think we had to augment that earlier this year, took it up to $27 or $28 million for this current fiscal year. And so what are we budgeting for next fiscal year relative to inpatient days? What's the budget number?
I believe it's 21 million.
It is 21 million, okay. So that accounts for that.
But less.
Yeah, it is less. And so, and that's based upon the calculation consistent with what you both said, somewhere in between 6,000 and 8,000 less.
Yeah, that is exactly what you were saying. What we are doing is looking at what our capacity will get us, and then we are budgeting, aligning that with the inpatient contracting. So there is a sort of give and take of the system capacity demand and all those factors built into that.
Let me just ask this, because again, we typically see this, I mean, we're going to ask anytime, you're always good with the information, but as we track that and see those facilities come online, could we have, you know, maybe, you know, periodic updates to the board? Doesn't have to be monthly or maybe even quarter, but somewhere before we get to mid-year budget, you know, and hopefully we won't have to see this as an item, but I think to account for what we're seeing as those facilities come online and, you know, reduction and potentially, again, you have to track it throughout the year, so you don't know to get to the end of the year whether you made it or not, but if we're seeing a trend line, because I know you do trend that for us, maybe sure for sure that we get that regularly, that information, I think is important because it obviously has dollars attached to it, so...
I think it would be best if we did it quarterly at this point, because everything we've given you as of right now is where we are, and as soon as we get the two new facilities on the ground operational, that's when we'd be able to show you some differences.
I think quarterly is fine, Uma, that'd be great. Okay, thanks, Commissioner.
Supervisor Frost?
Uma, I wanted to ask about the Orange Vale facility. First of all, I wanted to thank you for your, all your hard work on that, and I know that we have been working with some of the community who was against the facility, and they're actually on board with trying to help identify a new facility. What is the geographic range of where you're going to be trying to locate that next fourth facility? Will it still be in Orange Vale? And will we continue forward with the idea of working with the community so that they can be part of, you know, problem-solving on this issue?
I think our immediate issue right now is to be able to, for the provider to be able to sell that property in the market, and that until we finalize that, we're not in a place where we can look for another facility or have the outreach done as far as where the other... Sometimes the issues might, for our community for sure, are dependent on whether there's a good match around the type of facility that's already, has the right permits and other factors in the community. So I don't think we have started that other effort until the very aggressive effort being made by the provider to be able to sell the existing property at this point, to be able to have the funds to do the next search.
Is it under contract? Is someone in the process? Is it in escrow right now?
I don't believe I have that answer. I know that one or two of the efforts failed, but I don't believe I have the answer to whether it's right now on... I can get that information to you separately if you like, but I don't think at this moment... I think it's been really, the effort, it's the market really they have to deal with to get that to move.
Thank you.
Okay. Back to you, Sandy.
Thank you, Uma. And what we'll do is in the quarterly reports, we can also note with the progress of some of these new programs that are coming online, some of them are very hard to cite, and it does take quite a bit of effort to do that. I think that would be helpful. The Mental Health Treatment Center is also on here. It's a request for three staff for their intensive stabilization unit, and their inpatient unit is to meet mandated staffing ratios for the volume that we're processing. That's a critical part of our continuum of care. So those are the crisis and the subacute programs. We also have listed on there the children's Medi-Cal provider. They continue to struggle with the cost of doing business, particularly with the last minimum wage going up and recruitment and retention of qualified mental health staff. So those are all supporting our key system initiatives that we have. Okay, this next slide starts our Drug Medi-Cal Organized Delivery System waiver. It's a brand-new initiative, a major county investment geared toward enhancing and increasing substance abuse services. What is the waiver? It's a voluntary federal-state demonstration project. It offers all California counties the opportunity to expand substance use disorder services to Medi-Cal beneficiaries that live in your county. The goal is to really demonstrate how an organized system of care can improve health outcomes and decrease costs on a statewide level. Counties that choose to participate in the waiver, they must use all of the benefits or take advantage of all the benefits, service benefits for clients. It's modeled on national criteria set called American Society of Addiction Medicine. Those are comprehensive guidelines. They're looked at outcome-based care and also the level of placement for clients. The county is county-specific. It's only for our residents on Sacramento County Medi-Cal. It does require a redesign of our alcohol and drug system, which is a fee-for-service system, moving it into an organized system of care. It does require the county to have more responsibilities, including things like additional monitoring, program oversight, more data reporting, compliance, quality assurance, and beneficiary management like a 24/7 beneficiary access line, but it does offer more local control of services as well. Statewide, 40 counties have completed application, and 11 counties have executed contracts with the state. How does it benefit the county? I'm sure all of you are very aware of our substance use disorder problem in the community. We see it on the national news frequently and on local news. Just a few statistics about our unmet needs. Nationally, 10% of all adults at any point in time have a substance use disorder, and about 75% of those do not receive any treatment for that disorder. 56% of our unsheltered Sacramento County homeless report drug use, and we have about 25% of our adult probation clients have drug-related offenses. Additionally, as you're aware, in 2017, Sacramento County ranked 11th in the state for opioid-related deaths, and marijuana is on the rise in our community with children and youth showing an increase in marijuana use. It's their second highest drug of choice. The waiver benefits the need by increasing access to services, increasing the range and array of services, which I'll show you on the next slide. It also benefits clients who just don't have one problem. People come in with physical health conditions, with mental health conditions, and with substance use conditions, and we need to treat all of those in order to have good outcomes. Some of our populations that we treat in this county, particularly the homeless and the criminal justice populations, have higher incidence of co-occurring mental health and substance use disorders. I know another thing that you're very interested in with this waiver is that you do have access to medication-assisted treatments like Suboxone or Vivitrol. Suboxone is a required element if you opt into the waiver. Vivitrol is an optional medication-assisted treatment. The county would like to opt into that as well. Right now, those treatments are only available fairly narrowly at some primary care homes where they have had adequate training, but they have limited support. This would mean that that, those medications and the treatment are available within the alcohol and drug system of care as well.
Could you pause for a moment, Sandy?
Sure.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, you know, we have the hard copy of the presentation, so we can skip ahead and see what you're going to present, the next slide. And you have plenty of mention of methadone, but you just, since you just brought up, Sandy, you mentioned Suboxone, so otherwise known as buprenorphine.
Yes.
And this is a relatively new medication-assisted treatment for opioid addiction relative to methadone, which has been around for decades. And it's something that I've been very impressed with in terms of some of our nonprofit clinics in our community that have, for years now, been treating opioid-dependent constituents with a great amount of success. Something that I've asked for, for well over a year of this county, from our CEO's office and from your department, is that we look into the prospect of a pilot project that would complement what the small clinic community is already doing, which is having this great success treating opioid-addicted people, and do so at our one and only primary healthcare center at the corner of Broadway and Stockton in the district I represent. So I, because I don't see it on the slide, and it hasn't been kind of just put out there, are you telling me that this is where we're finally appropriating the resources necessary to accomplish that objective?
Well, this one actually puts it in the Drug Medi-Cal formulary, so the narcotic treatment providers and others that contract with the drug and alcohol program could also increase it. What you had mentioned is that at some of the FQHCs, the federally qualified health centers, they have some providers, physicians or nurse practitioners that have received the training and that could provide Suboxone treatment and monitoring. That has been limited only to primary care providers and not within the drug Medi-Cal system to date. I do have some news for you. At the county's health center, they are starting their Suboxone pilot. It has been later than expected. We've had a series of vacancies. They're very excited and committed to that. They're trying to teach the providers to screen and get people on board. So I think they have started a couple of people. That effort in the clinic is just part of their regular services. It's just taken in trying to get the services lined up, and that is paid through Medi-Cal program.
So that's where I would find in the recommended fiscal year 1819 budget, the budgetary resources necessary to continue that into the next fiscal year?
Yeah, it's part of their current program, yes. So that is in there, and I believe most of the FQHCs are also doing that. But it's fairly limited. This will bring it far broader.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Also with the waiver, it increases health integration, county mental health plan as well as health plans in primary care medical homes, and hospital systems are trying to make greater efforts to coordinate services. People are aware that some of our populations take great efforts to coordinate care. If we have the waiver going, this will allow them to come into the fold of better healthcare integration. Regionally, some of our neighboring counties have all opted into the waiver. They are using it as an opportunity to pay some of these rates or increase some of the rates to providers. If we don't opt in, we may have some less resources in certain areas. Large counties are using the waiver to, as part of the service array, targeting individuals who are homeless. We would like to do that as well. You might also need this waiver in future programming, like No Place Like Home. The waiver allows you also to draw down federal financial participation, which does provide for these new services. Add a key feature is that there are longer residential stays for certain populations under the waiver. So it changes the rules, particularly for the criminal justice population. On this next slide, it compares the current services and benefits under Drug Medi-Cal with the waiver benefits. And you could see, and we've already talked about this, under the residential treatment in the current service plan, it is only limited to perinatal, and there is a 16-bed limitation. With the waiver, the residential treatment is appropriate for all enrollees that are on Medi-Cal that meet service criteria, and it's not limited to the perinatal population. There's no bed limitation on that, which is also a change, and the lengths of stays are longer, particularly for some populations that need a longer length of stay. We already talked about how the narcotic treatment providers currently use methadone. With this waiver, there will be expanded options for Suboxone and Vivitrol. It could be with the narcotic treatment providers or with other contracted providers as well, which is a big need in our community today with the opioid epidemic. There are new services, detoxification, recovery services, case management, which helps with care coordination and care integration that are available. There's also physician consultation, which we did not list separately on there.
Just a moment, Sandy. Supervisor Nattoli?
Yes, Sandy, just as it relates to narcotic treatment programs and the citing of those programs, county has a role currently in responding to need, to geographic distribution and such. By entering the waiver, does that alter our ability to weigh in? I know we've had some longstanding discussions with the city of Ranch Cordova as it relates to a private provider, not necessarily a public provider. So I want to be clear about that. We still have the same role. We aren't, you know, by entering to waiver, have to say that, you know, our role is diminished in that?
No, our role's actually increased under the waiver. There is more...
Bars oversight.
Yes.
Oversight and control.
Absolutely.
Okay. Could you send the specifics on that so we could have that? I think it would be good to share with our city folks on that. I don't need it today, but that'd be good. Okay, thanks.
Okay, there will be an increase also in access to treatment because there is a 24/7 beneficiary access line, and the guest house will be increasing screenings for the homeless population. Okay, this next slide lists the annualized costs. It's 11.8 million for a fiscal year. Half of that is in federal financial participation. For fiscal year 1819, it's 5.9 million with 2.95 million in net county costs. The cost calculations were developed by staff utilizing the most recent provider cost reports, utilizing utilization and waitlist data, and looking at regional comparable rates. They had an external fiscal consultant review their rate, proposed rates and their calculations. That consultant is used statewide. They had a peer county, Santa Clara, also look at their rates and their rate calculations. And the state Department of Healthcare Services also reviewed their calculations and gave them detailed feedback. The state is, has final approval on the final rate package, and then after go-live, the county has one more opportunity... to review the rates, the rate utilization, and to modify their calculations post-go-live, which is a great feature. Okay, the last slide is the post-approval steps if the board approves the waiver. Most of these are either state or federal review of plans to implement a program. This is a very big effort, moving a system from a fee-for-service model into an organized managed care model. There's a lot of steps to go through. This is a pretty aggressive timeline. It's subject to the state and federal approvals. I can say that. It does not list all of the staff work that needs to be done. It's just mainly the approvals that we have on here. It's an extremely large lift for our alcohol and drug staff and the behavioral health staff to move this system. It's a major service change. They're very excited about this change, very excited to have the opportunity to expand services to Medical beneficiaries. They've received a lot of support, not only from alcohol and drug providers, but also from mental health service providers, health plans, hospital systems, the homeless community, et cetera, who would like to be able to access these services. Okay, any further questions?
Supervisor Nativi?
Yeah, just a kind of a basic question, but, you know, it goes to, how many more people do we think we can serve when this is in place?
Uma, do you have that number? I have it, but I won't be able to find it for you right now.
And I, once we get done talking about the waiver, you have some other questions in the health realm, so I can hold those, Madam Chair, until you, if there are other questions on the waiver, otherwise I had a couple other programs I wanted to ask about.
Initially, when we did this, I think over time we will serve many more people, but we did about a 15% increase in our calculations. So, right now, we serve about 6,000, 7,000 people, and we added. Now, that being said, there are new service levels here, so, which we don't have currently in our system at all. So I think it will take us about a year before we're able to tell how many more people will. We will be bringing down more, we will be bringing in more, federal match for our programs, have more capacity for different levels of service. But we, in doing these fiscal plans, you have to sort of look and see how much you can match with what your, the match dollars that you're putting into the program. So that being said, it's about 10 to 15% more that we calculate.
They might serve, for another $5 million, 700 more people annually, annualized? 700 to 850, 900? If I took your numbers, again, I know those are all rough, but 6,000 to 7,000 currently served, which, again, I'm not diminishing, but I just, it seems to me that's a fairly significant expenditure.
I think it's in different levels of service, so I can, maybe after lunch, just look at the numbers and get you a better answer. But there are different levels of developing the rate structures, and until we start seeing people, it's difficult to know how big our, because we have very, we've had a, we haven't had capacity in our community for a long time. So once we open the door to this much more robust service system, it's likely that, just as in Riverside County, for example, where they had like a huge bump when they first opened their doors, we may experience the same thing, which is why we have that ability to rework our rates.
So we'd be able to, we do have waitlists. I know we've had that discussion before this board, certainly during budget time in the past, and you were able to reduce some of those wait times for folks, you know, entering residential treatment. And I heard Sandy's presentation on that, but also getting into other programs more quickly. So I think that'd be an important measure, too, as to times, you know, if you expand it, obviously you may have the, you know, bigger pool of folks to draw upon, but then I think that's one, one important measure, anyway, of how quickly we're able to assist folks in, you know, dealing with their addictions.
Supervisor, if I might, just real quickly on that point. Thank you for your question. I think this is the key question, in terms of our range of added services we can provide. What I might suggest in the way of adding on to what Uma already said is that we'll provide regular updates to the board on our reach on this and how many people are able to actually access services and how we're able to address those waitlists.
I think Supervisor Nativi, the point on this is that you're right. That's one matrix, how many people we got in. But the other big feature is that the level of service that we're going to be able to provide to folks out there. So we might not get number increase on the $5 million. I would not want to leave you with the impression that $5 million is only for 850 more participants. It's the span of service that we're doing and more comprehensive and assisting folks get out of the addiction component.
Okay.
Supervisor, and Nativi, one other thing which is important in this is that this initiative will fit very nicely with the work being done on the homeless initiative, the MHSA initiative that was talked about by Sandy earlier. Because some of the population that is going to, that's going to be served is going to be the folks who are between the mental health and the substance use service system, who are also homeless. So I think what we're really trying to do here is utilizing the waiver to capture some of the really hard-to-serve population in our community.
Okay, thanks for the explanation. I'll hold my other questions for a moment. Thanks.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, I just wanted a couple things. First of all, I find the waiver a game-changer.
It is.
It is. And as Uma pointed out, you know, when we're talking about the homeless population, but not just the homeless population, the community as a whole, so I think this is a very exciting moment for Sacrament County. The second thing, it's not necessarily apropos to just the budget here, but since everybody's here and we're on must-watch TV today, I did want to also thank Uma and your staff and Sandy, your staff, for the work that you did recently to go after an innovative grant from MHSA for, you know, we were awarded $14 million recently for another urgent care facility along with Dignity Health up in the north part of the county and the north part of the city. You know, all of this is just, you know, we talked about the $44 million that was redirected last year out of MHSA. You know, it just keeps on building upon that, and I think that we're making great headway to actually do good work. So I want to thank you very much, Uma, for the work that you all did to get that $14 million. There's nothing to sneeze at, so thank you.
No, very good.
Thank you. Any further questions for Sandy? Mr. Nativi?
Yeah, these are a couple of different topics in the health area, if it's appropriate now.
Sure.
I wanted to ask about, as it relates to any additions and our work dealing with sexually transmitted diseases, I know Dr. Casiri's in the audience, but when I see those published rates, and I know we've had that conversation, to me, that's frontline public health, and I didn't see any particular additions in the budget. And again, it may be something that, you know, for, you know, after the noon break, you come back, and I'd like to have some conversation as we talk about the budget. And also the Hearts for Kids program, and I know Dr. Casiri tried to reach me yesterday afternoon late, and I wasn't able to get back to her. But there's a component of that that relates to public health nurse visits for, you know, children zero to five. And I recognize some of the reductions, and folks in the audience that can speak to that. I guess I'm curious as to how, if any way at all, we're going to make up for that. I think that those public health nurse visits to the homes where those young children are, and maybe again, working certainly in concert with Birth Beyond and our, you know, Family Resource Centers and others, but I'd be curious to know if that just falls off altogether, and if so, what it would take for that component. I recognize there's delay in getting some of the examinations and so forth, and some of that'll be offset, as at least explained in the budget document. But I'm curious about, particularly the public health nurse visits to the home.
Yeah, and I think Michelle Calleas might talk a little bit more also about the Hearts for Kids.
So that falls in there?
Well, it's a difficult one, because it's a collaboration between both. As far as I know, there is not a plan to change the public health visits, public health nurse visits. There's not an augmentation for that.
Okay, so.
They are exploring the medical clearance issue.
Right, so if somebody could, for purposes of discussion this afternoon or tomorrow, whenever we get to deliberations, to kind of know what that number is and what that would, what that would mean, either from a staffing perspective or otherwise. I'd like to have the information.
Sure.
And lastly, and I don't know if it showed up in any of the budget documents and so forth, but my understanding was there's been some conversation with the public health officer, maybe with you, Sandy, about assisting with some one-time-only funding for one of our college campuses to actually open and provide some clinic services, and it would be one-time-only of about $20,000, $25,000. And I want to know if that shows up anywhere in the budget document, and if not, again, if we can at least have some conversation. And I think maybe people in the audience that want to speak to us under public comment on this, but.
Yeah, it's not in our budget. I think the conversations came up later. Dr. Casiri has been in some conversations with our local community college. They did have some resources before. I believe it was through Plan, not Planned Parenthood, I think it was the other program.
No, it's not Planned Parenthood.
Yes, that helped with the STIs and also some reproductive health. They lost that grant. They weren't able to fund it anymore. They are looking at public health to see if they could provide one-time funding at this time. She is in conversations with them to see if there's any way to identify any funding for that purpose.
Okay.
It's about one day a week. I don't know exactly what avenues they've explored at this point.
All right, maybe, again, for purposes of at least this morning's conversation, we could have some information back on that for afternoon or tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, we're hearing from Michelle Calleas, the Acting Director of Child, Family and Adult Services.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Board Members. My name is Michelle, yeah, good morning. My name is Michelle Calleas, and I'm here to talk about the Department of Child, Family and Adult Services. And I aim to keep this brief. I know that there'll be a number of questions, but I want to just give you an overview of the new department, talk about our funding sources briefly, a couple of our recommended growth requests, and then speak to you about the challenges facing DCFAS, including the impact of the first five reductions on our local family resource centers. Before I launch into the few slides that I have, I do want to acknowledge the staff within the Department of Child, Family and Adult Services. Starting a new department is a major endeavor, and our administrative team has done an extraordinary job in leading forth the effort, attending to logistics while also ensuring there was no disruption to services to the clients that we serve. So they've done a great job. I also want to speak, you've heard me talk about how proud I am with the Child Protective Services staff and the services they deliver to our community. I've had the opportunity to learn more about the senior and adult services world, and am just equally impressed with their staff and their knowledge, their skills, and the level of commitment they have to providing quality services to our community. So you can feel confident that the new Department of Child, Family and Adult Services will represent this board well and also serve our community to the best extent possible. And I want to make one final note. There were concerns with the split of Department of Health and Human Services and how that could potentially impact the partnerships and collaborations we have. And I will also assure you that I will continue to work closely with Department of Health Services, Dr. Casiri, on the number of partnerships we have to, with their public health nurses, to ensure medical needs of our clients are attended to, and also working closely with Uma Zikovsky to ensure that mental health needs are addressed from our infants all the way up to our senior population. So those relationships will remain strong, and we'll continue our partnership with Department of Human Assistance as we link our clients to services needed, and also look at more housing opportunities for the clients within DCFAS. So, quick department overview. We have a total budget of 121.8 million. And with the adjustment of realignment now as a reimbursement rather than a revenue source, you can see our total adjusted budget is about 198.5 million. We have a total of 1,181.1 full-time employees. And as you can see, the biggest portion of our budget, as well as the highest number of employees, falls into CPS, followed by Senior and Adult Services, and then our department administration. I wanted to just list quickly our funding sources. You can see that the majority of the DCFAS funding is through federal reimbursements. On the child welfare side, that's Title IV-E, the majority of it. And for the Senior and Adult Services side, it's Title 19 related to health services. For the realignment, we receive both 1991 and 2011 realignment. If you look at the state general fund allocation, that is predominantly categorical funding related to continuum of care reform, as well as to the IHSS allocation. And then we have just a little bit of general fund in the DCFAS budget, and that is tied to our Black Child Legacy efforts, as well as foster care placements and ancillary costs that can't be covered by IV-E assistance funding. And then there's also a small amount that supports the Black Child Legacy Steering Committee. Okay, our recommended growth requests. Mr. Ferguson referenced earlier the need for us to get our computers upgraded by 2020. This $180,000 request will help us get Senior and Adult Services in compliance with this requirement. It will be offset with federal funding, so the net cost is $90,000. And then for foster care placements, as many of you are aware, we have faced more difficulties finding appropriate foster care and group home placements for children who are in our care and custody. And part of that has come with the decline in the number of resource families we have in our community, along with an increase in the level of needs that our children and young people are experiencing due to the trauma they have faced. So we are requesting $200,000 to find some creative solutions to try to incentivize folks being able to take some of our kids with higher-level needs. For example, sometimes they may need a one-to-one match in order to support them maintaining that placement. So we would utilize funding to try to get that into place. And we will be targeting the kids that we have the most difficulties finding safe and appropriate placements for. The challenges facing, and I can go back and speak to the unfunded requests, although they may grow with the, I can address the question that Mr. Nativi had about senior housing on the DCFAS challenges.
Speaking of Mr. Nativi, he has a question.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I don't know if you're going to do that now, because I wanted to reference just the previous slide when you were going to do the computer refresh, and you said you had to do that by 2020.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know what, you know, lead time you need to have. It sounds to me like the match for that was very similar to the match for the unfunded request, growth request for senior safe house for the elders, which was a higher amount. But how was it that the computer refresh at $180,000, in a smaller amount, got a higher priority than, say, housing for adult protective services, for emergency housing for older adults? And again, if it's a one-for-one match, could we buy some of those services? I mean, you have a half a million dollars in the request. It was 250, 250 for emergency housing. For the computer refresh, it was 180, 90, 90 split. So could you maybe elaborate a little bit?
So, the need for the computers, they were the last division to get upgraded to where we need to be for DTAC. And I wanted to say it was 2019.
I thought you said 2020, though.
That's what was referenced earlier. My understanding, it was 2019, which is why we prioritized it. So it is $90,000 that we'll be able to leverage from federal funding. The cost for the senior housing, you know, senior housing is a critical need for us, emergency housing. The request for that was for $500,000 for six beds. We currently have an emergency shelter in the north area. This request was focused on another safe house in the south area. $500 total, $500,000 total with $250,000. $500 total, $500,000 total with $250,000 that we can leverage in federal funding.
Well, I guess what I'd like to see, and again, maybe for conversation this afternoon, and I don't want to lose a side of it, is that if you, again, maybe we're going to buy, you know, the six beds in a house, in a given unit with the appropriate services and so forth, but seems to me for seniors, and again, I don't know what the utilization is, but I trust the request wouldn't have been there if there wasn't a growing demand and need, and I think it's been referenced here, as it relates to, you know, growing senior population, but one that's more vulnerable for a lot of different reasons. But to have emergency housing for the elders of our community, and certainly you need to have a computer system to support the efforts of those who provide those services on the county side of it. If we're looking at three beds, if that were a possibility, you could do that for, I assume, just if I did half the cost, I don't know. I guess what I'd like to see, though, is to have some conversation about that. I mean, we've heard a growing call for that need, and as much as I support our technology upgrades, and that helps our folks to be efficient and effective in delivering services, I'd like to have some conversation. Even if we did a half a year and bought three beds, you could get that cost down to at least the general fund portion of this, the DTAC, you know, again, if I was going to do a comparison, in my own mind, you know, I guess I'd have to be persuaded that if, in fact, we could defer another year to 2020 on the computers, maybe not, but I'd like to see us have that conversation to get some of those beds for the south area. Again, certainly, I've been out and visited the safe house for the elders that's in the north part of our community, it serves people countywide. But I think with that population, the vulnerable senior population, certainly geographically have a place where people that are subject to abuse of all types can have, you know, be housed in emergency situations. To me, that's key and critical, and I'd like to have a conversation either this afternoon and/or whenever we get to deliberations, but have some more information behind that, Michelle, I don't want to catch you off-guard here, and again, this is a big-budget unit, but certainly have Nav and your folks take a look at that as well, maybe how we could at least, you know, set a tone, at least start doing that, and buy some capacity in the southern part of the county, which has a growing population as well, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, as I mentioned, the population for our seniors is growing pretty rapidly. Over the next 12 years, the number of individuals over 65 is expected to grow by 75%. We'll go by, from about 190,000 seniors in our community to over 330,000. And so as you referenced, housing is definitely a need that we will be facing. And although there aren't recommended growth requests, this was something that we all take seriously, and the number of priorities this year was just so difficult narrowing down what we had the resources to fund. We will continue to look at the needs that were identified by the SAS team, along with the Aging Adult Commission, and the stakeholders that provided input to address some of the needs that they identified. I think it is going to be incumbent upon our department to continue to work with system partners and the community-based partners to find creative ways to provide services that will allow our seniors to remain safely in the community where they can also live with dignity. So that is a challenge for us moving forward, and we will continue to look at ways to meet their needs. Another challenge facing the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services is a continuum of care reform, and I think you've heard a lot about it. It is the most sweeping reform to hit child welfare in at least two decades. We are a year and a half into it, and we are completely committed to the vision behind it. We believe it will lead to better outcomes for foster children. We have successfully launched certain aspects of it, the resource family approval process. Sacramento continues to lead the state with timely approvals. The state put forward a 90-day timely approval, and we have managed to do it since the beginning of the program. We've had many other counties come and observe to see how it is we put this into place so effectively. We've been working with our foster family agencies as they too have made the conversion to this new resource family approval process. We're meeting monthly with our group home providers to help them shift their program model to meet the new requirements under a short-term residential therapeutic program, again, as a requirement of the continuum of care reform. Moving forward, July 1, we still have more aspects to launch. We start our Level of Care Assessment, which impacts all our case-carrying social workers. October 1, we launch the Child and Adolescent Needs and Strengths Assessments, which are required by CCR. We'll be working closely with Department of Health Services, partnering with Behavioral Health to meet that need. And we will continue with our recruitment efforts as we seek to increase capacity in our community for stable and nurturing homes to place our children and youth. So CCR brought a lot of new mandates to child welfare, and we, there, as is not atypical, the costs associated are, and the resources needed to really implement this well have proven to be more than what was initially anticipated. We are hopeful that some of the advocacy efforts taking place will lead to more funding from the state, but that remains to be seen. But in the meantime, we're ready to continue implementing and moving forward. And then the other challenge facing DCFAS is the Title IV-E waiver. We have been able to invest in services and supports that we know lead to better outcomes for children and families, but they aren't supported by the traditional Title IV-E funding methodology. So since entering the waiver, CPS has invested in intensive relative support services as well as intensive family finding. And we've got some providers who have partnered closely with us, and we're really seeing some successes in kids that are getting to permanency, particularly kids who are able to find forever homes for, with relatives, with nonrelatives, that had been in foster care for longer periods of time. We also invested in prevention, which is not allowed for under the traditional IV-E funding structure. As I'll talk shortly, we invested $2.5 million into our nine local family resource centers, and then we also expanded our early intervention family drug court that has very impressive results on keeping children and families together and out of foster care. And since entering the waiver, we've seen a reduction of the number of children in foster care, a reduction in reentries, and a reduction of the recurrence of maltreatment, children that are getting abused again. And we have seen our permanency measure for kids in care longer than two years, or those are the ones, the longer you're in care, the more difficult it is for us to find a forever family. That has improved by 39% since entering the waiver. We've exceeded the national standard, we're outperforming the state's standards, so it's been a great opportunity being in the waiver. Now, the bad news is, the waiver is expected to end September 30 of 2019. And so we are looking at ways that we can sustain the efforts in which we've invested. We are keeping a close watch on the Federal Families First Prevention and Services Act, which does allow for some prevention services, as well as some kinship services. That is still being kind of sorted out, and the state is working with the federal government on trying to advocate for flexibility. And we will also explore other opportunities to try to plug some gaps, because the services we've invested in have been valuable.
If you pause just a moment.
Sure.
Supervisor Kennedy?
There we go. You say it's expected to end. Is that with a fairly high level of certainty, or?
So waivers have been around, gosh, I think since the '70s, and every five years, they say it's going to end, it's going to end. And this year, they're saying, seriously, it's going to end. Now, it's never over until it's over. From what we've heard from our LA colleagues, they are advocating strongly to try to convince the federal government to extend it. It's just unknown. At this point, we've been told, brace yourselves for the ending of it, and we're keeping a close eye on it.
So, Mr. Gill, I would like to see us make sure and put this at a high level of importance when it comes to our legislative agenda.
Got it.
Thank you.
Can I dovetail off of Supervisor Kennedy's comments? I think it's a good one. I'd also like to understand, too, since you mentioned there's concern expressed by other counties, other child welfare agencies, what is our National Association of Counties doing, if anything, about this to work collectively on preserving the waiver?
I can't speak to the national efforts. What I know is that in California, of the 58 counties, only seven, well, nine chose to go into the waiver, and then two got out because their numbers were going up. So there are seven out of the 58 counties. Luckily, LA is one of them, and so we're rooting for them.
The big thing.
Yeah, and hoping that they'll prevail in their efforts.
And with NACO, I'm not aware at this moment, but we can reach out to NACO Executive Director, see what they're doing about it.
Okay, thank you.
And then the, my last slide deals with the impact, or addresses the impact of the first five reduction, as it specifically impacts our nine Birth and Beyond Family Resource Centers. And as you know, we've been partners with them for many years. The, this year's hit to the first five, from first five to the family resource centers is 1.35 million. First five has been funding services for the birth-to-five population, so when Sacramento County entered the waiver, we wanted to make that expand to 18, so that it could include families with children who were 6 to 18. And so we were able to do that. Now, with the reduction to first five, from first five, the birth-to-five population still remains our most vulnerable age group. They represent the highest number of calls we get to our hotline, the highest number of investigations, highest number of children that are removed from their families, and they remain the largest age group to be in foster care. Also, national data show that is where the most critical incidents in child fatalities occur. So while we would love to be able to preserve services for our older kids, our proposal is to shift 1.35 million of the 2.5 million to plug the gap for kids birth to five. That, then, there's still 1.1 million available to address six to, it's clearly not going to go to 18. Our hope would be that it would be able to go to at least six to nine, because that is the second most vulnerable age group, and the highest that we see in child welfare. So that was the proposal in order to prioritize the population that is most at risk.
I'm, I'm sorry, I thought you were still speaking, I mean.
No.
Would you like to have a question here, Mrs.?
Thank you.
[laughing].
So, I want to make sure I understand what's presented on the slide, Michelle. So what is in the CEO's recommended budget is a reduction. Well, it is a reflection of the fact that first five has a declining budget by design. We, it's no secret, I mean, we've known that this is, this is coming. But what this reflects is a recommendation to narrow the age cohort that we would serve, continue to serve, with a smaller allocation. So what ages will this necessarily exclude? Well, as is, does it exclude six to 18? Does it exclude nine to 18? You're probably well-aware that the Child Abuse Prevention Council has, and others, have expressed concern, great concern about the reduction, and I have great concern about it as the Chair of the First Five Commission, and someone that really appreciates what the Birth and Beyond programming has done for all the communities that our nine resource centers serve. So I guess what I want to understand is, A, be clear about who this recommended budget does not, is not going to serve, and B, what would be the options for this board in our deliberations if we chose to pursue some kind of bridge funding, or is there an expectation that there may be some state or federal funding on the horizon that might be able to serve a missing age cohort here that wouldn't necessarily require a full fiscal year of funding assistance from the county?
Mm-hmm. So I'll start first with stating that I share your concern about this impact. I too value all the services provided by our Birth and Beyond Family Resource Center partners. We have a very strong partnership. So what, in my conversations with Sheila Boxley, it is real difficult for them to narrow down exactly how far the money will go, because they've blended so much of the funding. They're experts at leveraging every last dollar. So sometimes they're serving a family that has a four- and five-year-old, but they also have an 11- and 12-year-old. So trying to get to the actual cost per child is a bit difficult. My hope is, again, and this would take work with CAPSE and the nine family resource centers, is that that 1.1 million would be able to cover families that have kids six to nine, because again, that's the second age group that's most vulnerable from the child welfare perspective. So what we would be then giving up is services for families that have children 13 to 18. With respect to whether there's other funding coming our way, I know that Sheila's been working very hard around the state, there's a state home visitation program that's in the governor's budget, and it's fully expected to pass, and that would allow for home visitation services to families involved with CalWorks. And I believe Ms. Boxley is working with our Department of Human Assistance in trying to assess that. So there's the possibility that that would be an additional revenue source coming to Sacramento to address the home visitation services that are provided by the Birth and Beyond Family Resource Centers. And then, as I mentioned earlier, there's the Federal Families First Prevention and Services Act, and part of the funding that, part of the services that would be allowed would be home visitation. And so that could be another option of funding. I don't know, however, when that federal funding will come down. It appears as if the state funding would come much faster.
Supervisor, I might just add to that. Thank you, Michelle, that's a great clarification. Couple points. Yes, there is these possibilities of other funding sources. We've been tracking the budget discussions as they go on day by day. As Michelle said, it looks pretty clear like the CalWorks home visiting money is going to go through, but as you know, once it goes through, the state has to have discussions about allocation methodologies. So we don't know exactly how much Sacramento County will get. Our track record is good in terms of what we get from those efforts, but we're going to be very much involved in those discussions, and we'll see what we get. Then the other thing, too, of course, is that once we get that money, there's a competitive nature of putting it out there, which is also a state priority, is that we do it that way. I will say this, though, it's on a fast track, and it looks as though we'll know how much we're going to get by the fall. They're aiming at this launching by the first of the calendar year. So it's, that's a pretty fast track.
So if, it's the will of the board during our deliberations that we want to have a healthy discussion about this and understand what options are in front of us, if we want to, let's say, for instance, entertain the mission of not skipping a beat in terms of having funding available for children aged zero to 18, what would be, you know, what are our options in terms of bridge funding, assuming that we have an optimistic outlook, as Bruce mentioned, about some, you know, prospective state funding, but it obviously depends on when that state funding materializes. So if, in fact, that is the mission of the majority of the board, that we'd want to pursue that and continue uninterrupted Birth and Beyond programming for the same broad age cohort that we've been serving for years. cohort that we've been serving for years, I would like to kind of have those options in front of us so we have a clear roadmap of what we're talking about and what prospectively we may ultimately vote to do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, Michelle?
If I could, ma'am chair, just very quickly, just on that, though, we have had some additional information submitted as it relates to the bridge funding. I think where the request actually has come in for about half of what was contemplated is still would be the reduction, but to take it through basically January. So I think it needs to be part of the view here, so.
I assume that would be one of our options.
Right, right, okay, thanks.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Looks like we're at a posit point to take a break. Is there anything else that anyone's aware of to bring before we break?
I just want to point out that your closed session is continued to tomorrow.
Okay. So we'll be back at 2:00. Thank you. I'd like to call to order the afternoon session of the Board of Supervisors meeting for June 5, 2018. Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Yes, Supervisor Cerna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
So we have heard from the County Executive, the District Attorney, Health Services, and Child and Family Adult Services this morning. And before we go into CIP, were there any other comments, questions the board members had for other county departments? Mr. Natoli?
Yes, thank you, ma'am chair. Just a couple of items I think we all received. The, we did have a request, we didn't cover the, I believe it would be under Department of Human Assistance for the Sacramento Self-Help Housing Hotline, Renters, the Housing Helpline. I think it was a request for some additional funding, I don't know, in order to magnitude $20,000. We had a letter. So I'd certainly like to have that for discussion this afternoon or whenever we get to that. The other one we all received, and I don't know which category it falls under, it was a request from the Splash, Sacramento Splash Program for some bridge funding for, I believe, $97,000 this year. And I think we all got that letter, I think you did, Ms. Cerna. So I don't know how you intend to handle those for purposes of discussion, though.
My suggestion is going to be under board deliberation. We can report on both of those.
Okay, very good.
That was my plan. Yeah, okay.
Thanks.
Great. So then we will have capital improvement plan. Kristin Yates, our debt officer.
Good afternoon. Kristin Yates, County Executive's Office. So today we have before you the final step of approval for the fiscal year 18, 19, five-year CIP. CIP now includes revisions for the following items. In the airport section, International Airport, a project title revision for the director's operations center reconfiguration design that should have been department's operations center reconfiguration design. So that's project number five. And under Waste Management and Recycling, a revision on the project description for the North Area Recovery Station Equipment Maintenance Facility project, which is project number 14. The project now includes designing construction to improve the existing facility rather than the replacement of the facility. So the recommendations for this topic are to accept the Planning Commission's resolution finding that the fiscal year 18, 19 CIP is consistent with the county general plan and to adopt the final fiscal year 2018, 19, five-year CIP as part of the approval process of the recommended budget. One item to note, when we presented the draft CIP, the board requested report backs related to the county libraries facilities and the Mather Wetlands Preserve. These two report backs will be presented to the board at a later time. So the department directors and representatives are here to answer any questions pertinent to projects in the CIP, should you have any.
Mr. Natoli?
Yes, thank you, ma'am chair. So just on the last, again, you noted a couple of those items, so at a later time, when would we expect to report back both on libraries and on the Mather Wetlands Preserve?
Go ahead. Well, other than, I'm sorry.
On the library, we are going to be embarking on a master plan that we're working on. Is that the one?
Yes.
So I don't have a timeline for you at this point, but I can get you one. And Jeff, on Mather Preserve?
Jeff Leatherman, Director of Regional Parks. And on the Mather Preserve, we're working on two aspects of that project. One is with the Preserve Manager and looking at the short-term costs associated with site security of those facilities, which we're able to work into our existing operational budget. And we have some reserves in our operational budget coming into this next fiscal year to tackle some of those projects. And then we're also working with economic development on the longer-term endowment strategy, along with County Exec's Office, for the projects that go beyond just the daily operational.
So could we anticipate we'd have something, again, there are environmental documents that are due out for some of the projects along the Jackson corridor. Some of those may come to hearing later, early, late this year, early next year. But I think as it relates certainly to the Fernal Pope Preserve and our strategies for both the short term as well as midterm and long term, I guess I'd like to see us have an item where we have, you know, maybe develop some strategies, certainly economic development's a part of that. But that's, it's largely in the parks realm now, as it should be. So I guess I'd like to see us have something come back, maybe late summer, early fall, to at least have a.
Let's shoot for fall, and we can refine that date with you.
Okay, I just think it's important. Again, and again, if there's any funding, let me ask Mr. Leatherman, is there, so you've got some things built into your operations this year, they may fit into the CIP. Was there any particular things that aren't being funded that are mission-critical out there as it relates to protecting that property?
Not that it's been identified by staff or by our Preserve Manager at this time. We've got some new post and cable fencing that we're working on around the property.
In addition to what you did last year.
Correct, yeah. We've got, as we continue to fix certain encroachment areas, other pieces pop up where people are accessing the Preserve inappropriately. And so we're working between the Rangers and our Preserve Manager to shore those areas up. And we do have those provisions in our budget this year to handle that.
Okay. And I think that as a part of that, and it may not be appropriate for the CIP, but that in talking about the Preserve Management Manager, and I know there's been some work done around that, I think that would be appropriate for that workshop to come back. So I think this board's fully informed as to the status of, Mr. Leatherman, Mr. Leonard and others have been working on that, so, okay. Thanks. And I just have one other question, if I could, ma'am chair, for, on our CIP. So if I'm not mistaken, then the yellow are projects that are added this year, is that right?
That's correct.
And so we nearly doubled the number of projects. There were like 60-some new additions of the 136 identified.
So there were some situations where projects were bundled last year, and departments chose to pull those projects apart and make them individual projects. Outside of that, other than having a department, a specific question regards to a project and a department representative answer that question.
Okay.
As the CIP started getting funded, a lot of these were conceptual. They had them as one project. And as Kristin indicated, as the funding became available, we started implementing or started building them. They broke them into separate capital projects.
Okay. And one question that is probably relevant to the agenda we have tomorrow, which is the report bargain, RCCC, and the, certainly there's a kind of a two-part question there that relates to the building the health facilities and so forth under the grant and then what we may take off of what was contemplated a year ago. But then I see the CIP, I see a whole lot of things listed there for RCCC, in fact, totaling about $15 million in additional items. Some of them relate to facilities that would have been replaced and/or renovated under that, this conversation we have tomorrow. So I guess what my question is, is that in approving the CIP, these things are needed, but we're still going to have an open discussion before this board as to what we do with grant monies and that project description. Are we getting ahead of ourselves a bit here by saying that we're, these are now in the CIP? And assuming we're going to fund them out of that versus the discussion we're going to have tomorrow about what we might do under the grant?
So I believe the projects that are in here related to RCCC, many of them are to the existing facilities that are already there. Your discussion tomorrow really is about the new facility that's going to be built with those grant funds.
Okay, but just let me just take a brief moment here, but we're also talking about HVAC and kitchen facilities, roof replacement. Well, yeah, if I take a, there's kitchen replace makeup air units, replace refrigeration rack. There's a whole grouping here that would have come under that grant otherwise that, you know, were described a year ago as being 2 million in immediate improvements needed. These only totalled about $2 million. And so I guess my question is, is if we approve this, those things are needed to be done. I bet that, but I'm not just saying, I'm not prepared today to say that, you know, to the answer to the question that we're going to talk about tomorrow.
Yeah, there's the grant question about what we're going to reduce.
Right.
That's the policy question. What's in front of you there is, I'm looking for Jeff Gasway to assist me on this one, is that those are projects that have been listed in the past that.
Some are new, they're yellow.
Some are new.
A bunch of yellow ones here.
New projects in there. So there is a correlation, but Jeff, can you go through?
Jeff Gasway, General Services.
I'm on page B6, just.
What was that?
I'm on page B6, if my colleagues were trying to follow.
Right.
B6 to B7.
Some of those projects were scheduled to happen whether we were going to have, to some degree, the new cook-chill kitchen or not. Some of them needed to be done as well for rethrum purposes as well.
Yes.
Refrigeration rack's been on hold pending the new cook-chill kitchen. So it's put back in. Remember, this is just the plan. We're going to adjust this between, after proposed budget anyway, as well, so.
Because there's about 2.5 million dollars in projects that relate to, some of these have been on the list before, boilers and other things out there, but.
And we're actually, I've got those to discuss tomorrow.
Okay, and that was my question, Jeff, was is that by approving the CIP, not that they don't need to be done, but I'm not predetermining, at least my purposes, the conversation we're going to have tomorrow about how we might fund those things. I guess you could fund them from different pots of money if we chose to.
Yeah, that's correct.
And you might do something different. If you're going to tear down something and build something new, you wouldn't be replacing it, right?
Correct. But the plan all along for the existing kitchen was to keep it going, even though we were building a new cook-chill kitchen, the uses were going to change.
So you're going to keep the old facility under the previous scenario? What are we going to do with it?
Some of it would be used for retherms, and that's where some of the inmates actually go to eat as well. There's a serving line and some eating facilities there as well, so.
Okay. All right, well, again, I didn't want to get ahead of us, ma'am chair, but again, I was curious, and this was in the middle of today, so, in the budget, okay.
Okay. Any questions on CIP or Kristin? Did you have any further comments on it?
That was all from me.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Supervisor Frost has a question.
Okay.
It's a small question. On the unfunded libraries.
Yes.
There's a library in that section.
Yes.
It's called Orange Veil.
Yes.
And I have a question relating to, in the past, there was always a listing of $5 million potential bond.
Yes.
Money, but it's not listed there now. Did it go away? If I go out tomorrow and I find someone that will give, who will donate $5 million, would that $5 million be there or?
Yes.
Is it gone?
I have it reserved in my FAF budget for you.
Thank you.
So it is there.
You've got a $5 million donor, is that what she said?
That's what I'm looking for.
Okay.
If anyone in the audience knows anyone who's rich, I'm looking to meet them.
You can take a brief recess and get that.
Yeah. Anyone else have any comments before we go back to our presenter? Okay, Kristin?
Okay, so you'll be approving this item as part of the recommended budget today.
Okay. Okay, we're going to go into public comment now. We've done our best to gather together the speakers on like issues. So we will start with John Foley. Is he here?
I am.
And then after that will be Jack Zwald. Go ahead.
I'm John Foley, Executive Director of Sacramento Self-Help Housing. Just want, I don't want to take much of your time, but just to say that the county provides the lead on the fair housing work that we do, and the other cities have, over the last few years, joined in so that you have, a percentage of the total budget is yours. And in cutting $14,900 out, we lose another $20,000 bucks from the other jurisdictions. So if you could find a way to put it back in, it would sort of be leveraged. And I sent you a letter to describe what we're trying to do. It is an expansion of our service, but we believe it's a significant, you know, effort if we could do that. I understand if you have to draw the line, but just seeing, consider it. Thank you.
Before you leave, Supervisor Kennedy has a question.
Yes, Mr. Foley. So this money is leveraged with other funders, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, the cities of Sacramento, Rio, El Grove, Citrus Heights, and Rancho Cordova.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Gill? So, I mean, this is a service that actually saves us money in the long run compared to the way we used to do business. At the very least, I'd like to have this considered in the September budget.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Jack Zwald. I forgot to mention at the beginning, we have a two-minute speaking limit today. Is Jack Zwald not here? Maybe I'm mispronouncing it, on Palmwood Court?
He was here earlier in the morning.
Well, he filled out the speaker form, I guess he's not here now. Okay, then we'll go into Social Services. Shakika Anderson, then Mike Jaskey, Kathy Cresswell.
Hello. Hello, I'm Shakika Anderson. I love the program that I've been afforded a while back. I recently had a daughter, and I was robbed, so it sent me into premature labor, and I wasn't really ready. I didn't have the knowledge to be able to take care of a baby that size with that many needs, and I was afforded the opportunity to bridge the gap between the lack of knowledge of how to deal with children properly, how to raise a child.
Excuse me, which program are you referring to?
Birth and Beyond.
Okay, thank you.
And I, this program has been very beneficial for me because, me being a veteran, I've haven't had a lot of opportunities to, you know, been able to branch out because so many opportunities are kind of locked, and it's a long progress. But for me, this was like a quick process. They got me in, they got me all that help I needed. They were able to, you know, help me, and it's a warm environment to know that you go into a place, and any question that you have as far as your children, as far as like your personality, like they're there to help you. And it's not just my home visitor, it's the whole Birth and Beyond community itself because I've been to multiple events where they're calling me out by name, and that makes me feel good to know that I have people on my side that's willing to help me to be able to raise, you know, successful children in our community, to grow up and be anything that they can be. So I just, you know, would appreciate the opportunity to continue the program.
Ms. Anderson?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Cerna?
I have a question for the speaker. Which Family Resource Center?
Valley High.
Valley High, okay, thank you.
Mike Jaskey, then Kathy Cresswell, and Ruth. Oh, Mr. Cerna, have you already spoken?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Kennedy?
Just a second, Mr. Jaskey. Before, just for executive staff, before there's a parade of people getting up for Birth and Beyond, can you give us a status update as far as where that is and where the request is and where it's going?
Supervisor Bruce Whitestaff, Deputy County Executive for Social Services. The question that came up this morning and that's come up prior to the budget hearings is how we might bridge this period of time. is how we might bridge this period of time between now and the time that more additional funding might come in. Birth and Beyond has identified an amount of $650,000 that would represent that period of time to keep things going until then, at which point in time, as we said this morning, there's the possibility of some state funding through the CalWorks Program for Home Visiting, as well as some federal dollars. So their amount is 650 for that purpose.
So they're whole as far as their request goes?
That's the total amount of their request.
Right, yeah, okay. Just maybe you can shorten the day if we get that out there now. Thank you.
Mr. Jaskey.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters, members of the board. For the record, my name is Mike Jaskey, speaking on behalf of Sacramento Act. This afternoon, I'd like to focus on the programs and activities that provide housing and support services to homeless people in your proposed budget. Although DHA staff assure me the proposed budget continues the programs and activities of the current year, it's really hard to understand that from the budget documents themselves. That was stated this morning by Mr. Ferguson, but one cannot really tell that from the formal documents. Homelessness is a critical issue in our cities and the unincorporated area of the county. The public needs to understand what it is the county's programs and activities are that are devoted to this topic, what it will take to make a big reduction in the numbers of people who are homeless, and how long that's going to take. We have long advocated that the county, city, and Sacramento steps forward, work together to develop a plan that will end homeless or sharply reduce its incidence, educating the public about what it will take to accomplish these goals and important activity. So please help lay the groundwork for this outcome by requesting that your staff develop and publicly distribute a comprehensive enumeration of all of the program activities that are connected to homelessness, what their funding levels have been, and what they are in the proposed budget, and let that be available in August prior to the final budget hearings. Our homeless brothers and sisters need our collective support to escape from their desperate condition. The faith community and charity can't do this alone. As the level of local government closest to the people, you need to find a way to identify the resources and activities necessary to bring an end to homelessness in our community. Faith community wants to help, but we need your ongoing leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jaskey. Kathy Creswell, then Ruth Sonda, Jonathan Portius.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters and Supervisors. My name is Kathy Creswell, and I'm representing the Sacramento Housing Alliance this afternoon. I want to thank you for your continued commitment to your homeless initiatives. Sacramento continues to face a housing catastrophe. Every $100 increase in rent results in 15% to 30% increase in homelessness. Lowest-income renters in Sacramento are paying more than 60% of their income towards rent, and we are currently, have a shortfall of over 58,000 affordable rental units just to meet the current demand. So we know we have a crisis. We are asking that you permanently designate the former redevelopment funds, now called boomerang funds, into a special account, so that they would go directly into a special account, that they would be used for affordable housing and homeless purposes. As the agencies wind down, as the redevelopment agency winds down, that pot of funds is only going to get bigger and should be designated for the purposes for which it was used previously. It is critical now to designate those funds for affordable housing, because in November there's an affordable housing bond that is going to be on the ballot. All indications are, it's likely to pass. But those funds are designated by the state on a competitive basis, and so Sacramento needs affordable housing funds for leverage. The local boomerang funds could be the leverage that is needed to help make sure we get our fair share of those state affordable housing bonds. And those funds are going to be available as early as spring of 2019. They're going into existing programs, so there won't be a delay. That money will be available. We need to make sure we have the resources for matching funds and to leverage, so that Sacramento gets its share of the resources. Budgets are really a reflection of values and priorities, and so we are asking...
Wind up your comments, please.
We are asking that you prioritize the most vulnerable in our community, both homeless and funds for affordable housing, by designating the boomerang funds for affordable housing. Thank you.
Ruth Sonda, Jonathan Portius, then Richard Dana.
Buenas tardes, yo vengo en apoyo a...
Good afternoon. I'm here to help and support for North Sacramento Family Resource Center, Birth and Beyond.
Could you tell us your name, please?
Ruth, Ruth Sonda.
My name is Ruth Sorna.
Thank you.
Bueno, a mi este centro me ha apoyado como mama primeriza.
This center has helped me greatly as a first-time mom.
Con los programas de clases de crianza con cariño.
With classes such as caring for kids.
Que me han ayudado a tratar de educar a mi hijo.
To help me educate my new child.
Nos cambió la vida a mi familia por...
It has changed my family's life.
Porque conocimos a más, a más este familias de la comunidad que están en este centro.
Because we have learned about and have worked with new families from the different areas and within our center.
Donde podemos compartir experiencias y anécdotas para favorecer el desarrollo de nuestros hijos.
Well, we can learn and share different tactics to be able to teach our kids and different parenting skills.
Este centro también cuenta con el servicio de transportación, el cual nos, yo no tengo carro, y me ayuda a llevar a mi hijo a sus citas pediátricas.
In addition, this program has been useful as it allows transportation, since I do not have transportation. The service has allowed transportation to allow me to be able to take my son to pediatric appointments and prenatal care appointments.
Tenemos poco tiempo para expresar, pero en general a mi este, ha sido una gran ayuda, y gracias a eso yo también puedo compartir y referir a personas de mi misma este necesidades al centro donde ellos nos apoyen.
In short, I just wanted to thank you and to let you guys know that this very much appreciative, and we are able to give this information to other families and have families come in so that they could take advantage of the resources that are offered in this center as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Jonathan Portius, Richard Dana, Gordon Richardson.
Good afternoon. I'm Jonathan Portius. I'm the CEO of WellSpace Health. I'm here today, gosh, when I walk over here, I wonder what I'm here for, because there are so many important items that we're involved with, but I'm here today to support the Birth and Beyond program. We are one of nine sites in a 17, almost 18-year partnership now. We are requesting bridge funding in support of this program. It is a, it's a best-in-class upstream program for child abuse prevention, linked to family resource centers and home visitation. I, as a clinical psychologist, have worked in a number of places where I've seen a wide variety of interventions for families. The linkage between us, the community, Child Protective Services, the clinical community is staggering, and there is no other place I've seen in the country where there's a program like this. So whatever you can do to support our one-time request for this bridge funding, we'd be very grateful. Thanks.
Thank you. Richard Dana, then Gordon Richardson.
Richard Dana with the Mutual Assistance Network, and also the Chair of the Birth and Beyond Collaboration, and Supervisor Kennedy. This will be the last speaker for Birth and Beyond today. Let me just, to do this instead, and say, we do have a lot of supporters here, so I'm going to ask them to stand, those who are here to support Birth and Beyond today. Thank you. I have a feeling if Michelle was able to, she would have stood too, though, right? So just to reiterate what Mr. Wagstaff said, yeah, we are, we are requesting 650,000 in bridge money. That's the money that would get us from July, or excuse me, yeah, July 1st through December 31st, which time we'll be able to apply for state funds that are coming in. We're also applying for Healthy Families America affiliation, which will allow us to attract other federal funds. We already maximize our dollars tremendously through MAH dollars, which comes in through the federal, through federal designation, and with AmeriCorps, along with other funding sources. So the entire package will allow us to stay whole, 650,000, so that we don't have to decrease in size at each site and then have to rebuild, which is one of the hardest things to do. So our request today is that. Appreciate it very much.
So, Mr. Dana, if I understood you correctly, it's a bridge loan, so the idea would be you would pay it back when the state money comes in?
No.
Not a loan.
Thank you, let me reiterate that. It's bridge funding, so we would ask for your, your funding, not a loan.
Okay.
We do not believe that...
Probably have to take the bridge out of that, then.
Fair. We're going to ask for funding of 650,000. And I should also say, we know that you're continuing funding from last year, and we really appreciate that very much as well.
Thank you. Gordon Richardson, then Leani Kobian, and then Alani Abelier Mateo.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters, board members. My name is Gordon Richardson. I'm the Regional Executive Director of Uplift Families, Family Services. We're a children's mental health and behavioral health, as well as child welfare organization here in Sacramento. Here to speak to the Department of Health's budget item, specifically the recommended 2% increase in children's providers, which I understand amounts to about $1.4 million. Over the past few years, most recently in April, healthcare providers have met with board members and their staff to express our concerns about the impact of years of frozen rates, despite rapidly increasing costs for providers. We appreciate the recommendation by the department to increase our rates by 2%, but 2% falls short of the level of intervention necessary to restore services and working conditions in our agencies. As explained in previous meetings, the current rates are at least 24% below where they should be. Funds allocated to Sacramento by the state have been rising. The rates paid to Sacramento for the services have been rising, and this has been happening without commensurate increases to the rates paid to providers. We also recommended that the county adopt some type of annual formula to address increasing costs. We recommended that the county implement a neutral index to address the increasing costs year over year. Given the rates have been frozen for years, we feel justified in asking for a system that will address rising costs of providing services on a more routine basis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you.
Thank you. She's here to support Birth and Beyond. Then Alani Abelier Mateo. I'm sorry if I mispronounced the name. Pencil on the dark green is hard to read.
Good afternoon, Chairperson Peters, members of the board. My name is Elaine Abelé Mateo. I'm here representing the Health Access Action Team, which is a coalition of over 60 different nonprofit organizations, health advocate groups, med students, and we're here today to first thank this board for making the decision earlier this year to increase the Healthy Partners Program enrollment numbers from 3,000 to 4,000, and to approve a pilot to phase in participants 65 years or older. But in addition, we want to strongly recommend that the board consider lifting the cap, the enrollment cap entirely. Many other county programs basically allocate a set budget and serve as many people as that budget will allow, and we are imploring this board to consider that the Healthy Partners Program be no different, and so to lift that cap would be very helpful for the community members that we all serve. Secondly, we're asking that the pilot to increase the age limit from 65 to 65-plus. We're asking that that pilot essentially be granted, that we completely lift and permanently end the discriminatory age cap, because it's really helped a number of the families that are advocates and community members have served. Lastly, there were about 25 other folks here this morning who would have testified in support, but unfortunately, they did have to leave. They were made up of medical students and nonprofit providers, and I just want to also lift up that we had other folks here in support. And my last comment is, we are also here in support of keeping the ICE contract out of Sacramento County. Thank you.
Diana White, and Erin Johansson, and Jack Zwald.
Hi, I'm Diana White with Trainpoint Community Program, speaking on behalf of the Association of Behavioral Health Contractors. We wanted to provide our endorsement for the increase that the Division of Behavioral Health is requesting for behavioral health contractors in the community. As you've previously heard from us, community mental health services have really struggled to hire and retain staff, because the pays are so low, and we have staff working multiple jobs and at times losing their own housing in the process. Obviously, this is going to have a huge impact on the quality of care they're able to provide to the individuals that they're privileged to serve. So we request your endorsement of that as well. The Association also requests that the, if, and if it's passed, that the additional funds be a true COLA and not tied to the provision of additional services, which requires additional staff, which kind of wipes out the purpose of a COLA. Additionally, we would really like to see a fair process established going forward to address rising costs of services as they happen. We don't feel it makes a lot of sense to put really wonderful, responsive, community-based services in place only to see them degrade over time and not fulfill the missions they were set out to fulfill, because costs rise and their budgets remain flat. So, thank you for your consideration of those items.
Thank you, Ms. White. Erin Johansson, then Jack Zwald.
Good afternoon, Supervisors, Madam Chair. I'm also here, I'm Erin Johansson, I'm Executive Director at TLCS. I'm also here to support the recommendation for the 2% cost of living increase for the contractors, and I want to echo what Gordon and Diana have said about the staff that work in these programs, who are committed and do the services for this population because they love it. But I have right now three staff who are homeless, and they are homeless because of rising rents and because their pay has not kept up with, with the rising cost of living in this community. So I would ask that not only you consider what both Gordon and Diana have talked about as making this a true cost of living without services, an increase in services attached, and a fair process going forward where we can have true cost of living considered for the services that we provide. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Jack Zwald.
Good afternoon, Jack Zwald. I serve as the Vice Chair of the County's Public Health Advisory Board. I'm here today to speak in favor of an initiative supervisor not totally mentioned this morning, $25,000 one-time to support the reopening of reproductive health services and sex health services at the Sacramento City College Campus and the Consummus River College Campus. This would provide one day a week of a nurse practitioner providing needed reproductive health services, especially given the county's rising rates of sexual transmitted infection. Notably, in 2016, the county had over 10,000 cases of chlamydia, 79% of which were in the 15 to 24 age range. About 60% of the students at SacCity, for example, are in that age range. The challenge is that there's a lack of qualified providers. California has a workforce shortage in the healthcare industry, whether that be physicians, nurses, across the board. The county has the ability and the infrastructure to provide these services. We're talking about tens of thousands of students who work, 39% of whom work 20 hours, 40 hours plus a week, who need tangible, convenient access to care. Jeff Christian, a nurse over at SacCity, wanted to be here this morning. He shared with me some statistics. I might forge your office after this. He was also in support. So in the future, while this is one-time funding, the district is considering passing a health fee. The district is one of, about a third of California community college districts without a fee. a fee to support ongoing health services, so this would be for 2018, 19, and hopefully in the future, the county could work with the district to provide these services in the long run, along with mental health services, which is the impetus for passing this fee. So, this is the beginning of what could be a fantastic partnership between the county to address health needs and, you know, protect our youth. So, I urge your support. Thank you.
Could you wait for a minute? Mr. Kennedy would like to talk to you.
Yes.
So, this is the subject that you and I talked about earlier?
Correct.
Okay. We're going to just take it off the budget issue right now, because I'm going to dedicate the funding out of discretionary funds from District 2 to cover that, and I've already talked with the President of Sac City College about it.
That's tremendous. Thank you.
You can go home now.
Yeah.[647.66][647.66](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. You got any more money over there?[655.01][655.01](LAUGHTER).
We need about a million dollars if you-
Five million down in the end. Okay, then, it looks like that's all the speakers on the general budget. We'll go to the ICE contract, the item number four on the consent calendar. Rosa Barrientos, then Wade Brindleton, and Alexander Gonzalez. Is Rosa here?
Yeah, she's coming.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Appreciate you.
Reminder that we have a two-minute limit, so we want to hear from everybody today, so help us do that, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Rosa, and I work for the California Dream Network, the largest network of undocumented students, and we have a large population here in Sacramento. Sacramento State Sac City is one of the campuses that we work very closely with students, and for the past years at Sac State, we've worked really hard to ensure that students have a safe space, specifically undocumented students, because of the trauma that we carry, because we know what it's like to hear a bang on the door and know that ICE is coming, and doing this contract is a reminder of the trauma that we carry. It's a reminder of the work that we've been doing to ensure that we are safe, that we are, even though we're struggling, we're surviving in this administration, and what you are doing to us by continuing this contract is saying-
Rosa, Rosa, if you would not put the microphone so close to your mouth, we could understand you a little more.
Sorry, I'm just so upset that Sacramento County would consider, sorry, would consider continuing this contract, knowing damn well, excuse my language, knowing damn well the trauma that we carry, knowing that we are struggling day by day, knowing and fearing that our parents or even us may be detained, knowing that we may be separated, knowing that there's a jail down the street from where we go to school. What does that say? What does that say to that trauma? What does it say to our experiences? It says that Sacramento County endorses family separation, and we will not stand by that. We are here to protect our families, and we are here to say that, no, we do not want this, not here in the county that we call home.
Thank you. Wade Brindleton, then Alexander Gonzalez, then Elizabeth Kim.
I think they got the cards confused. My name is Wade Brindleton. I'm here as a representative of Laura's Law Campaign for Assisted Outpatient Treatment. Would you like me to continue or-
Oh, yes, that's fine.
Okay. AOT in Sacramento County. We represent 45 people who signed our petitions. Members of our group have met with virtually all of you individually, as well as Ms. Uma Zikowski. We thank you for listening to us. We did present our proposal regarding Laura's Law and AOT at the Mental Health Board Public Hearing, and even though you have included increases in mental health funds, you've not included Laura's Law or AOT funds in this budget. So, this afternoon, I want to make two quick points. Number one, first, Sacramento County does not have any program that addresses non-conserved people with serious mental illness who have anosognosia. That is, people who do not have insight into their condition. For example, my son is one of the 50% of those with schizophrenia who have this condition. Also, 40% of those with bipolar conditions have anosognosia. So, Sacramento County is missing hundreds, if not thousands, of people who are not conserved. The only program that does serve some of them is CARES Plus, but that program only serves 40 of the approximately 250 conserved individuals. My second point is that four counties, Orange, San Francisco, San Mateo, and Yolo, report that they are implementing AOT more efficiently and effectively by emphasizing outreach and engagement. They are getting substantially more people to voluntarily agree to AOT services prior to the court-related activities. This process has served more people at a lower cost. I'm going to give you one example of such a county. Orange County is serving 140 people in a year through the outreach and engagement approach, and 33 people through the court process. I'm not going to mention the other three counties, but they're similarly-
Could you wind up your comments, please?
Yes, I will. In summary, if you included AOT in your budget, you would serve hundreds of people with serious mental illness with preventive, early intervention, and wraparound services. My son's case, he lost three and a half years of his life after his first year of college, when he began exhibiting his mental illness. Only after being homeless for three months, in jail for a year, in SMIC for a year, including being conserved, he is now again succeeding in college. If this county had adopted AOT and Laura's Law, he and his family did not need to suffer. Please include Laura's Law in your budget and stop this unnecessary suffering for my son and hundreds of others. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Kennedy has a question for you.
Actually, no, I don't. I would like if Ms. Zikowski would come to the podium, that would be great. Thank you. So, we've had an opportunity to meet with the Speaker and as well as some others on this particular subject, and we've agreed to look at, because we can, you know, agree to disagree, not you and me, but other people, on whether or not Laura's Law is the silver bullet that some people think it is, and that perhaps for Sacramento County, another solution is more appropriate and probably more effective. CARE Plus, we have acknowledged maybe could be tweaked, could be, you know, we could refine it. It's a work in progress. Are we committed to meeting with the interested people who are interested in AOT to address this and maybe see how we can work together as a community to make CARE Plus even more effective than it is?
Yes, Supervisor Kennedy, we have had several meetings to date with both Mr. Brindleton and some of the other family members, who have expressed their support for Laura's Law in our community, and we're in the process of having multiple discussions to see what we can do within the parameters that we have currently, whether it's looking at CARE Plus, whether it's looking at other ways of addressing the same questions that they're raising. So, we are underway doing some, having some conversations with the individuals who both spoke at the public hearing and as well since then. We have several meetings that we're in the process of working through.
All right, then allow me to encourage you to continue to do that. Thank you.
Alexander Gonzalez, Elizabeth Kim, and then Jereth Rodriguez.
So, well, it was supposed to be good morning, but good evening, friends and foes. My name is Alex. I am a student and community organizer here in the Sacramento County. I am here today standing in solidarity with all my undocumented family and those who remain incarcerated in concentration camps to what we know as detention centers. I am here speaking out against action item number four, a contract that brings in $80 million in profit over the eradication, the suffering, and separation of our undocumented community. In fact, throughout the nation, ACLU and other organizations have exposed these inhumane practices in these detention centers. Even here locally, we have discovered the horrific conditions at RCCC. For example, we have acquired some complaints from the inside of detention centers, and I'm just going to give three examples on some of the complaints that we have received. One is that the showers have been a constant problem with pesticides in the shower wall. Some of the showers have no pressure, no curtains. People inside those walls makeshift curtains but are constantly removed by deputies. The drains do not work, causing the bathrooms to flood. In fact, there are no mirrors, other than metal mirrors, which are all scratched up with no point in being used. Second of all, the count schedule makes this impossible for people to sleep. Deputies do bed checks every hour during the night and slamming the metal doors each time waking up. The lights are also left on at night. People put up towels to block the lights, but these are also torn down by deputies. Number four, food bowls are usually often dirty, and food usually just remains prior to meals. The ice bucket often has even film in it. Food portions are uneven. People are treated with poor dietary, yet they don't even get clean bowls. These practices goes to show that ICE does not care about our community. People are removed from their families, and they are convicted due to misdemeanors or most likely just being around during an ICE raid. Remember, human beings such as Claudia Gomez Gonzales, who died at the hands of Border Patrol Agents, and Roxana Hernandez, who died in ICE custody, continue to pass away in the hands of ICE. Overall, how is it that ICE wants to renew a contract but continues to use these tactics to dehumanize our undocumented community? Is this what Sacramento wants to represent? Are these practices your moral values? I want you to really think, do you really want to be covered in the blood of the other people who continue to die in the hands of ICE custody? Because we don't. We've had enough. Do not renew this contract, because if you do, the blood will be in your hands. We ask you, do not renew, but conclude and include asylum are undocumented who remain as a protect. They are not for sale. They deserve to be with their families as much as you do. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth Kim, then Jereth Rodriguez, and Annette Rose. Is Elizabeth Kim here?
What was her name?
Elizabeth Kim. Okay, then we'll go on to Jereth Rodriguez. Is Jereth here?
Good afternoon, my name is Nicole Kravitz-Wertz. I'm here to read a statement on behalf of Janith Rodriguez. Janith is the president of the Latino Democratic Club. LDC is a progressive club whose mission includes getting Latinos civically engaged in Sacramento County. Over the past year, we have observed how the Sheriff's Department continually avoids any accountability by not responding thoroughly to any of the requests for information about the current status of the detention of immigrants in our community. In 2015, the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement Office of Professional Responsibility, Office of Detention Oversight, conducted a compliance inspection of the Rio-Consunus Correctional Center detention facility to determine its compliance with applicable federal standards. Of the 16 standards used to conduct the RCCC was found to be compliant with only one. Let me repeat that. Of the 16 standards used to conduct the audit, RCCC was found to be compliant with only one. I'd like to delineate all the attempts to get information from the Sheriff's Department regarding the individuals being held at RCCC by ICE. In July 2017, Step Up Sacramento filed an initial Public Records Act request with the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. A response acknowledging the receipt of the PRA was received within the 10-day window, allowed by law. On October 5th, Step Up received a follow-up, asking them to, quote, "narrow the scope of the initial request," end quote. A revised request was then submitted. On October 25th, 2017, a response to the revised PRA was received. It provided little or no information, redirecting us back to ICE. In most instances, the responses provided stated that, quote, "no responsive data was available," end quote. On November 28th, 2017, Step Up representatives met with Supervisor Kennedy to inform him that there was a lack of response from the Sheriff's Office and that our opposition to renewing the ICE contract should be noted. It is not clear why the Sheriff's Department has been unresponsive about the information relating to who is being detained, how long they are being detained, and under what conditions at RCCC. This does not seem typical of a Sheriff's Department who last March held a community forum on immigration with then-acting ICE Director Thomas Homan, the main purpose of which was to, quote, "turn the tide of SB 54," plus provide a direct line of communication from law enforcement and ICE to the communities.
Could you please wind up your comments?
Yes. So, today, I ask you, as representatives of the community who lives in this county, whether you want to continue to support a department that has been unresponsive to the requests of its citizens, and I ask you, on behalf of Janith and as well of myself personally, not to renew the contract that the Sheriff's Office has with ICE. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Rose, then Louise Mailer. Pretty sure that says Annette Rose on John Young Street. And Louise Mailer, then Dr. Rhonda Rios-Kravitz.
Good afternoon, and thank you for your kind attention. I'm Louise Mailer, I'm with ACLU and Amnesty International. And like all my fellow volunteers, I would really very much prefer that undocumented people be managed in a way that was more humane and less costly than incarceration, but since that doesn't seem to be in the cards, I will fall back on my public health background and try to minimize the harm. And when I started looking at that, I was really quite shocked, not Casablanca shocked, but genuinely taken aback to learn what we just heard, that the RCCC center had failed 15 out of 16 counts and yet was considered adequate, and that included seven standards related to environmental health and safety and six related to medical care. There were also some comments on the use of force policies that really made me wonder, but as a citizen, a taxpayer, and whose name this facility has administered, I want to urge you just as strongly as I can not to extend this contract without provision for independent and effective oversight to assure us all that the facility operates as humanely as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Rhonda Rios-Kravitz, then Mariana Rivera, and then Miguel Cordova.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters and members of the board. My name is Dr. Rhonda Rios-Kravitz, and I'm representing Step Up. ICE does not have the authority to incarcerate immigrants. Instead, its authority is limited to holding non-citizens during the adjudication and removal process. RCCC was built and operates as a jail. ICE uses correctional incarceration standards, which impose more restrictions and carry more costs than are necessary to effectively manage detainees. One symptom of our broken immigration system is the exorbitant spending on detaining immigrants annually. Physical detention, which is costly and severe, could be reduced by only holding immigrants whose release would pose a danger to the community. Millions of dollars could be saved if the county reduced its overreliance on detention and properly allocated resources towards more humane and cost-effective alternative methods of monitoring. Estimates from the Department of Homeland Security show that the cost of these alternatives can range from 70 cents to $17 per person per day. Compare these costs to the sheriff who receives $100 per day per person. The sheriff also stated that without the contract, the net county cost would rise by 6.6 million. However, the sheriff has not provided a comprehensive analysis of the detention cost, as well as projected future costs. He has not divided out the cost for the detention of detainees from the cost to house convicted individuals serving time. He has not analyzed what costs would be if less restrictive detention strategies for noncriminal and nonviolent detainees were used, and he has not provided any analysis of the cost should an alternatives to detention program or ATD be implemented. It has been demonstrated that ATD programs cost far less than detention and are far more humane. They are also extremely effective at ensuring compliance. ATD programs include release, unrecognition, community support, and bond. Given these alternatives, the dollars spent to detain immigrants in the county do not add up to something that makes sense. Finally, the sheriff also stated if the contract was not approved, detainees would be moved out of state, most likely to Texas, with any, out any justification for this draconian move with increased transportation cost.
Could you please wind up your comments?
The detention centers in Texas have been severely criticized for their human rights violations. Has he forgotten that there are detention centers in California, and is he using this as an example, as a scare tactic? We strongly encourage you not to renew this ICE contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Mariana Rivera, Miguel Cordova, and Christopher Sanchez.
Good afternoon. My name is Mariana Rivera, and I'm a member of the Coalition of Labor Union Women, and we actually turned in a letter to you, but I'm going to sum it up. Basically, we're opposed to any extension of the ICE contract to lease, and we really believe that- believe that the county shouldn't be in the business of assisting ICE in its work. We hope that you'll be smart about this. You know, the hate and that's, I believe that the administration is causing right now, it's scary for our community. And collaborating with ICE, I don't know if any of you were at the meeting when we met the ICE Director Homan, together with Sheriff Jones, and there was a lot of resentment in our community to what's going on and that collaboration, and I think it's a really smart decision to just end it. It won't hurt the county, and it would really make the undocumented community feel a little more safe. I know the city went about trying to create a sanctuary space. I believe the county should do the same thing, and I hope you read our letter in detail. And, you know, I believe in ICE out of Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera. Miguel Cordova, Christopher Sanchez, and Susan Lang.
Good afternoon. My name is Miguel Cordova. I live in District Five. I am here today representing Sacramento Immigration Coalition. Our organization unifies organizations to increase our presence in the Sacramento area for the purpose of fighting for immigrant rights. We believe in the importance of ensuring our neighbors' rights to feel safe and secure and the right to pursue a productive life. This is why we write to you today. In Sacramento, we believe in standing up for our neighbor. We don't seek to strike fear, harass, nor force people to live in the shadows. That is not Sacramento. Which is why when Immigration and Customs Enforcement, otherwise known as ICE, threatened to raid homes, work sites, and communities, Sac City Unified School District responded with their safe haven policy. Sac City Unified sent a message that in this district, all students will be reassured. They will be able to trust, play, study, learn, and dream. And when Sacramento City USD stood up, others followed with similar resolutions in this region, including Twin Rivers Unified School District, Natomas Unified School District, and Los Rios Community College District. Sac City Council responded by updating their sanctuary city policy and worked to find funds to provide legal support, training of Sacramento's to know their rights, our immigrant neighbors' rights, and to defend them. We are certain that this was not easy, but budgets are moral documents that lay out priorities, and they prioritize their city, all of their city. Just as congregation B'nai Israel prioritized human life and became a sanctuary synagogue, how could a place of worship exist and not provide refuge or safe haven? Not in Sacramento. We are here today to ask you to represent Sacramento in its truest form. We don't believe that renting out beds to divide families, target immigrant communities, create fear, and force people to live in the shadows is how we do things in Sacramento. We do not believe that budgets should be balanced by ensuring that beds will remain for the use of ICE. We do not balance budgets with the most vulnerable lives in our communities. Don't let the county supervisors be that outlier here in Sacramento. It's not how we do things in Sacramento.
Thank you. Christopher Sanchez.
I have letters, so that can be...
If you give it to our clerk, that'd be great. Christopher Sanchez, and Susan Lang.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. My name is Christopher Sanchez. I'm a policy advocate with CHIRLA, the Coalition for Human and Immigrant Rights. We represent directly immigrant families in the county and the city, predominantly organizing the youth and then their families after that. We're here in opposition, of course, to the ICE contract here in Sacramento for many of the reasons that were mentioned already by many of my colleagues, but to really highlight some of the causes. The lack of transparency at this facility that was conducted by the Department of Homeland Security, so its own entity which oversees this type of facility, has shown that there is a lack of real human rights at this specific site. But the other thing I would say is that here in Sacramento, a lot of families do have hesitation and really want to know what the county message is to folks. We know that through the executive orders the President has written, anyone is a priority if you're undocumented. You could be working in the fields and be a priority. You can be a person who has no criminal history and be a priority. Or you can be a person with a very minor offense, such as minor drug possession from ten years ago, and be considered a priority. And we know this is to be fact through the work that we've done through our deportation defense in Southern California, but also with our partners here in Northern California as well. So for these reasons, we ask for your consideration not to support the contract with ICE. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Susan Lang, then Dr. Rita Cepeda, then Mario Galván.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am Susan Lang, a resident and homeowner in Elk Grove. I'm the coordinator of a community visitation volunteer group for the people in immigration detention at the Rio Consuena Correctional Center for the past five years, and I'm here to ask you not to renew the contract with ICE. It is important to remember that the people in immigration detention are in civil proceedings. By housing them in county jails, they are treated as prisoners. They are not prisoners. However, as prisoners, they must deal with the punitive and dehumanizing conditions at RCCC. They are no longer criminals serving sentences, but they are subjected to the same treatment. This is done because it is a county jail. They are treated as the general population is treated, but without any of the advantages of a system which is supposed to rehabilitate people. I would like to also address an argument that if RCCC were to close, people from the area would be housed, far from family and friends. I would like to let you know this is not true. First of all, the people at RCCC rarely have visitors. Of the forty-six people I have visited, four had visitors other than from our group. Second of all, very few of the people at RCCC are from the Sacramento area. Of those I have visited, five came from the Sacramento area. Thirdly, the visitation procedure at RCCC is so bad, it discourages visitations. Immigration detention as a system is wrong. It dehumanizes and causes suffering. There are better ways. We do not want immigration detention in our community, not because of the people housed there, but because the system is wrong. Please end the contract.
Thank you. Dr. Rita Cepeda, Mario Galván, and Victor Rivera.
Good afternoon, Chair Peters, members of the board. My name is Rita Cepeda, and I am represented on this board by Supervisor Kennedy. Over the years, in difficult times as an immigrant, naturalized citizen, educator, and advocate for human rights, when I feel a sense of desperation as I do now, I am inspired by the words of Margaret Mead. Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed people can change the world. Indeed, it is the only thing that ever has. By now, you have no doubt been exposed to the litany of human rights violations and atrocities attributed to ICE. You must have seen the postings of immigrant mothers separated from their children of rape, illness, child abuse, and even death linked to the actions attributed to ICE. On April 26th, Steven Wagner, Acting Assistant Secretary at HHS Administration for Children and Families, reported to members of Congress that the agency had lost track of 1,500 children. Imagine if one of those were yours. You might say in response, what does that have to do with the Sacramento Sheriff's Office ICE contract? We say, your approval and moral consent will make you and our Sacramento County complicit with an immigration policy fraught with brutality, racism, and disgrace. As to the agreement or the comment that sometimes is made, after all, Sheriff Jones is an independently elected official, and that little can be done by this board to impact his policies and procedures. To this, we say, what I have learned in eighteen years of experience as an executive dealing with a board, that budget is policy. U.S. governing board cannot distance yourself from the practices, policies, and transgressions of the Sheriff's Office. For today, you are being asked to sign off, as you know, on resources for continuation. By the way, it says indefinite continuation of the grant.
Could you wind up your comments, please?
Yes. Today, you are that small group that Margaret Mead spoke of. We ask you to be humane, thoughtful, but above all, be moral. Thank you.
Thank you. Mario Galván, Victor Rivera, then I'm not sure the first name, Montez Ponce.
Good afternoon. My name is Mario Galván, and I am here as a member of the Zapatista Solidarity Coalition, which is a partner in the Sacramento Immigration Coalition. And I'm here to speak against the ICE contract. We Americans, I think, often have a tendency to be a little self-centered in that we can see, well, what's happening close to us and what affects us, but we don't sometimes notice what's happening to others farther away. We see immigration as a problem for us, but I'd like to suggest that this is really part of something much larger, and it's out of our specter, our field of vision. What we're actually doing is we're criminalizing victims of United States foreign economic and foreign policy around the world. The history of U.S. intervention goes way back, and it can be political, economic, or military behavior toward other countries. We've overthrown democratic governments. We've supported brutal dictatorships, all to win favorable deals for our U.S. businesses around the world. And those advantages for us have come at a tremendous cost for millions of other people around the world. Interestingly, when we intervene in other countries, whether overtly or covertly, all of those, I was tempted to use the word, all those invasions are somehow legal. But when people escape from those countries from the consequences of our actions in those countries, and they cross into our country, we see that as illegal, and we want to punish them. We look back in amazement at the good Germans in World War II who didn't see the atrocities happening right around them. And are we becoming good Americans today? The nightmare in Germany started small with hate crimes and rallies against immigrants and minorities.
Could you please wind up your comments?
Yes, thank you. It ended up in deportations, death camps, and a horrible war. I fear that today, our country is taking the first steps down that same road. And today, I think you have the power to step back from that path by voting not to renew the ICE contract. Thank you.
Victor Rivera, then I think it's Carlos Montez Ponce.
Good afternoon. I'm Victor Rivera, I'm with Zapatista Solidarity Coalition. Also, I've been activist on immigration right for half of my life, I guess. I'm here just, and I'm going to be brief, you know, just to, I want to express my opposition and for you guys to, to any contact with ICE. ICE, since the new administration, have been terrorizing our community. We live in very dark ages, I would say, dark times, because there's terrorism all around, and ICE is part of this terrorism. I would say, you know, ICE is a terrorist organization too. So, thank you very much. I'm not going to say anymore. Everybody has said most of it. But I'm here, and I want to reiterate, to terminate any contact with ICE or to not renew the contract with that terrorist organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Carlos Montez Ponce, then Mahmoud Zahria.
Hello. My name is Carlos Montez Ponce, and I'm a community organizer representing Sacramento Act and a resident of District Two. I'm here to bring the stories about the burdens placed on families again. Stories such as one that we actually had earlier this week, and where a member of the, a member, a community member here in Sacramento, asked us through our rapid-response hotline, through our rapid-response hotline work, if we can accompany them to their INS check-in. These are constant stories we hear in our community, where, you know, residents just because of their immigration status are in fear to go into their check-ins, are in fear to go to the markets, are in fear to go into the basic services that Sacramento County provides. Furthermore, I want to really reiterate the distress that the residents of our community go through when they call into our hotlines, searching for their families, and then we, as the Sacramento Immigration Coalition and the Sacramento Act and all our partners, accompany them, not just in solidarity, but really accompany them and walk with their pains. The families' fears are further exacerbated by the existing contract in our county, and rather, our community interprets this contract as criminalizing Sacramento residents because of their immigration status. I also want to reiterate that as a community organizer and as a person of faith, our shared faith values reminds us that there is no sacredness, there is no dignity in either exploiting or being exploited. Those who come into contact with the existing sheriff's contract are deemed to face bond check-ins at ICE office, home visits and check-ins, GPS monitoring through an electronic ankle bracelet. Since neither ICE nor judges are required to consider an individual's ability to pay when settling, setting the bond, bonds are often extraordinarily high. Alternatives must always include ensuring that someone has legal representation, providing community-based support by organizations with proven experience delivering social services for immigrant communities. As a basic litmus test, alternatives must always decrease the number of people in detention. We ask you not to continue this contract. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mahmoud? Then, I apologize if I get this name wrong here. It looks like Ibi Yaneg Rivera is the next speaker on Riverwood Way. Then Max Leones.
Good afternoon. My name is Mahmoud Zahria. I work on behalf of CARE, the Council on American Islamic Relations. Every year, we go to Manzanar, which, with the Japanese-American community, to see the internment camp that was established during the Great Second War. And today, I don't see a difference with what ICE is doing. Detaining immigrants is as un-American as it gets. It completely discredits our core values of due process, and as an Elk Grove native myself, it stampers with the narrative of our diverse community. Sacramento County cannot continue to be a part of this broken and unjust system. It is only, it has only instilled fear and harm on local families. Immigrants, documented or undocumented, have always contributed to our county. Being true to Sacramento means being true to the people of Sacramento. This is Sacramento. We are one of the most diverse cities in America. Sears-Advises Plaza is a block away. To put it simply, ICE is a welcome here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ibi Yaneg Rivera on Riverwood. He's gone? Okay, then Max Leones on F Street.
Chairperson, Chairperson of the board and members of the council, thank you for my ability to speak, or giving me the ability to speak. I'm here as a member of the Zapatista Solidarity Committee. My name is Raymond Li, and I am here to speak in opposition to the renewal of the ICE contract. ICE is a cancer on this community and is metastasizing. It has created a climate of fear and apprehension that will only testify. Other cities refuse to work with ICE because of its inhuman and indecent treatment of detainees. We would be wise to do likewise. ICE needs to be recognized and called out for what it is, a vile and vicious instrument of racism and xenophobia. For the Chinese, this is all too familiar. The crimes committed then are the crimes repeated again today. We should not be collaborating with ICE. These brown shirts have no place in our community. Sacramento is a very special community with very special people. None of our residents should live in fear of deportation or separation. None. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Susan Lee Alrojas, I think it is. Is Susan here? On Akron Street? Okay. Alrojas on T Street?
Hi. My name is Alrojas and I want to thank the Chair and the Board for allowing these to come before you. I represent the Labor Council for Latin American Advancement, AFL-CIO, and we've been pretty active for the last 20 years in this community as that organization. I just want to remind you as the Board that a couple of years ago, by the way, we adamantly opposed the contract renewal for ICE. Several years ago, in the county jail, there was a murder committed by a man who attempted to kill a Mexican woman at a Home Depot. He used that hammer and slammed her head, attempting to kill her and was screaming, "You Mexicans, you need to go back." Might remind you, the people that you call immigrants are not immigrants. They're original natives, people, indigenous people. That man was taken to jail. This guy was a murderer, later found to be deranged. Well, in that jail cell where they took him was a person considered to be undocumented. He was already angry, enraged, and here your deputies with the Sheriff's Department, with all their bright minds, not considering that who this man was, put him in the same cell with this person who didn't have documents, a Mexican young man, an indigenous, original person that came from Mexico. When he walked in, started an argument, and choked him to death with his own T-shirt. We protested and went to the Board here, some of you may not have been there, and demanded accountability as to why in a jail, a man who is nonviolent and you have deputy sheriffs put in that same cell, someone who is deranged and attempted to kill a Mexican woman at the Home Depot. I believe that there's accountability in this situation.
Could you wind up your comments, please?
I'm going to close now. Just want you to remind you, remind you that we need accountability and a report so that you, who are in this Board, can understand what we're saying and why we said that. Thank you.
Sylvia Velazquez, Carlos Rodriguez, Emilio Hernandez. Okay, Sylvia Velazquez. Carlos Rodriguez. Emilio Hernandez. Placido Calestro, sorry if I mispronounced that. Next position. Placido. Eva Ponce. Ross Schneider. Okay. You guys are trying to fool me and you're all going to jump up in a minute and say, "We're all here," right? Luisa Manchaca. Luisa? Yes, we have a statement. She was against, all these people are speaking against item four. Lilia Barrett. Lilia, okay. Jennifer Van. A taker.
Yes, I'm Jennifer Van. I'm here representing NorCal Resist, which is a Northern California Economic and Social Justice Organization born out of the last election. Our organization is led by people of color and immigrants and has been active in local and national immigrant rights. We urge the Board of Supervisors to sever its contract with ICE. The contract is immoral. The contract goes against values of our region. How can we say we are following Senate Bill 54 and the city of Sacramento's sanctuary policies when we are profiting off of detainment and allowing ICE to access our county jails? The contract makes our diverse community less safe as local immigrant families feel less comfortable making any contact with law enforcement, even when they're victims of the crime. The reality is that very few individuals truly need to be detained by ICE. The current system has grown out of a combination of xenophobia and the profit motive. In fact, prior to the Clinton administration and the attacks on 9/11, very few immigrants were detained. Rather, individuals were released into their communities while their civil immigration proceedings moved forward in the immigration courts. Are we any safer than we were in 1990s, when only 5,000 people were in immigration detention? No, we're not. But we are pouring more and more public money into the prison industrial complex. We call on you to end the ICE contract.
Thank you. Don Thornberry. Then Alma Caravan.
Thank you, members of the Board. Chair Peters. My name is Donald Thornberry. I've been a resident of Arden Arcade, your District Chair Peters, for more than 30 years through faithful friends in the Unitarian Universal Society of Sacramento. Beginning this year, I wanted to establish some personal connection and better understand how undocumented people become part of our penal system. Please note that aside from attorneys, I was the first outside visitor either detainee all mentioned had, just as a transgender woman born in Mexico who has lived in Southern California since age two. Now in her early 30s, she was raised and working in Torrance when she committed a crime for which she served three years in Alvin Hall State Prison. She served her time without incident and would have otherwise been eligible for parole. Instead, because of her undocumented status, she remained incarcerated for an indefinite period of time in RC3. Kenny fled violence in Guatemala and has lived in the US since 2014. He was working as a laborer in Marin and Sonoma Counties when he was arrested for riding a bicycle with a headlight that was broken and then fleeing from the officers. When I met Kenny, he had been incarcerated for five months. He celebrated his 22nd birthday in the Rio Casumnas Detention Center. I don't presume to understand the financial arrangements between Sacramento County and the Department of Homeland Security and ICE. However, the moral and ethical dimensions are clear. Keeping these overwhelmingly poor and powerless people incarcerated and isolated is wrong, is unconscionable. Alternatives exist to keep them as productive members of our communities while their immigration status is investigated. If our federal government cannot provide moral leadership in this sphere, we in Sacramento County should refuse to cooperate. I urge a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Alma Caravan, then Eric Caravan. Alma and Eric. I really don't know how to pronounce this correctly. Yeah, Jaira Ramirez Sagala from Davis. I apologize if I.
Good afternoon. My name is Yahida. I'm a student at UC Davis and I'm here to ask you to support our immigrant communities and to end this contract with ICE here in Sacramento. On May 31, 2018, Roxana Hernandez, a 33-year-old, identifying Honduran transgender woman, was found dead in a detention center sparking outrage and to the continuous inhumane and sadistic treatment of migrants by the immigration agents and these agencies. Roxana Hernandez died of health complications with pneumonia and HIV as she was held in what is referred to as the Yelera, the ice box. These legalized forms of murder spark outrage and protest because it brings to light the deadly immigration policies and neoliberal policies in Central America that force migrants to flee their home and echo continuous US projects of empire. During late April of 2018, it was revealed that 1,500 unaccompanied minors were lost by the human and health services. The Department of Homeland Security was created after September 11 of 2001 in response to and is responsible to the removal, resettlement, and detention among other legalized settler colonial projects, not as new tactics but rather manifestations of ongoing settler colonial projects of which the US creation stems from. I am here to ask you, the Board, to consider if these actions are representative of the values of our Sacramento County. By removing ourselves from working with ICE, we begin our journey to protect our immigrant communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Francisco Feria from Davis. Sandra Morales. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Morales and I'm a resident of District 2. I'm a part of the Northern California Coalition of Undocumented Students and I am here standing in front of you as an undocumented individual in the strong opposition of the ICE contract renewal in Sacramento County. As someone without documentation, I can tell you that this contract not only dehumanizes my community but also causes fear and terrorizes us. At this moment in time, you will all get to decide what part of history you will stand on. If you approve this budget that includes a separation of families and inhumane detentions, you will join Sheriff Scott Jones in tainting your hands with blood. You all have the decision today and you will decide if you want to give into the fearmongering that this current administration is feeding into or if you will uphold the strong moral values that Sacramento County has. Thank you.
Thank you. Helen Roth Doughton. Eric Acosta. David Buenrostro.
Good afternoon. My name is David Buenrostro and I am with the California Immigrant Youth Justice Alliance as the deportation defense coordinator. The Rio Casumnas Correctional Center needs to be shut down immediately. All the folks detained there must be liberated. Elk Grove has no business profiting off and implicating itself in these condemning practices. Profiting off of human suffering is morally wrong and that is exactly what keeping this detention facility open is doing. Being in a position where the county is depending on revenue from the system makes Sacramento complicit in ICE's agenda that has sparked public outcry across the nation. Elk Grove should not be in the business of immigration detention. Just last year, we met Ugo, a father of three who was separated from his family for almost a year. Ugo was detained at RCCC and can attest to the inhumane conditions inside of the detention center. Like mentioned, from my comrades, waiting six months to be granted any medical assistance, being waken up at different hours of the night for loud counting sessions, it's clear that this detention center is made to break our community members being detained there. That's one of ICE's tactics, to continue isolating folks from, in detention centers. As it already is, RCCC is isolating our community and it's nearly impossible for folks, including Ugo, who at the time was detained for his family, his wife, to go and visit him. Immigration detention centers are unnecessary and regardless of how much money ICE can throw at a county, nothing justifies the immorality that occurs both within the system and these detention centers. As an example, the Santa Ana City Jail ended its contract with ICE last year, resulting in the liberation of all detainees who were eligible for bond, able to be released on their own recognizance, and continued to be with their community while they fought their immigration case. There is no need to detain folks in these detention centers. The termination of the Santa Ana jail agreement to hold immigrants with ICE resulted in the release of detainees, of detainees, and that is why RCCC should liberate all of its detainees.
Thank you. Julio Molma, then Efren Gutierrez. Then Alejandro Cabrera.
Good afternoon. My name is Julio Molina. I'm a DACA recipient who currently serves as the president, as the board president for a nonprofit organization, Dream Development Do, and I'm a Sacramento activist and spoken poet. I am here today to support the undocumented community as a community leader, a brother, a son, and a neighbor. We oppose detention centers due to its negative psychological toll it has in our community. Voting to renew the ICE contract is an action that dehumanizes our hard-working families and contradicts California's beliefs to support and protect its undocumented immigrants. We have long been partners with our undocumented, with our undocumented community members and we have always been here, working and educating not just our family members but also our youth. Right now, our organization outreaches to at-risk students and underrepresented students. I have spoken to undocumented students, DACA recipients, and who have, and DACA recipients who have both, who have been struggling and who have been in fear, not just for themselves but for their parents. A 13-year-old, 14-year-old in high school, in middle, in middle school, fear for their parents, fear for being separated from their family members, it is immoral, it is dehumanizing. It is not okay to put our families at risk. They belong to be, they belong together. Families belong together, just like any other American family that is here in California. We are also community members. We are not criminals and we are not animals. We are hard-working community members, family members. We are educators, scientists, we are leaders, and we will continue to, continue to make changes in institutions, changes in education, and political, and political movements. We have been here long before the DACA recipient, long before DACA, and we will continue to be here. You see the people who are in support, who have mobilized, and who will continue to mobilize for undocumented communities, not just 800,000 but our entire 11 million until something is passed, end detention centers and ICE contracts. It demoralizes our communities and it dehumanizes our family members.
Thank you.
Claudia Gonzalez, remember her name.
Efren Gutierrez. Then Alejandro Cabrera. Is Efren here? Are you Alejandro?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi. Good evening, my name is Chair and Board members. My name is Alejandro and I'm here on behalf of Councilman Guerra, he couldn't be here today. And I'm here in support of the migrant community and instead of focusing on a lot of the conversation that, you know, the issues with the detention center and the moral issue of making, keeping families together, which should be primordial to this discussion, Councilmember wanted to focus on the economic argument, which there's want to be made on this particular issue. So I'm here today to urge the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to not extend their intergovernmental services agreement between the Department of Homeland Security and the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department. The Sacramento region has a long history of welcoming and embracing individuals of diverse racial, ethnic, religious, and national backgrounds. Immigrants have a strong history of loyalty and positive contributions to the region and the United States of America. Today, Sacramento's diverse immigrant population has been instrumental in the local economy as it forms 22% of the workforce in the region. Most of their contributions are reflected in agricultural, manufacturing, and construction industries where they contribute to 20% of the region's gross domestic product or $9.3 billion to the regional economy. The economic fallout caused by the deportation of undocumented immigrants can impact the general community, deporting primarily which earners places an increased economic burden on taxpayers who will pay for public services that these new broken families will need. Undocumented immigrants compromise a substantial portion of the labor force of several key local industries. Without this workforce, often referred as essential workers, our local businesses will suffer. We urge the Sacramento County Board of Education, sorry, Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to not extend this contract with ICE and utilize jail space for serious criminals instead of profiteering on the back of working families. Thank you and have a nice day.
Thank you. Ex Lali Reyes, sorry if I didn't pronounce that correctly, on Cedar Grove. Nicole Kravitz Wertz. I called this name before, I don't know if it got mixed up or not, but Elizabeth Kim, have you returned? Okay.
Good afternoon. Thank you for this time. My name is Elizabeth Kim. I'm the president of National Lawyers Guild Sacramento Chapter. We're the oldest racially integrated bar association and our jurisdiction expands all the way to the Oregon and Nevada borders and most of the constituents here in Sacramento County are very concerned about this particular issue, which is what brings me here today. Additionally, I am also a former immigrant and also lecturer on human trafficking issues. Additionally, I am also a former immigrant and also lecture on human trafficking issues. And as I understand, Sacramento County is a hub unfortunately for human trafficking victims, which this matter also concerns. So I urge for all of you esteemed members to reject this renewal for the following three reasons. The first reason is that there's a lack of transparency and at the very least, that's a huge problem with ICE continuing their law enforcement. This leads to abuse and it's more susceptible to human rights violations. As we understand, the three years of litigation that finally got us to the federal court order to get the inspection done at the Rio Consumers Detention Center revealed that they failed in the standards of care. And then we also know that a detainee tried to kill himself by jumping off a two-story balcony. That's very concerning. He was denied access to medication for his mental illness. The second reason that this needs to be rejected is that the notion that undocumented immigrants threaten public safety are absolutely false. The New York Times, the Washington Post, Gallup polls, they've all shown that there's been a surge of immigrants coming into this country at a rate of 113% since 1980. However, the climate has dropped to negative 36% since 1980. So we do not want this myth to keep being perpetuated in our society. And third, we have a duty, all of us, the board and our community, to uphold the protection of human rights. And this is in violation through ICE and Sacramento County is, like I said, sadly a hub for victims who are trafficked and we need to make sure that we don't renew this contract so that we can treat these individuals as humans.
Thank you, Elizabeth Kim.
Hi, I'm Carolina Flores and I'm here as an MSW social worker. I've been working with the county for 20 years and also continue working politically as a social worker in the Sacramento community, in the county and the city. I'm here to tell you that no one is talking about the most serious damage that you are causing by being a part of this ICE contract, participating in this, in human acts. You see the picture of the baby in the front page of the Sacramento Bee? ICE, that baby being detached from the mother, it's a very clinical term called attachment disorder. You cannot separate babies from the mother because they develop an attachment disorder. This attachment disorder grows in the teenage years into a serious mental health, clinical mental health diagnosis. These same babies will grow up to be adults with serious mental health diagnosis that are irreparable. There's nothing that you can do once you've damaged these children. You are damaging these babies. Somebody turn off their phone, please. You are damaging these babies and you're not helping them by continuing this genocide. You are part of the genocide. You know, when they had Hitler and they had these tribunals and all the people that said, oh, well, I was just doing what I was told. I would hate to have your names on a future tribunal of all the deaths and all the damage that was done to these babies. We will not forget who votes for the ICE contract and who votes against renewing the ICE contract. We will not forget. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher is the last speaker. I have signed up if anyone else has it in mind.
Susan Gallagher, Executive Director of Norcal MHA, and I was actually here to talk about the budget, so I apologize, but I do want to stand with the folks here in opposing the ICE contract for the reasons we heard here today. My questions or my comments today were really in regard to the attachment four in the budget that you, I think, were reviewing earlier today. And it's on page 37 under the Mental Health Services Act Fund. It says this is a new fund created to account for the recent receipt and allocation of Mental Health Services Act revenue. And I'm just really shocked that we only now, in 2018-19, have a fund for MHSA dollars. Where were they before? And I want to refer you back to a letter I received back in 2015, July, from Sherri Heller and Ben Lamira. And it talks about, we had questions about where's the money residing, where's the interest, why do we have so much unspent funds when there's so many needs? And I was told, very firmly, we had a meeting, a face-to-face meeting with the auditors and everybody, that there was a restricted Mental Health Services Act Fund and that's where the money is. And that they paid for things out of the general fund but at the end of the year, they reconciled. But that there was no way that this money was commingled with other funds. And so now, I really want an answer to this question. Where was the money? What was with the money? Was it by itself or was there other funds commingled with it? And where's the interest? We still, after years and years of asking these questions, do not have answers to those questions. And so those are my questions for you today and I just ask that, you know, we keep a real close track of this money. We, you walk down the street, you see the needs.
Mr. Ferguson has a-
Thank you. My money, my time wasn't even up yet. Thanks.
Well, I was going to suggest to you that Mr. Ferguson had a response to your question.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I think we discussed earlier, when it says new fund, it means, we didn't say that, but it means new budgeted fund, as was discussed earlier. We have always had these unbudgeted funds and the money was, as was indicated by the speaker, were reflected in the budget as revenue to the operating department. But the actual fund that received the money and where it carried over as a balance was not included in the budget. We are rectifying that by the creation of these new restricted funds. So the money always existed in a fund. There was always interest accruing to the fund. It was always reconciled at the end of the year. It was simply never budgeted and therefore never, never seen as part of the budget process. So part of the consequence of making this change is that now that this fund that always existed as an unbudgeted fund will be budgeted and everybody can see what money's there, how much comes in, what the balance is, and how much is carried over.
Thank you. Just late-breaking, I'm sorry, Mr. Natoli had a question?
Yeah, just a comment on that. Brad, I think that was helpful and certainly Susan's been before this board on a number of occasions and has asked those questions. Is that something that you could put together in a letter? Because it's not just Susan's, there are other, obviously, mental health contractors, providers, and interested parties. That may be, you gave it in your verbal this morning, at least some general overview, explained it now. It's a bit, not as clear as you just explained it on page 36 of the attachment four. So I think maybe a written response that could then be provided to the community that would be helpful to everybody involved.
I'd be happy to do that. Surprising, Natoli.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy.
So just to put a finer point on it, so this is what we refer to commonly as trust funds?
Correct.
Okay. So what we've done this year for more than we've ever done before is shed light on this and actually, there's more transparency now than there has been in the past.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Annette Rose has returned. Now this is my last speaker that I have signed up.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I'm a constituent in District 1 and I am speaking out today against the ICE contract, the sheriff's contract with ICE. I urge this board to vote against renewal of the contract because immigrants should be welcomed here in Sacramento and not criminalized. First, the sheriff's department should not be in the business of profiting off our detained residents. Many of these individuals have lived and contributed peacefully in this community for years, even decades, and they are part of the rich culture that is Sacramento. Whether it's a dollar or $30 million, as in the case of this particular contract, it's repugnant and immoral to allow profit off our detained immigrant residents. We cannot allow this administration's zero tolerance policy to rip our families and our communities apart. Second, renewal of this contract cannot be made in good faith because the sheriff's department has bade and continues to make material breaches of the contract. Federal audit of the Rio Consumers Correctional Center found 49 deficiencies of the 16 federal standard used to review the facility. In fact, the facility complied with only one component. The long list of violations included but are not limited to substandard medical care, overcrowding, contraband, use of force, denial of telephone use, denied access to legal materials, environmental health and safety, food services, and disciplinary segregation. Unfortunately, we as community members may never know the full extent of these violations because the sheriff's department unlawfully withholds records requests under the PRA. What we do know is that conditions are so abhorrent that at least one individual has attempted to jump to his death while being detained in this facility. This is a basic denial of human rights. It's unconscionable and disgraceful and this is on your watch if you renew this contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last speaker I have. I am going to suggest we take a five-minute break just to loosen up a little bit and before we start board deliberations on the budget. So we're in recess for five minutes. Call back to order the Board of Supervisors on June 5th, 2018, from recess.
Supervisor Serna-
Here.
Kennedy-
Here.
Frost-
Here.
Natoli-
Here.
Peters-
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, we will now, we're going to work on our budget, our recommended budget and our CIP.
So before you begin your deliberations, Madam Chair, we wanted to just provide you some additional information and report back on a number of items that were sort of identified as outstanding issues during your budget, during the budget presentations from departments this morning. With regard to the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services, the Heart for Kids Program, the Birth and Beyond issue, funding for birth and beyond, and senior emergency housing. And Michelle Caillaus will be up to make that presentation, provide you some additional information on those issues. Then from the Department of Health Services, a general discussion of sexually transmitted infections and specifically the increase in incidents. You had wanted to discuss funding for a student health initiative at the community college but Supervisor Kennedy has taken care of that issue. So Dr. Cassiri will be here, up here to discuss that issue. Then Water Resources, Michael Peterson will be up to discuss the request for funding from the Splash Program and I think we'll chime in on that as well. And then finally, we'll be talking about, in the fair housing budget, the request for additional funding for a growth request for Sacramento self-help housing, the Sacramento self-help, help, self-help housing contract, and I'll be addressing that issue.
Actually, Brad, I think we did end up with a suggestion we got from Supervisor Kennedy. We're putting that to September 2018.
We'll move that to September discussion. I'm sorry. That's correct. And so I'll turn it over to-
I thought that was only acknowledged as an option.
Yeah, and we're talking about $14,000.
I think we should have the discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So I can provide a-
I think my exact words were "at the very least."
Yeah.
Understood.
I remember it that way.
Rewrote it.
I'll provide an overview of that and then, so I'll turn it over, first of all, to
Good afternoon. So I will start first with the Hearts for Kids Program and I think Supervisor Natoli, you had asked about that earlier. And I just want to explain the two components of the Hearts for Kids Program that are impacted by the first five reductions. This is another program that was impacted. So the first component is medical clearance exams. So whenever we bring a child into foster care, they go through this specialized medical clearance exam to determine whether there are any medical issues. It's very comprehensive, so it's not just to detect undetected forms of child abuse or neglect, but they also do medical dental screenings, they test for communicable diseases, HIV, other STDs, so it's very comprehensive. The other piece of that then is when issues are identified, they're assigned to public health nurse. The public health nurse then follows that child into foster care, educates the foster parent and the social worker about the medical issues or anything that needs to be followed up on. So that's the home visitation piece by the public health nurse. So with the reduction from first five, both of those components go away.
So, if I could, Madam Chair.
Sure.
So then what happens? So you take a child who may be medically fragile but certainly comes into the system and has no, it sounds like there were still going to be examinations but it sounds like in this case, no, to determine that. And then secondly, in the event that you determine it or not, you have no nurse then to follow that child, you know, basically to help manage the case from a health standpoint. And these are zero to five. A lot of cases, these children are not, can't even speak for themselves.
Correct.
So who is their advocate? Who is their health advocate? And who sees to it that the social worker and that, you know, the foster family obviously has gone through some bedding and so forth, but that there's a recognition. I trust that this isn't just done, maybe it is done routinely, but it concerns me that you've got children who are already in the system who can't speak for themselves who now then lose at least the health advocate, at least in part. So help me understand as to how, what happens if it just doesn't happen at all, then?
Right. So what is going away are these specialized medical clearance exams. All children will still have the ability to get an exam, a regular physical health exam through the CHDP program. And that is supposed to occur within 30 days. So our social workers work with the foster parents on ensuring that the kids get that follow-up. So it's still a physical exam but it isn't the comprehensive exam to detect for child abuse and neglect and other conditions. And we do have a number of children in foster care who have medical issues and we have a number of public health nurses assigned. So they would still be able to do the ongoing casework. It would be that they wouldn't be starting at the beginning and working with the foster parent on it.
Michelle, let me ask you then, and maybe this is a better way to frame the question. So being that we've been doing this for several years now under the Hearts for Kids Program, in how many incidents or situations have you actually determined? Which you wouldn't have known if you hadn't done the exam, that you then have had sexual abuse or some other child abuse that then has led us to do an investigation and probably take, you know, a more serious course of action than just removing the child from the home. So is it a very low incidence or is it, give me a percentage or a number?
Right. So it's about 33 kids a month that get a screening. And in about 70% of the cases, there is some type of medical issue identified, which is then where we assign the public health nurse for follow-up.
What percentage?
About 70%. Yeah, so it is not insignificant. So with the CHDP exam, some of those issues would still be identified. And then our social workers will follow up, get, make a referral for a public health nurse to also come along. And so it's just further down the road versus at the beginning.
So on average, it's 20 children a month who are in the initial screening and this medical exam that are determined then to have some sort of situation that would warrant further medical attention and/or intervention by CPS workers and so forth. That's 240 kids a year.
Right.
That's a lot of kids that are at risk that may be discovered further down the line. But again, these aren't, you know, six-to-10-year-olds that can speak for themselves and maybe by four or five, maybe they can tell. But when you've got, you know, infants and toddlers, I'm concerned that if we're, you know, we're going to leave a lot to be desired here and is it total, it's $366,000? Is there a way to zero in on this, to do something that would provide for a screening that, again, recognizing that the money's going away, but it seems to me there's some necessity behind this. I guess, you know, you've worked in that area for a long time, Michelle. I mean, this is kind of the frontline intervention and- I mean, this is kind of the frontline intervention and examination, if I'm not mistaken. It's like, I don't want to say it wrong. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's medical clearance exams that are currently provided by SETER, and it's a child abuse expert that does, that conducts the exam and oversees them.
And again, and not to be any less serious if you told me it was 10%, but when you tell me it's 70%, that's a pretty high number. I think it's, for me, it's a cause for considering, trying to find something, some other way to address this. That's a lot of, you know, if that was my child, or your child, or somebody else's audience, and this child that was at risk, that's, you know, that's one too many. But when I'm talking about 20 a month potentially, and some of those may be caught, I get it, you qualified that. That's a pretty big exposure for folks that are very, very vulnerable and fragile. So I guess, Madam Chair, I just, to me, this, this needs to be looked at. I don't know if there's some other way to address it to maybe get to bring the cost down to some degree, but I'm not, you know, I don't want to be saying to 240 kids potentially annually that you're not, you know, you're on your own.
How much money is it?
So the, the total cost of the program is 690,252. We get a federal reimbursement of about 258,000. So the total cost is 366,607.
That's for the older children?
That is for the medical clearance exams, as well as the 2.0 full, full-time equivalent of public health nurses. So it covers two public health nurses. We have a senior office assistant who's been doing the data collection, and then we have a family service worker who transports the kids to the actual clearance exams and then back to the foster home.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So I just want to make sure I understand a couple things. If it were not for the Hearts for Kids Program, are you saying that this population, they would not have access to the medical screening for both sexual abuse and physical abuse?
So prior to the recession, the department was funding these, and this was one of the many programs that had to be reduced. And first five came forward and picked up these medical clearance exams as part of the Hearts for Kids component. And so just as they did with the Family Resource Centers for the birth to five populations. So that's how we were able to preserve the clearance exams. They stopped for a little bit--
Let me be clear. Per the, per the CEO's recommendation, it's his recommended budget, would this population forego screening?
Again, they would go through the typical physical exam through the, through their primary care provider. So it's not specialized, but they would get a health exam, a clearance--
Does that mean they don't get sexual abuse exams? And what, what, what don't they, what, what do they miss?
So there's a complete head-to-toe. I can read what they get if you--
Is it fair to say that they're going to have a much limited screening?
Yes, it's not as comprehensive as the medical clearance exams.
Okay. And is it fair to say that if we don't have that comprehensive screening, that it's possible, perhaps probable, that it becomes a cost center later for the, for the county, based on the fact that perhaps some of these kids get missed? And there's later issues with, I don't know, foster care or other ancillary welfare issues associated with their adolescence? I mean, depending on their age, of course, when they're, they would have been screened. But is it fair to kind of assume that there is some future cost, all other things being equal?
So if, if we assume that not all conditions will be caught at the CHDP exam, their, through their primary care physician, then there is the possibility that some medical issues will go unaddressed early on and perhaps get more severe down the road. Again, we do have access to public health nurses once the kids are in foster care to assign. We've got a medically fragile team of social workers, but it would be further down the road.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, just, so what would it cost if you didn't have the follow-up visitation? That's where I started with the question, my questioning, but certainly the frontline exam is where you can ferret out whether there's problems or not. And these kids, you know, you may be a little harsh about, they're victims. You know, they're victims of whatever the circumstances are, if nothing else. But if 70% of them may have been victims of something else, that's, that's key and critical. And so I guess what I'd like to know, if it's, you get some reimbursables here, but to at least get those, those kids, when they come into the system, they get that exam, those zero to five. Again, I've said it twice, but they can't voice for themselves, you know, up to probably age two or three anyway, and then it's going to be very limited.
Right.
So it's going to be up to, and if you get that later exam, some of those indicators that might be of a physical nature might not appear. When you do this exam, when they come into the, you're going to, this exam is done fairly quickly, if I recall correctly. And it seems to me that, you know, when we were doing, you know, just hacking away at the budget in, in Great Recession, that was one thing. But now we have the ability to look at this, and maybe we, you know, you give a part of this, which the visitation is not unimportant by any means, I asked about that initially. But what would it cost to do the medical exams roughly?
So I did break that out at one point, and I would be guessing, but it's like 125,000? 100,000?
100 plus the matches.
100,000 plus, we would be able to leverage another 100,000, but that would cover the actual medical clearance exams without the follow-up visits by the public health nurse.
But if you determine something, then, then they're plugged in anyway, right?
Correct.
And so, I mean, so you'd be about 30%, may not get the follow-ups, others would get the follow-up. There's determination made that there's been some, some level of abuse.
Correct.
Okay. 100,000.
Any other questions on, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Frost?
So I want to make sure I understand. You said that there was a medical exam available by their private physician. It's not as extensive. Could it, could there be a way to, to request that certain points, data points are, you know, addressed in that medical appointment? And, and then my next question is, are you telling us that sometimes it's those follow-up appointments that actually help us better understand the situation for that individual?
So I'll speak first to the follow-up appointments. The follow-up appointments are about ensuring the child gets the necessary medical follow-up, as well as assisting the foster parents, helping the foster parents know this is the issue, this is how you can attend to it while this child is placed with you. And then these are the follow-up appointments that you need to ensure happen, and then they follow up to make sure that has happened. With respect to whether a typical physical exam can be expanded, it's kind of outside of my scope. I would probably ask for Dr. Casiri's input as to what the CHDP exam covers, but I know it's reimbursable, so I don't know if it's limited to certain aspects.
Is there a way to, to get a sufficient medical exam but still provide that follow-up? I think that follow-up is really important, it sounds like to me.
Right. So I, I think as Supervisor Natoli said, once it's identified and they're in our care, we can link to a public health nurse. So we've got public health nurses that are already working within the foster care population. These ones are assigned upfront. And so they would still get assigned at some point, just not initially upfront, where they can interface with the resource parent in the way they're able to now.
So I guess the question is, is there a break in the, you know, is it, if you have a private physician or their own physician, do that medical, does that, is there a break in the continuity of care or the quality of care for them?
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Dr. Casiri, Public Health Officer. In answer to your question, the CHDP exam is geared towards preventive services. It's the one that we give for any child, any child that comes up who not necessarily has the background of child abuse. The difference is that the clearance exam is done by people who are specially trained to look for certain things. It's not something where you can say, "I want you to go and look for 1, 2, 3, 4." They go through specialized training. So if we do not have the contract, that will be lost.
Could I just, excuse me, just ask you while you're there, Dr. Casiri. So I assume in addition to, you know, identifying any issues the child would have, it also provides some level of assurance to the foster family? Because in those children, in a lot of cases, can't speak for themselves, but if they were to go through and then there was some identified issue after they'd been placed--
That is correct.
We know there's been accusations made against folks, you know, that, you know, saying, "Well, that didn't happen in my home. It happened because the county placed us in, in this foster family's care, and, and we didn't determine that." So is that, we run at risk?
That is correct, and that was, is the value of having the home visitation nurse, is that they would then take the information that they get from the clearance exam. They would be able to work with the foster family to help them to understand what needs to happen. And then sometimes also they have to coordinate the care. For example, if there are issues that are complicated, that require a specialist, sometimes it's difficult for the foster family to navigate and figure out where the child needs to go. So the public health nurse helps with that piece. The public health nurse also helps with a warm handoff once the child is placed, to be able to continue the care with the, the foster family and also with the primary care provider.
I don't understand why, why we can be reimbursed for a private, their private physician, and yet we cannot be reimbursed for that same. I'm not sure I totally understand. You're saying that they could seek that same service from their own physician and be reimbursed?
So the CHDP exam is a special program for, that is for Medi-Cal, and that's where the reimbursement comes from. The specialized exam is not covered as a part of that. As I mentioned, CHDP is preventive services, so that part of it is not covered. It would be a specialist part--
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Natoli?
Yeah, just while Dr. Casiri and Michelle are both there. So if you can walk this back, we've had, didn't we put this in place in the late 90s when we had some of the severe cases? And so we've been doing this for, you know, 20 years roughly, and by virtue of this budget, we would eliminate this. I mean, if I recall, this goes back to some of the cases that resulted in death, and certainly a review of our entire system about how we're going to do intakes into the child protective services system. And it seemed to me that rather just on a budget item, that then because first five can't fund any longer, making the choices we make, that we come to the conclusion that somehow this can be no longer, and I'm not saying you're doing it, but I guess I would speak to Nav and Brit and others about this too. This is, and maybe we need to go back and look at some of those reports and the tremendous community venting that came about because of kids that were in the system that either didn't get in or that got neglected, and that part of this was part of that whole, again, Michelle, you've been here for a long time, and Dr. Casiri, you, you're here off and on different times. Is that correct? Is that accurate? That we instituted this as an outgrowth of that?
That is correct, yes.
So probably 20 years ago, roughly? 1997, 96, 97, 98?
Roughly, yeah.
Okay. So I, again, now, I guess I want to appeal, as one member of this board, I don't, you know, again, this has a budgetary component to me, but this seems to me this is a safeguard for youngsters that are in our care because of severe circumstances in their family, and if 70% of them are showing some level of abuse, I don't see how we cannot do this and do the appropriate follow-up. So I, that's my view on this one. Thanks.
Okay. Birth and Beyond?
So I think Mr. Wagstaff, you know, stated that the gap is 650,000, and if, if it's the board's decision to fund that bridge, then we would figure that piece out.
Mr. Serna?
Thank you. So I think as Supervisor Natoli just concluded, and I can agree, I agree with his conclusion that as Hearts for Kids is, funds very well spent to take care of one of the most, one of the most essential needs that are presented before this board and this county. As I've stated before, I've seen the efficacy of Birth and Beyond for a number of years now, for at least two terms at least. We've seen the expansion of our FRCs. We've seen the enhancement of the programming through Birth and Beyond. I think the data is pretty clear in terms of what Birth and Beyond presents, not just certain parts of the county, but the entire county through our network of FRCs in terms of the benefit for certainly reducing future exposure of kids and families to, quite frankly, unnecessary aspects of the judicial system, and also as it relates to our continuum of care for public health. So I'm very interested in, and I'm looking at the CEO at this point, very interested in having our staff figure out where the $650,000 would come. Again, it's not, in my understanding, that's not for an entire fiscal year. That would be for a portion of it--
A half a year.
--to get us to a place where we're all working together, the Birth and Beyond providers, our appropriate departmental staff, to have us compete effectively, as Mr. Wagstaff mentioned earlier, and then reassess at that point. But I think leaving even for a month, this to guesswork in terms of where that funding might come from and what does that mean for the future of the programming? Does that mean less robust programming? Does it mean that it might even result in the closure or, you know, dysfunction of certain FRCs? That's not, that's not a place I want to be in. I'm not necessarily saying that that, that would happen. I don't think anyone is. But if we, I don't think if we, if we fully, if we do not fully fund this, at least for the time being, I think we really have a huge unknown, and it's on the backs of the kids and the families that benefit so, so much from, from Birth and Beyond. So I'd like to, to suggest that we give that direction to our CEO and to our CFO that we find that, that funding.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, I just wanted to turn on my microphone. Echo what Supervisor Serna said, yeah, as Phil's alternate on first five, you know, I've had, been privy to the data that shows categorically that, that the Family Resource Centers are saving us money. They're, the data shows clearly that they're cutting down on recidivism when it comes to CPS cases. And I, I think it's something that for, you know, not just the financial respects, but the right thing to do. Also, you know, admittedly, the district that I represent is ground zero for a lot of their services and, and needed, and shutting those doors even for a short period of time would have in some ways tragic consequences.
I'd like to comment on it. I think it's a good program, and it does show results, but I'm wondering whether we could, I thought I heard them saying, I could be incorrect, that there was a possibility that the state was going to fund this. So is that correct?
Supervisor, if I may, what we talked about, I'm sorry, Bruce Wagstaff, Deputy County Executive, there is the real possibility that in this legislative discussion now wrapping up over the budget, that there will be home visiting funds under the CalWorks program that the Birth and Beyond folks could compete for, and that we are going to actually be submitting application for to the state, and in the hopes of getting a sizable amount there. Overall, statewide, it's about 26 million. And so we think we, we--
Yeah. Play well on that.
--given our, our track record and everything else, that we're going to compete actively for that. And then, of course, we would put that out. But it is a fast track, at least as these things normally go, that we should know what our amounts are by the fall, like around September-ish. And then with the idea that the money's out there for service provision, provision around 1st of January. So it's coming. It looks like it's coming.
I'd like to see us wait, you know, at least till we find out what the state funding is before we, I mean, God knows, I don't want to step in and-- is before we, I mean, God knows, I don't want to step in and spend money that the state is supposed to be paying us in advance. They're supposed to be carrying us, not vice versa. So like I said, I think it's a good program, but I, I think we ought to wait until we find out if the money's coming through from the state.
I just think, if I could, I, I respect that, understand it. I, I made that suggestion with the same understanding that there would be, hopefully there would be some, some state assistance, more so than there is now. We're not in the business of spending taxpayer dollars for the sake of just spending it. We want to be effective. We want to certainly maximize the ability to use state and federal funding anytime we can to preserve our general fund and to minimize net county cost. I think that's something all five of us can agree on generally as a principle. My concern is that waiting does leave us a certain amount of time where we're, I think personally, I think we're putting too much at risk, even if it's a short amount of time measured in months. And I don't think that's a prudent thing to do because I do agree with Supervisor Peters. It's an extremely good program. It's way too effective. It preserves way too much potential cost down the line for the county. So I'd like us to have uninterrupted Berth and Beyond service, at least the status quo, which is my understanding, if we did provide the $650,000 between now and likely January, is my understanding that that's what it would, that's what it would preserve.
Well, what if we go take a little bit of both of your, mine and your thoughts where we have the staff look into where the money could come from and then if we get in a tight, if they get in a tight spot, that then we know where the money could come from? I mean, I just, I just don't want to spend $650,000 that the state could spend.
No, no, and I, believe me, I want the state to spend the 650 versus our general fund spending the 650. As long as there's some guarantee that there's not going to be an interruption or diminution of, of service in that, in that, that time in between. And in fact, that, that was the direction I thought I was giving, or at least I was suggesting, I should say, that we set our staff free to figure out where that's, you know, come from, if that's the will of the board.
Couple other people have comments here. Mr. Natale?
Yeah, thank you, ma'am, Chair. Well, it was my understanding, and I think we talked earlier this morning and Richard dropped the word "bridge," but the, the thought about the bridge funding was is to fund it for the, the next two quarters, first two quarters of the next fiscal year with the understanding that not only from the standpoint, it would look good at the state, the opportunity for that money to be available sometime in the late part of the calendar year, and then with the opportunity for the federal dollars, that they would then certainly the, the FRCs and our various partners would have a chance to, one, to make any adjustments they had to make, but also, you know, in all likelihood, it wouldn't result in closure of any of the locations. It might, you know, have to make some adjustments in services, but that this would provide the ability for them as providers and our partners in this community to seek out that state funding that looks like it'll be available and then the federal opportunity as well, but that, that couldn't be in place in the, you know, over the course of the summer months or even by early fall in all reality. And so it would take some partnering, but their shortfall basically is a million and, million and two shortfall in the sense that's, that's a total reduction. This would cover half a year and would allow them to bridge it, although it would be funding that would not be a loan as it was made clear earlier. So, you know, I would be supportive of, of making that allocation. I guess at a minimum, you could allocate the funding through September and then if there's more that's known, but I, but I think that we have heard pretty clearly and maybe staff agree on this, that even with legislative action, that that money wouldn't flow to the various partners prior to, to late fall, early winter at soonest. And so there would still be some potential gaps. So I don't know. Yeah, but you're kind of looking like you want to respond to what I said.
The suggestion is that?
I'm sorry.
Mike.
I'm sorry. Ms. Frost?
Well, that was this, what I heard in public comment was that they would have to wind down and then they would have to ramp back up, which is much more costly than just keeping them going. And that's kind of what I think Don was saying.
Suggestion I was going to make is that in next couple of months, we will know for certainty if the state money is available. As Bruce said, we do have a check-in with you in September to see where we are. If the $650,000 is half a year, we could do it three months and see in September where we are. If we need to extend another three months, we could do it at that point based on where the state is and the competitive process. So that's in.
Okay. Deal.
I think that's, I think that's a fair, fair way to check in.
Sure. And then take the other $300,000, put it towards the Hearts for Kids program. We've really got a deal, so.
Why we not play poker with you?
Senior Emergency Housing?
Yeah. So our recommendation with respect to this item is to wait till final budget in September. Again, there is a Home Safe program that is currently in the budget, proposed budget, and it's highly likely that that will pass. And so that could be some potential revenue for the senior housing. And then additionally, there, there could be some community block grant funding that we can use to help with the bricks and mortar aspect of it. So we would just need a little more time to delve into it.
Ms. Frost?
Is that housing for homeless or are there income qualifications on that housing?
The state program?
Yeah.
It's, you know, I would need to kick it to Cindy Kavanaugh, but it's specifically for seniors, Home Safe to provide the emergency housing because it's lacking throughout the state.
Yeah.
Supervisor.
It's hard, it's tough because there's not enough. There's a lot of seniors who make more than that minimum amount. I wish there was a way we could find some federal funding for some of these seniors.
Well, Supervisor, what Michelle's referring to is language that's in both the Assembly and the Senate version of the state budget they're now negotiating. They have funding specifically designated for Home Safe. And from what we've seen from the discussions on this funding, it appears to us we could use it for the purpose that the board is talking about, safe housing for seniors, emergency housing for seniors. And what Michelle is suggesting is that we sort out how this ultimately is decided upon by the legislature as well as explore the CDBG funding. And we think we can come back to you in September with a proposal for how we could do this.
Is there a way to go back and revisit those income qualifying structures with the state and the Fed to just say in California, housing is more expensive? Can we, can we revisit those calculations?
We can look into that, Supervisor.
I think it would be good because our housing is more expensive here and our seniors are living on the edge.
Supervisor Frost absolutely will look at it, but I do not want to give you any false hope that there's going to be any movement on the federal because they, that's a criteria that they kind of guard very closely.
They're always low, they've been low all my finance life. That it's, we're always behind in California.
We'll talk to them about it, but I'm not going to.
But every now and then they make an adjustment. Thank you.
I think the next one is Sandy Damiano, or is it Dr. Casari? Dr. Casari is next.
Good afternoon again. Dr. Casari, Public Health Officer. So I was asked to speak a little bit about sexually transmitted infections. A few years ago, I did give a more extensive PowerPoint presentation. And at that time, there was a lot of questions about why the rates were high in Sacramento. At that time, we ranked fifth for the three sexually transmitted diseases that we monitor. And so I gave an extensive presentation at that time. So this time it's not going to be as extensive, but I did want to give you an update. You've heard in the news recently, California put out a news report that the rates are increasing in the state as a whole and in many of the counties. In Sacramento County, the rates have increased as well, but the little piece of good news that we have is that as opposed to ranking in the top five for the top three diseases, now we are eighth for chlamydia, sixth for gonorrhea, and 11th for syphilis. The meaning of that is that even though the rates are increasing, they're not increasing at the same rate as the state or some of the other counties. So that tells us that the strategies that we are implementing are working, but our work is still cut out for us. We're not done yet. In Sacramento, what the approach that we have taken is to work collaboratively with our partners. So we started a collaborative and it includes the medical community, community-based agencies, schools, and the colleges as well, representatives from the colleges. And the strategies are many, including screening, offering screening in as many places as we can, getting treatment for those who are comeback positive. And this board actually approved the ability for us to continue to provide bisaline for some of our healthcare providers because it's not easy to get, but being able to have it readily available when someone is diagnosed with syphilis helps us in making sure that people get treated on a timely basis and that we don't get people lost to follow-up. We also have a team of disease investigators who continue to do surveillance. So when we get a positive result, they make sure that they find out that that person was appropriately treated and also look for the contacts and make sure that the contacts are evaluated as well. Because of the volume of positives that we get, our focus has been on syphilis, one, because of the volume, and also because syphilis is the one that, where we're seeing the highest increases. And especially most worrisome is with the women of childbearing age because of the concern.
I'm sorry, could I interrupt a second? Mr. Kennedy, Executive, we've already approved the funding for this, so I'm not sure why we're hearing it.
I think there's a broader question that Supervisor Natale want to know. What was our strategy around STDs? So that's what Dr. Casari is giving.
I'm almost done. So of course with congenital syphilis because of the effect, effect that that would have on children. And as was mentioned earlier, also this year, we did get positive results among college age, which we hadn't had before. So these are things that we're concerned about and working on. Total budget is about 8 million. About 90% of that actually goes out into the community and most of it actually comes from federal and state grants. That's it.
Good. And just very quickly, so what is our match requirement in order to draw down those federal dollars?
We do, we're not required to have a match. We just have to apply. But when we get the funding, most of it comes with specifications as to what we need to do with it. And most of the time, they tell us that we do need to contract out. For example, with Ryan White, we have only two staff people and most of the money goes out in the community to provide services.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks, Dr. Casari.
Okay. Before we go on to the next one, the page doesn't look all the, all the way up, but is the district attorney's request on here somewhere?
Not, those are the follow-ups that you asked us to do. The DA conversation is among board members.
It's what?
It's among board members. These items is what you had asked us to come back and report back to you. So we can discuss the DA item when we get through the list.
Okay.
The next item is that we got a request from Splash. And as a reminder to the board, last year, this issue was in front of the board about if we needed an educational program and the board gave us direction at that point that we were to, that there was not an interest in it. This year, the question that's come up for us, and I have Michael Peterson available to answer this question, is the funding that was freed up from not having that contract, what have we been doing with that money, how we used it, and what are the future needs for that funding that we have? So if Michael Peterson can come and address that issue.
Good afternoon, Michael Peterson, Department of Water Resources. The, the funding that we're speaking of is from the Stormwater Utility and it's used to fund in part our administration of the Stormwater Quality Program for the county. That includes preparing annual reports on effectiveness of stormwater prevention, pollution prevention methods, report, you know, preparing an annual stormwater quality report submitted to the regional board. There's monitoring throughout the year to determine, to measure stormwater quality. It's training staff and carrying out stormwater quality regulations. It's a number, you know, one of the new aspects that we're working on in compliance with our stormwater permit is developing a plan to address and mitigate trash that gets into the storm drain systems down to as small as six millimeters. That's a new requirement. So the funding that, that we've historically used to fund Splash, which we do still fund Splash, it's called Splash in a Class, it's a different aspect of, of the program, is used within that stormwater quality budget.
Yeah. Thanks, Michael. But so I guess, but last, last year, years previous, we'd had $115,000, give or take, maybe some more than that in the year prior. So that was not by board action dedicated to Splash, so remained in the budget. So you're doing a plan? Is that, I mean, all the things you described with exception of the plan were things you did, maybe did more or less of, but
Correct.
As a part of stormwater monitoring and obviously as regulations come down, you have to adjust to that. You do staff training. And so the money that would have potentially gone to Splash is what, spread out over all those things now or are you actually focused in on a plan? Because obviously we had a new stormwater permit. It didn't have the requirement that the Splash component previously, it at least, the emphasis for that was no longer added for the permit. So what, you devoted that $115,000 to begin to develop a plan?
Well, that $150,000 specifically is not earmarked for anything. That becomes part of the, the fund balance that we, that we use to develop the 1819 budget. So yes, it's, it's within that. We didn't change the title of a line item or anything like that in the budget. So rather than, than having this Splash, Reynolds Pool program be funded, we've utilized, if you could say, that freed up revenue to help support the 1819 budget, which is again, to go to all those, you know, those programs.
Oh, just been absorbed into all those program activities, basically. Okay. I guess, again, and this request came to all of us, so obviously I expressed the interest in this last year, is that I think they've gone off and done some other things on a fundraising element effort and some of the other funders, obviously, are, just as we did, looking at their, you know, long-term commitments, but this, they were asking for a one, not unlike what they asked for last year to try to bridge some of this over. I think they've obviously demonstrated the ability to raise some additional funds for what I think is a pretty solid program. And I don't think there's been disagreement about that. It's about disagreeing about where to fund it. So if we didn't, didn't fund it out of water resources per se, then I guess that we'd entertain a request as a general fund request. And so, you know, it's kind of.
Supervisor Natale, that would be one option, but actually, as your board knows, you've established the $1 million TOT Community Grant Program. This is exactly the sort of request. It's a one-time request. It fits exactly into the profile of the sorts of things that were, I think, anticipated being considered as part of that grant program. That process, as you know, starting yesterday, has just kicked off, the process of soliciting proposals. And our suggestion would be, to the extent that the Splash organization wants to seek funding from the county as opposed to the school districts, whoever else might be the appropriate funders of this program, that would be the appropriate venue to look to, to, to identify funding from the county for, for the potential funding for the county for this program.
I would just say, certainly one, one source, we obviously have the ability to, to honor the request if we choose to too as well. So, okay. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
The final item we have is a Fair Housing Service and Brit, we'll discuss it now and at least in September too, right?
Thank you, ma'am, Chair, members of the board. So just a brief background, the county does have a Fair Housing Services budget. The 1819 budget is $168,000. That includes funding for certain legacy costs associated with the old Fair Housing Agency program that was operated. In addition, it includes a contract with, with Sacramento Housing to provide the hotline, the call line in for complaints and issues regarding fair housing. That contract in 1718 was approximately $130,000 and the amount for, in the 1819 budget is also approximately $130,000. is also approximately $130,000. Basically, it continues funding for that contract at the existing level. The total amount of that contract for services, because we're not the only funder, cities fund that as well, is about $299,000. Again, our share of the cost is $130,000. As you know, the housing organization has asked for a increase, a growth request. Our share of that cost would be $14,000. The total increase is about $13,000, and they've asked for that increase, as was indicated, to basically add additional staff and support, to provide additional outreach to religious community and other grassroots organizations, and really to try and aggressively reach into the community to address issues of fair housing. Our general approach this year was to really limit growth recommendations, to really target to very critical needs, and while it's not a large amount of money, we didn't feel that, given all the needs that were going unmet in CPS and other areas, that we could recommend an additional funding for this program. But the amount that's requested is 14,000, basically $14,900 is the additional growth request that they've, that they've made.
Any questions about this? Comments?
Can't we find that in the sofa?
Yes.
Is that an acronym that I haven't heard before?
So, those are the questions that the board had. Then the other one, as Supervisor Peters mentioned, is that the DA had some requests that wanted the board to consider. So, those are the others. Back to you on that.
Okay, so, are, the requests were for two positions, for IT analysts, and $21,000 for a class change on vehicle.
So, on the position, I believe Supervisor Peters, that I think Nancy Newton, our Assistant County Exec, and the DA's office is going to work that issue out.
Okay.
That's my understanding from this morning.
And on the vehicle, my understanding was that they want, they want the SUV class. We have to authorize that vehicle.
Well, he was just talking about the first one, the IT positions.
Right.
Yeah.
So, that's, that's done. That's off the table?
That, I believe that is.
Okay. I believe it is, or it is?
Just working Nancy and with the DA's office, if it's not, we'll, let's not put a negative. I think it will be fixed.
So, on the AV specialist, I didn't really get whether we're looking at two positions? Is that we're looking at two positions?
My understanding, and I'm looking at Steve Grippy to give some more background, but it is two positions, and the cost is how much?
Forty-three.
Forty, yeah. Steve, is that, he's nodding his head, yes.
Okay.
It's two positions.
If you're going to speak, you need to come down here, Steve.
It's two positions.
Okay, two positions. We're good.
Just to add one part to that, it's two positions. We already have it. We're using temporary employees, so we can absorb it in our budget. We just need
So, no money, just two positions?
Yes. Thank you.
That all seems pretty reasonable to me.
And it was similar on the vehicle, was that if you authorized the different class vehicle, they could absorb it. Emery didn't say that in so many words, but, right? They were looking at authorization.
That's what I understand.
Further comments on that?
Go with it.
And we're good with that?
Okay, it's fine.
Was there anything else that we needed to cover on the budget? All right, then, are we ready to approve the budget?
If.
With those changes? And just as a reminder, I need to make the first motion.
Right.
Flo is going to get the slides up, so.
It's our, it's our annual.
I just want one clarification. On Birth and Beyond, Clear Direction, $325,000. Hearts for Kids is $366,607. Is the board interested in funding that? Does that, is that part of the budget motion?
On the Birth and Beyond, they understand is $325,000 to get us to final budget in September. We have a, we have a look back, a look forward. If it's determined at that point, the context of the suggestion is, is that we would consider another 325 to get us to
December.
To the end of December.
And then on the Hearts for Kids, I just, to me, that's, I think we have an obligation, responsibility to do that for those kids.
I agree with that.
So, it'll be 366. Well, again, the amount, because there's a, it's actually more than that, because you get some matching amounts, so it's a 500 and something thousand.
Right, that's just the net count.
The 360, yeah, yeah. You can fund that for annual.
So, I would move that the board adopt the budget, but exclude the budget items due to my possible conflict of interest related to Mather. And I'd move to adopt the budget minus the exclusion identified in the two slides shown by Metro Cable.
Second.
Any further questions?
So, in doing that, I just want to be clear, because it's, we
Splash will have
Right, it'd be separate motion, I get that. So, but it includes the
The changes, right?
The changes, okay, that's right. I was making sure, okay, all right.
Sorry for clarifying, I thought that was clear.
Got it, okay. All right, so includes the changes, all right.
Any other comments? Okay, please vote.
Unanimous vote?
Second.
Okay, can I ask in that motion, you moved the balance?
With the changes.
I got to offer a friendly amendment to include the Splash program, the request for $97,500.
He's making, he'd like to add the Splash.
The Splash request to fund
I know, I didn't hear it.
Oh, 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 yeah, yeah, that, Splash request for, their request was a one-year bridge funding for $97,500, so.
I thought we were going to do that through the economic
Well, that was what staff suggested. I, again, nobody asked a second motion, but I still believe we ought to fund it, so.
I'd support that.
Okay.
If I could just throw one caution in that, this will be a competitive process with the $97,000. It's for whatever the scope of service that we have.
You have to go off the RFP.
It's an RFP that I believe, I'm looking in the back to make sure I'm correct on that. Because it's not a sole source, there could be other folks that have it.
But historically, it's, it's been an RFP, kind of with one respondent?
I believe so, that's
Yeah.
That's fine.
We'll have to go over that, we'll go through that process.
So, we're not really budgeting it? I guess we're just place holder for the service.
Right, right.
For a service, I can't remember the exact words, for kids and education program, the RFP will be developed with that scope of service. Anybody can bid on it, and if it's Splash, enter the A, B, whoever can come in and have access to that, those funds.
I have, I'd like to ask a question.
Ms. Frost?
Is, is it, in prior meetings, we were told that was not a service that we needed, and so, that's why it was eliminated. So, can we establish that we need it at this time, to add that program at this time?
I think Supervisor Frost, I think the staff recommendation is that we do not need it, when the permit was needed, that it's, we don't need it at this point. But if the board wants to continue providing that kind of service, it's at the board's discretion that you can
So, what happens then? You go out for RFP for, for that service?
That will be correct. It'll be a one-year service, and if whoever wins it next year, that funding will go away. Until the board wants to re-app again.
A little cumbersome, but works.
Couple of the things that in that, whoever ends up getting it, I think the full discussion is that there are programs at the school systems, and there's other folks that they can have access to funding. Our funding would, the word we've been using today a lot is bridge, if that's what the board wants, but it's strictly for 12, 12 months.
I'm, I'm a little concerned that it sets a precedent that we do something at the last minute that we don't necessarily need. I mean, I'm not sure I can support it.
That precedent's way out the barn.
Yeah, why break with tradition now?
Because we do it often. I can't vote, so I'm
Oh, okay. That, that's right. So, Supervisor Kennedy, thank you.
Well, I'm talking about the Splash, so.
Right, right, so I'm talking about Splash, too.
Yeah, okay.
So, here, I mean, I, I can support this, but I'll say the same thing I said to Splash. I mean, yes, it's a great program. There's no question about it. I mean, my, my own kids told me, it's the best field trip they ever went on. My wife had her kids there for her class recently. I mean, it's a great program. But Mike, you, my, my words to Splash was, it's an educational program, and as a former school board member, I can tell you that, you know, they need to go more aggressively, reach out. I think that they've gotten, and all due respect, they've gotten lazy at coming into us because we've done it in the past. They need to be more aggressive in not only just private fundraising, but go after the educational institutions, whose role it is to do this. You know, in order to keep the doors open, Supervisor Natoli, I, I will support you, but they, they can't just continue to look at the county to do something that's not a traditional county activity, so, but I'll support you.
Okay.
All right, please vote.
Are we voting?
We're voting for the balance plus the Splash RFP, not, not necessarily Splash, but the
All the, all my Mather items and Splash.
Right.
Can I just go on record as, you know, not supporting Splash, but
Voting for the balance.
Let's not say Splash, let's say the service.
It's not, yeah, because it's not about Splash. I, I think Splash is a great program, too. I just don't think at the last minute, it's appropriate to spend taxpayer dollars that way.
Yes, sir.
On the motion, then, does that include the sofa money for the Sacramento self-help housing in the motion? Do you want to make sure that gets included?
I think we were going to come back to that, weren't we?
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll come back.
Unless you want to do it now, I'm ready to do it now.
So, what, did we, are we voting?
The motion is
Get this Mather stuff cleared up, so I can get back in the conversation.
Okay. Let's take the Splash issue separately, and then Supervisor Peters
I'm still out of that one.
Huh?
I'm still out of that one.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We'll take that separately. So, we'll take that, the remainder, but the question was on the self-help housing. Let's do that separately, so that Supervisor Peters can be involved with that conversation. Okay. Please vote.
Please.
So, what do we, do we vote on the budget?
We're voting on the remainder plus the Mather activities, not naming Splash, and then we will hear the Sacramento self-help housing afterwards.
And your objection is registered on Splash?
Right.
Or Splash-like services.
Service. Hello?
The motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing, and it is noted that Supervisor Frost does reject the portion related to the RFP for the services for Splash.
Self-help housing.
Okay, self-help housing, so.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
I, I prepared to move the $14,900, draw $20,000 in additional match. Housing's critical. They're a partner along with a lot of our agencies, so I move the item.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote?
Right. Budget's done.
All right. So, now, do we take up the other stuff today? Do you consent?
We're going to do the capital improvement plan first.
Okay.
Is everybody ready for that?
I move CIP.
Okay, I would, I would move to adopt the CIP, but exclude the projects that are on the slide.
Let me make sure they have that
Due to potential conflict of interest, what?
Let me make sure they have it ready. Okay.
There it is.
Second.
Okay, wait a second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote?
Second.
Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing.
So, now, we're going to consideration of consent matters. I believe that's where we are in the agenda. And as the county executive, I think what we're going to do is just discuss item four, and then items three and five will go until tomorrow, right?
No, you
Are you going to do all three of these?
You can do all three.
Well, then, let's do three and five and come back to four.
Okay. I move, I move items three and, and five.
That was a move, that was a motion?
Yes.
Second.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters recusing.
Okay.
Okay. So, Madam Clerk, do you want to read item four, please?
Authorization to execute an amendment to the agreement with the United States Department of Homeland Security, Immigration and Customs Enforcement for the detainment and care of federal detainees at the Rio Consummus Correctional Center.
Does the board want to have further discussion? Oops, I see Mr. Stern is up, sorry.
Thank you. So, first of all, I want to express my thanks to the immigrant rights advocates that came here and were very patient and spoke eloquently, I think, made some very, very good points, very persuasive points today in their opposition to a continuing sort of extension, I should say, of the ICE contract at the RCCC. You know, this is, this is reminiscent of a slogan that is too often used, especially this, this time every four years, which is, but it's still an important message, and that is that our, our budgets are reflective of our values. And for me, understanding the context, not, not only understand the context of the, the contract, what it means fiscally for the county, but certainly set against the backdrop of ever-increasing, an ever-increasing intensity of kind of a hyper-politicalization of the immigration issue, and this county's involvement relative to the, the contract. And then, on top of that, educating myself, as I did last year, joining Supervisor Natoli with a visit to RCCC specifically to see the conditions and the, the setting of the ICE detention holds, I just cannot find it in myself to continue to support the contract. And what really kind of bothers me is, you know, the board letter uses the verb housed quite liberally. We're not housing these people, we're jailing these people. And we're jailing these people when some of them don't have any criminal violations. It's, that's the way it's stated in our board letter. So, to have us consider extending a contract that while it has some fiscal benefit to the, to the county, but results in what I think is a quite clear moral abomination, is that I don't want to be party to jailing people when they have no criminal violations. It's just, it's about that simple. And so, I'm going to move and look for support from my colleagues that we not extend the ICE contract.
Second.
Mr. Kennedy?
And I really don't have, you know, a lot more to say than what Phil said. You know, I just, I, I thought long and hard about this, because it's a hole in the budget, and I understand that, but I think we're chasing dollars at the risk of being morally bankrupt. And I just don't think that it is within the values of this country, certainly not this county, to continue to participate in what I see as this county, to continue to participate in what I see as very, very flawed federal policies. So that's why I seconded the motion.
Okay, Mr. Natoli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just say that I intend to support the motion to not renew the contract. And I want to just say briefly that I too have given a lot of thought to this. Certainly had a chance to hear from folks today, but we've received materials from both the sheriff as well as from other interested parties. And certainly I know that from the standpoint of Mr. Ferguson and those that have prepared the budget, obviously this will leave a hole. But I think it goes far deeper than that, that we make choices, we make choices in our budget decisions. And you can, one can assume or assign value determinations to, to those decisions. But I, I think that the choice we have here is not about so much as even terminating as just to not renew the contract. And we will still have a contract with the US Marshal relative to other beds for those that are criminally charged or being held on criminal charges. These are administrative detainees. And I think the civil process that's available to, to them and certainly to those that are charged with enforcing immigration policy, we as a county can make a choice whether we want to have our facilities as old. And, and I know they were described today in some pretty harsh terms, and, and maybe some of that is accurate, or I trust some of this is accurate. We actually have a CIP we just approved that will, you know, documents a lot of needed improvements at RCCC. But I think, for me, it goes to the point of making a choice, a budget choice, but also, I think, a choice about how we want to utilize county facilities. And in this case, I think that it's, it should be the choice of this board and certainly of this county to choose either to house folks who are being held in detention or not. And my choice is to not renew this contract. And obviously, they'll be, under the current setting, will be housed elsewhere. But, and I think that may have some hardships assigned to it, as the sheriff pointed out. But at this point in time, I intend to support the motion to not renew this contract.
Ms. Frost?
Well, I too have given this a lot of thought. From a policy standpoint, whether or not we renew this ICE contract, it is not going to impact whether or not the federal immigration laws or whether or not ICE enforces those laws. So from a policy standpoint, it makes no difference. From a financial standpoint, whether or not we approve the contract, we, ICE officers will still be in our county. They will still be apprehending illegal immigrants in some way, form, in, by way of raids or arrests within the community, possibly impacting more people than would have been impacted had they not done it at the jail, in a, you know, quietly at the jail. And when they do apprehend them, if they do not, from a humanitarian standpoint, if they do not have the ability to bring them to our facility, it's quite possible that they will go to a facility further away where their family can't support them as easily, go visit, have visitation. So from a humanitarian standpoint, in my mind, it seems more, it seems better to have them closer to their families and to not have those kind of upsets within our community. I do support the ICE contract, but the reality is whether or not we do an ICE contract or not, it's not going to change federal policy and whether or not it's enforced. I don't, I, I support the contract as submitted by the staff, so I guess I do not support the motion, respectfully do not support the motion.
Okay, thank you. I too will not support the motion. I, I've talked to the sheriff at length about this and, and the humanitarian aspect of it, I think is really important. There's some disagreement about how many people actually visit people in jail, but the idea of them being sent several states away, these are very often poor families that cannot make a trip, and they need to be able to talk about what's going to happen to the family. And the sheriff does not arrest them. It's ICE that arrests them and wants them in there. And that, between that and the budget situation, I will not support the motion. Please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters and Frost voting no.
Right, remains right. Wrong remains wrong.
Matt, we're still in, we're still having a meeting here. Yeah, thank you. Are there any other items to come before the board?
I do not have any other items.
Supervisor Peters, just as agenda management for tomorrow, there's only two items and a closed session that you have. You have an item at 9:30 for in-home support services. Also, the Rio Consumers Correctional Center, this is the item continuing from May 22nd to have a discussion about the kitchen being removed. And rest of the items, you took care of today. And so it's up to the board what time, if you want to start at 9:30, what time you want to start. Fairly quick items, closed session will take.
I'm going to suggest 11, that we start at 11 and then do closed session.
I like that idea.
What?
I like that idea.
Okay. So we'll recess today's meeting and come back tomorrow at 11:00 AM.
If I'm not here, you'll know why.
You're practicing. Minutes adjourned.